And good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna start without Levy. And Noel Jones is the seated alternate today, so she will just seat for him until he joins. Starting without him, then, this is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, meeting virtually on Tuesday, July 23rd. And this evening, we have had, this afternoon, we've had two agenda items postponed. The first one is number three, which is the YWCA Greenwich for a final site plan and special permit at 259 East Putnam Avenue. And the second one is item number 11, which is Mason Street Partners LLC at many addresses on Mason Street. And that is for an 830G application with 92 units, and those have been postponed. I believe Mr. Levy has his hand up. Yes, there he is. I'm getting him in. So if we get him in, I'm assuming this is him. But if he's on the train, I'd rather see you, Ms. Jones. So let's see. Not having much luck getting him in. Okay. Patrick, if you want to keep working on that, I can't seem to get him into the meeting. I'm just gonna go ahead and start. The first application is Zhongzheng Tang.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Are we gonna follow the order of applications as we did yesterday? Or are we going to move one of the applications to later?
We are going to make that decision after we've done the second item.
Thank you.
Mr. Lo is asking, because we are going to try to accommodate the presenter for the Old Greenwich School. But we will see where we are at, after we've done the first two.
Fair enough.
Zhongzheng Tang for a final site plan to construct in addition to connect the main dwelling to the accessory structure to convert a single family to a two-family at 31 Prospect Street. Mr. Tang has joined the meeting. If you should be all set, sir. I think he's joined the meeting. Promote to panelist. Hold on a second. Mr. Tang, if you would accept the invitation to be promoted to panelist, please. So.
You've also been unable to speak, so if your audio.
No, no, I got him so that he's, he's coming in. It's always a little better, I think. Okay, hello, Mr. Tang.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I believe you have made some changes to this application. And if you would like to tell us what you have done.
Yes. Since the last meeting, and I have met with the staff over planning department, July 3rd, and we go over the all option. And I got a feedback from Patrick and Bianca. They are very helpful. They also connected me to Department of Public Work. And and I worked with Michael, who is an engineer, and over the Department of Public Work on July 18th. And I submit every revision to him to get the feedback from him. And he replied to me, say the the concept appear to acceptable to engineer department. And further, and I follow up with his guidance. And the contact with the local survey engineer I use, which is Kirby, and I spoke with the project manager, Keith over there. And, and he was very kindly and to work with the comment which Michael provide from the Department of Public Work. And yesterday, and he sent me the latest drawing to prove not just the concept work, also the tracking maneuver last time was concerned. Also being solved. And Bianca, if you can, please bring up the slide number six, if you can.
Oh. Bianca's not here, so I guess that's Tracy, huh? Peter Levy, I had seated and Noel on this since you weren't in the meeting yet, so you know. You guys can duke it out if you want, but normally, since you're often on the train. And Noel?
I'm already seated for Yeski, I think, on this.
Oh, yes, you are. So Peter Levy, come back. Rather than have some new person see, why don't you just stay seated? Why don't you just come in? We didn't see you, so I announced Dan Noel would be seated. Thank you. Okay, Tracy, we're sharing. Right?
Are you seeing the slideshow, Tracy?
No, we're not seeing anything.
Yeah, I'm not seeing its slide deck in the materials, that's why I'm.
No, I'm not. Well, I'm not seeing anything on screen.
About to ask you if you knew which, which materials these works, there's been several emails. There's a 3:44 PM email. Is that the plan?
I believe that there's a two link. One is the application material. Another one is, second one is the additional material link.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting.
Yes, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Macrae?
Actually looking for something in my files, but we have department comments from engineering that was indicating that this is a resubmital prior to final site plan.
Yes.
Although the plans are acceptable in concept according to, just because of Lex comments. He has not reviewed the turning movements.
Right.
I guess the Plan A has been identified as requested. He also is making recommendations that the parking way it causes vehicles to back into the street. I'm actually looking for the street classification of Prospect. I have it buried someplace here in the computer. And I guess the plan has been signed and sealed, which is something else he's looking for. And I don't believe we got anything from Beta, but he's indicating that the applicant must address and respond to any old beta comments, so.
No, we didn't. We didn't get a traffic study for this.
We didn't send it to the traffic consultant, yeah, was, it seemed to be unnecessary, given that we.
I said that, yeah, we didn't send it.
I think one of the, one of the critical things I had questioned on, you know, the turning radiuses have been provided, it seems, in some format. But the, I don't, I don't believe the sightline information was added to this with all the fence, the landscaping, all that kind of stuff. Kind of get to a point is that can you actually see when you're maneuvering, getting in and out?
So, Mr. Tang, what, what Mr. Macrae is saying, and I would have said as well, so all of us would have said this to you. We can't act on an application until DPW has given us the go-ahead. And right now, they are not there. So the first thing is that you would have to address what they have asked for, for here. The second thing is that you provide them the sightlines. And then, are there any comments with which we would send Mr. Tang so that he can come back for a decision at our next meeting? Does anybody have any other comments for Mr. Tang?
I think actually, the sightlines, to make sure that we're seeing, they're being able to, you know, this maneuvering in and out, and they can see beyond the proposed landscaping and the and the fence that's being put right to the property line. I think that's actually something that maybe should be added to the plan, just so. When it goes back to Mr. Kuslak, that's added, he may request it. But just to make sure that it actually can see, because you're backing out, that's concerning his his issues. I think when we had talked about this in general, big picture, it was all about the parking in the front yard itself, and whether that was actually a viable situation. And I don't believe that's been resolved, is, you know, I think the initial application two, three times ago, I've forgotten how many. If the parking actually is warranted or acceptable in the front yard, and I think we had discussions about that, and I think maybe we should be discussing that amongst ourselves. And if that's still the case, is, is the parking in the front yard to us a viable option?
I think as long as the screening has been put into place and the parking is not visible, easily visible from the street, that we would be able to accept the front yard parking. Mr. Lo, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I put my hand up because I, from the get-go, I have been concerned about the adequacy of the screening. And I have seen, or I have not seen nor heard anything that dispels my concern about how open this parking situation would be to, to the road. And so I don't believe that changing the names of the plants or the plants themselves or is gonna resolve the adequacy of the screening. So I think before we get into a discussion about how that the car or cars are going to be parked, I'm registering a concern about the the screening. So you, you just made a comment, Madam Chair, about the screening, and I don't remember the word you used, but it, as far as I'm concerned, we, that is still an issue and has not been resolved.
Right. Again, the commission's decision is whether the, the parking is adequately screened. The it, this, you know, as you know, it states exactly in those words, the commission must find that the parking and parking aisle are adequately screened by landscaping or substantial changes in topography. So it's a question of evergreen plantings that would be of sufficient height. So, Mr. Yeski.
Excuse me, but I, it, it's not just the height, it's the breadth. This is a very narrow lot and unless we're putting planting straight across the driveway, which of course we're not, that small front yard is wide, it's, there's a wide open view.
Okay. I'm gonna come back to that. Mr. Tang, before you speak, I'm gonna let Mr. Yeski and Ms. Jenkins speak, and then, then you can speak.
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Lo. I'm not sure you're ever gonna have enough landscaping. I can see in some exceptions where the landscaping, it's back away from the road and hidden, maybe. But I think the issue is parking in the front yard. And I know we had discussions about, well, we've let something else, but I think the major issue is, do we want to continue to permit parking in the front yard and then play around with the landscaping? So I think where Commissioner Lo is going is the right direction.
Okay, Madam Jenkins.
I disagree with my fellow commissioners on this. Based upon the, my, looking at the most recent version, we got seven, a seven-foot width between the property line and the driveway, seven feet. I know we started with, we started with a fence, which I think we, we did not accept. But we now have seven feet, we have a landscaping plan, we have modifications to the structure to make the turning radius more workable with that much seven-foot setback. I am concerned about the sightlines, as Mr. Macrae raised it. But it seems to me that the term is adequate screening, not invisibility. So I think at some point, obviously, it's a judgment call, and we have eight very independent people on this commission. But I, I disagree. I think seven, seven, a seven-foot wide screening area with adequate landscaping of some sort is adequate screening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I ask just a clarification question?
Yes, of course.
The reference to seven feet, what is seven feet again?
Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, if, if you look at the most recent diagram that was sent in at 3:44, Commissioner Lo. I know it's like last minute, but the, the distance is measured between the property line and the, the beginning of the asphalt driveway extension. It says 7.33.
So it's seven feet from, you're talking about the width of whatever screening will be.
The width, the width of the area available to be screening, because I know originally it was basically the width of a fence. And now we have seven feet.
Thank you for that.
And again, modifications to the structure as well. Does that answer your question, Mr. Lo?
Yeah, no, I didn't know. Yes, that does.
It, it just came in hot off the press, Mr. Lo.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Tang?
Yes, I want to thank you very for her comment. Also, I want to thank you for Peter Lewis for the open-minded and to what engineer from Kirby's provide. I just have a common, a couple more points, so I to finish up. And if we can go to the slide number six. May I go to the slide number six of the original link?
All right, there's only five in this package.
Oh, you're saying on the website, Mr. Tang, that number six?
Yes, original, yes.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Tracy, that'd be the staff report.
Okay.
Oh. Okay, so in the meantime, Mr. Tang, since we can't make a decision till the Department of Public Works signs off on this, and we said that if you, our next meeting is on the 6th of August. So if you would, we're gonna need an extension from you for four days until August 6th. And I'm getting that right. Patrick looks like he's not sure, but, yes? He's muted, so.
Reading other things, sorry.
Okay, so August 6th, and if you would give us an extension, and then you know what you need to address, the questions that have been raised. You know that there are different comments and, from the commission on whether the screening is adequate, so we will make that decision that night. And now you wanted to comment on this slide, sir.
Yes, and thank you. And as everyone can see here, and the reason I proposed the parking front, as you can see from the yellow or orange box over there, SIA deficiency, which provided me to go to the back, back here. And another engineer, another commission from zoning enforcement, they are very aware of that. And they grant me variance for that. And also, if you can see the, the green line all the way down here, which provide from public cars, parking service department. And they informed me, say the entire Ospers Street was permitted for parking from the, for the neighbors.
On the street, sir, yes, it's permit parking on the street, yes.
Yes.
But that's not relevant to your application right now, because you're not asking for that. So how, how is that relevant to your application right now?
That's what I'm going to, 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 to.
Great.
Yes. The reason for I say that if a town of Greenwich aware of my neighborhood parking situation, allow people to park on the street without any screen. Right now, what I propose is within my property with reasonable effort, amount of effort to screen. And there will be two different standard here. So also, once I move to the two parking space into my parking space, is improvement and benefit a net gain for our neighborhood, just like you approved Gary Street. They added one driveway to put the two car on their driveway and take off the parking space from the street. That was a net gain. So what I try effort here is try to help to ease the situation from my parking, my, 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 my.
I understand that, I understand that, Mr. Tang, but we, all we look at is whether something follows the regulations. We are just, the intent is often not as important to us as whether or not the regulation itself is followed. I know that sounds very bureaucratic. Patrick, one thing I didn't follow with that, there is a variance here?
There was a variance for the addition to the rear building and attachment to the, the house. This plan is not. Mr. Tang is choosing to only seek the parking at this point in time. We don't have the plans for the house addition and all that yet.
I understand, and that would be handled administratively anyway.
Correct, yep.
So once you're done with that, okay. I think at this point, Mr. Tang, if we could just, you know that you just have to satisfy the Department of Public Works, DPW. Give them the sightlines. And then if you would just give the extension, Patrick and Bianca can tell you exactly what to do with that. Bianca's actually listening right now, so she will be ready to help. And if you would just come back on the 6th of August, once the Department of Public Works has signed off. Okay?
Okay, thank you so much, and I, I will do the, exactly you suggest. Since I already completed a work with the TPW and also with Kirby. All I need to do is just provide the Kirby joint to the DPW to get a sign off.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Oh, great, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Tang.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so our next application is the Brunswick School, Inc. for a final site plan. Oh, I should let the applicant in. Mr. Hegney does not like it. All right. Mr. Hegney, oh, we got you in. Okay, and Mr. Philip, I'm, oh, where you're in. Hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
So Brunswick School, Inc. for a final site plan, to install four modular classrooms on the west side of the existing school parking lot for less than six months on the two parts, on two parcels located at 100 Maher Avenue. Mr. Hegney, if you would share with us the latest state of this proposed location of the, of the modulators, I would be appreciative of Tracy.
Certainly.
Tracy or Patrick.
And we, we have a map that was forwarded to staff earlier today with
Okay, so just so you know.
covering all of the issues that had come up.
Application.
And with sewer department and everything else.
Mr. Hegney, we are again discouraging application material to be submitted the day of the hearing. I, I usually don't have time on that day, and I did not have time to see it today. We're making an effort to help the school, because we realize that you want to be able to start the school year. However, I for one haven't seen it. I assume some of the other commissioners may not have.
It is very straightforward and simple, and I will describe it to you now that we have it on the screen, so.
You are still trimming the, those maples that are behind the southern portion, the southern.
We are, we are not.
No.
Okay, go ahead.
There is no, there is no tree trimming going on at all. Those trees, frankly, had, had been trimmed previously, because they overhang the parking lot, so there is no tree trimming or tree removal that occurs with this plan. The shaded area in gray is the sewer easements that run through the property as is being highlighted with the cursor. And so when we first came to you, we had them next to each other, overlapping on the sewer easement, the sewer division said they had a concern with that. We thought first it was because they couldn't get into the manhole, which is at the intersection of, of two of the lines. They said, no, we just don't want you on the sewer easement at all. So that prompted us to do quite a bit of scrambling. And both the school and, and Dave Ginter, our engineer, did a lot of work having this all work out. Mar Avenue is to the right on this. The hashed area is the, the school building itself. But you have 195 parking spaces in the parking lot here. And I just wanted to add, the classrooms are only until the end of the fall semester. The rest of the building will be ready by then, and the classrooms, these classrooms will be removed. So what we're looking to do is move them off of the sewer easement areas, which is what you see here. With the green arrows that are shown are to show the sewer department that they can actually get to their sewer manholes from three separate directions in the event that they do need them, to access them for an emergency. We have barriers to prevent cars from banging into the temporary classrooms. There is also a temporary parking lot that's over the field, which was authorized by Inland Wetlands as part of, thank you, the, the construction that's currently being used by construction workers. They will be moved off-site by our construction management firm, Turner Construction, and bust onto the property. And that area will be used as student parking, which is what's being replaced by the temporary classrooms.
Mr. Lo.
The last thing that we're showing.
Okay, sir.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to tell you that Mr. Lewis has his hand up and would like to ask you a question.
Certainly.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Hegney. Just for orientation purposes, it, it might be useful to clarify. You've said that Mar Avenue is off to, on this diagram, off to, off to the right. So that, that driveway, that's good to use the cursor, the driveway comes into this area from the right side of what we're looking at, and goes straight back, and therefore, the, those first two classrooms that are, no, the lower ones. They are, the lower portion of them on this map are right up, are in an existing parking lot that is lined with trees, correct? Along that, below that, you know, I guess it's east.
To the south or bottom of the screen.
Or the south, right? And so there's no disruption, if I'm looking at this correctly, and I actually visited the site. There are trees along the bottom, but they are set a little bit back from the existing parking spaces and where these classrooms would be placed. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and similarly, the other ones, the two classrooms that are not joined there are along a line of or, or at least the, the far left-hand corner of the left-hand one is right up against another tree line that no, right in the other corner, move the cursor to your left, up in that corner, up, right there. There's a line of trees going straight up off the map, correct?
Going to the north or straight to the top of the page?
Top, the top of the, this, what we're looking at, straight up there. There's a line of
Correct.
And so it's. A, and so it, it, they're not, those two are not affecting any trees. It, it with the, and it only one is coming into play. Is that correct in the corner?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be, I, I think it might be, uh, useful so for others. Uh, um, who might be, uh, dim-witted as that. Go ahead, please.
The, the, these are all sitting on the asphalt pavement that exists now. Uh, we had a, a, a earlier version that you saw at the, uh, at the briefing yesterday. Which would have impacted the trees in the, uh, uh, grass island, uh, between the parking spaces right through there. Um, so we moved it from there. Uh, th- this we think works better, uh, than, uh, what we had, uh, had, uh, proposed earlier. Uh, it, uh, leaves the, uh, the buses actually come in, the, this, uh. Line of the bus that's, is actually exiting the site. Uh, that's where it goes up along the building, close to the building to discharge the students. And then when it's leaving, comes through the parking lot and then exits where this is shown here. This was, uh, done to show that, uh, uh, we could maintain a bus exit. Even if we move the, uh, modulators to, uh, the, the temporary classrooms to another location. Uh, but, uh, now there's, there's no issue about circulation at all. Uh, these just sit on, uh, pads or blocks, uh, to level them, uh, on the pavement. Uh, they have electric connection, uh, which would be overhead and will be high enough. Uh, not just for the sewer truck to get in, but for the fire truck to get in if that was necessary. Uh, there is a, uh, a movable barrier, uh, in that travel aisle. So that, uh, if a, uh, fire truck needed to come, come in, uh, that, uh, plastic barrier could be moved out of the way. And, um, uh, there is no plumbing with these. It's just an electrical hookup. I think that covers most of the seventeen point, uh, the ten points I had in my letter to Pat this morning.
Mr. Hegney, uh, Ms. Jenkins and Mr. McRae and Mr. Levy have questions for you if you would take those down.
Uh, Mr. Hegney, just to update my notes, because I take a notes based on the, on the prior location. I assume the setbacks are fine with this location as well?
Yes, you can see the dark, uh, black line, uh, is the property line. And, uh, this is the R twenty zone. That would be a side yard setback, which is a minimum of fifteen feet. And, uh, uh, the, these are thirty feet long, so you can see that we're much more than fifteen feet away from the property line.
Terrific, thank you. And how many parking spaces will this take up? We said three on the prior.
It would be a total of seventeen parking spaces that would be temporarily, uh, not available. And that's why we are relocating student parking, and this is all just student parking. Um, to the temporary parking lot, which has twenty-eight spaces in it.
So it's fourteen on the upper one. Uh, it looks like it's about fourteen spaces on the upper one, maybe a little more. And, uh, and then the other three are in the lower one. Uh, Mr. McRae and then Mr. Levy.
Uh, Mr. Hegney, uh, you said, eh, the timeframe is, uh. Uh, I had initially a six months, but now you're saying end of fall semester. Do you know the approximate date of that?
Uh, but I think they need them just to the end of December. And then the classroom will be ready.
Well, if.
For the spring semester beginning in January.
So given the way the world works, would, um, Patrick, uh, would you be able to renew it administratively? If we included something like that in the, in the decision? So that if they run late in construction, so it would be to December with, um, a maximum of another three months. If, um, if construction is delayed and they don't have the CO.
If, if the, if the commission would like staff to handle the, the renewal, we can, certainly the language would help us do that.
I mean, it's just, I don't know any construction that ever could.
If we're so inclined, if we're so inclined to say, yeah, maybe, then they're good to go. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, but end of December, because I think that's, and I think the other thing, I can, kind of considering this almost as a tent. In a strange way.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's that kind of temporary structure. Agreed.
Right, so we were talking about, as of, as of such and such a day or so and so forth, they're supposed to be taken down unless they're, uh, renewed.
Right.
And then staff, somebody in staff's got to take a run out there to make sure they actually are gone when they're supposed to be gone.
You don't want to hear this again if it's just because their construction has, has run into, into issues.
Yeah, no.
Does happen.
Since you brought up the tent, uh, you did authorize a tent in the spring to be used as a temporary cafeteria. Uh, and that was used for that purpose, and now it has been removed.
Okay, I'm sure that staff has looked at that. Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, Mr. Hegney, could you just, uh. Uh, walk me through how, how this all works? I'm just curious because it, it's a, an odd, um, configuration. Because of, uh, what you have to do with the, with the easements, monitoring the easements. So, um, how do children get there? Uh, where, and, and evidently you have enough parking, so you're decommissioning some, but you have recommissioned others. Other areas, so. Um, I don't know exactly how, uh, the spaces work, uh, to the north in this drawing. Um, and have you, you know, are, are there going to be barriers around this area? How do the children get there? Uh, you know, do you have to have some kind of temporary walkway for them?
Certainly, so, uh, there's a sidewalk along the, uh, west side of the building. Uh, along the parking where you can see the, the arrow going, uh, north or into the site. Right there, there's a sidewalk along there. Then there is a, uh, pavement markings that are hashed, uh, that run to the left of that.
Yes, okay, it's per, uh.
And, and that, that becomes the marked walkway for the students going from the main building. To the, uh, the temporary classrooms.
Are the, are these classrooms kind of quartered off from the parking lot in any way? Are there?
Yes. See, there are small rectangles.
Yes.
Uh, those are barriers. They'll either be concrete or, uh, plastic filled with sand or water. Uh, so we have those to ensure that, uh, none of the vehicles will back up into the, uh, classroom buildings. The only one that, uh, would be movable, uh, would be the one which is a darker shade. And runs, uh, vertically, and that's to allow for, uh, fire apparatus. Access in the event that was needed. But it, it's, it's protected by barriers from vehicular movement.
Uh, is there any particular age group that's going to be using this?
Uh, this is the high school students.
But it's like, is it, is it for, uh, freshmen or is it for anyone?
I, I did not ask.
Mr. Philip is with us, so Mr. Philip can answer it, I'm sure. Mr. Philip, I think you're, I'm not seeing you, but I know you're in the meeting.
Yeah, I am, sorry. Um, the, we haven't finalized the schedule for the year yet, but the thinking is it would be physics classes, which tends to be juniors. So seventeen, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. The parking lot, just from a traffic standpoint, because, and I appreciate your question, Mr. Levy. The parking lot is busy at the point where school starts and then is dormant. Because obviously all the kids are in class and not using their cars. Um, so when they're actually in these classrooms, there's, there's very little, if any, vehicular traffic in this area, because all the cars are parked. And there for the school day, and then when classes are over and they're not using these classrooms, that's when the parking lot would empty out and kids would go home.
Uh, and Mr. Phillips, what about, um, any, any particular signage that you're going to have in conjunction with these classrooms?
We'll have signage along the path that, that, um, Mr. Hegney outlined, so students know where to walk and, and how to access the classrooms back and forth.
Oh, I, I guess I missed that, so, uh, is, is it just going to be, uh, like, uh. The extra stop signs for cars and stuff like that, or what, what is? Yeah.
The crosswalks, the crosswalks that get the students across the parking lot to these buildings. Will have stop signs for cars that are crossing them, crossing those walkways. You know, the kind that, the stop signs that are in weighted bases.
Um, okay, and then I guess that, that, these are ramps that go up into the classrooms.
There's stairs and ramps for ADH, uh, for, uh, you know, wheelchairs, but then there are stairs as well.
Yeah, okay. All right, um, and is there a generator for this?
We're bringing power, as, uh, Mr. Hegney outlined, we've raised, we've raised up the power lines. We're drawing power from some of the other properties we have to the, uh, I guess it's the west of the left of the screen, um, that we're.
If there's no generator, so.
No generator, it's all wired.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you so much.
Okay, do I have any other questions from the commission? Uh, Mr. Hegney, I'm going to ask for public comment. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this application at this time? Please raise your virtual hand. I see no one from the public with an interest in speaking. Um, does anyone on the commission, can we take the slide down, please? Does anyone on the commission object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Alrighty, in that case, I would entertain a motion. All the regulars would be seated, are seated on this item.
Okay, uh, okay. Uh, one hundred Mar Avenue, LPZ twenty-two-four-two-seven-five, final site plan. I've received, uh, approval to install four, uh, temporary classrooms for a period of approximately six months. To be located in the west side of the existing school parking lot, adjacent to the maintenance storage building and properties located in the R twenty. And R six zones. Commission finds there, there is no change in enrollment or existing student, or the existing student bus loop. Uh, temporary classrooms are part of a previously approved, um, plan for renovations. In additions, uh, to both the east and west campus. Uh, the loss of student parking will be accommodated by the temporary construction lot on the field to the south. Uh, zoning issued comments on, uh, seven, uh, seven-seventeen-twenty-four, indicating no issues with proposal. And sewer division issued an email, dated on, uh, seven-twenty-three-twenty-four, indicating no issues with the temporary classroom locations. But requested that overhead utilities be raised to a minimum of twelve feet. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application, noting the following. For the sewer division comments, the applicant has stated the overhead utilities will be raised to fourteen feet above the grade. Requested time period, shall commence at time of decision and terminate at the close of the fall semester. Uh, at the end of the request of time period, the applicant shall remove temporary classrooms. Or request an extension of more than two, uh, months through the planning and zoning commission staff. And the applicant, uh, shall address any and all remaining staff or interformal issues.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I have a question. Uh, is it, uh, is it, uh?
Mr. Mr. Lo has seconded the motion. Mr. Levy is asking a question regarding the motion.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to know if, if it's, uh, uh, if we should mention that the temporary parking lot. Should also be removed at that time.
Sure.
I think the temporary parking lot, our hope was that the, the construction cycle is, I'm probably giving you too much information, but the, um. The temporary classrooms are needed because there's one building that's going to take six months more than we thought, so that's why it's going through to January.
Um, so, why don't we just?
Uh, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, we're in decision mode, but, um, Mr. Leroy, uh, Ms. Kolkowski. The te- temporary parking lot is approved by Wetlands.
So, Mr. Philip, I'm sorry, you can't speak right now, was what Master McRae was telling you, so I'm going to just mute you, okay?
Did we, as part of our site plan applications, I don't remember it. Was that part of our approvals?
It is part of the construction plan for the, the, the current academic building. So, um, if I may recommend, I think it, that needs to track with the close of the project.
Yeah.
Building and not. Yeah, so, but it, to Mr. Levy's point, it will, it will be going away. It's just the order of it should be with the, the main building being renovated and, and construction completed.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying, that's good.
Okay.
All right, okay, so Mr. Mr. Um, Lo seconded the motion. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lo? I saw you say aye. All right, Mr. Yaski?
Aye.
And Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Now, um, just a quick thing, um, so we're kind of, uh, as Mr. Lo got ahead of us. Earlier. Yeah, we are going to mess around a little bit with the agenda. Uh, because we are making time for an applicant to be able to join us in the public hearing. Um, two things, uh, the first one is, I would like to suggest to you that we make the three Pickwick decision at this time. If that is amenable. And the second thing is that we, when we open the public hearing, we will go straight to the two applications for the Standwich Club. Which are five and six. The applicant for Standwich is aware we're moving them up and is prepared. Uh, does that, um, would anybody like to second my motion for that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lo has seconded, all in favor. Aye.
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 Okay, uh, so with Pickwick, um. Uh, I'm going to read you the whole thing, and then I think you're going to maybe want to hear the con, the conditions again for Pickwick. Um, I've got thirteen conditions on it. So you might want to, when we get to that, you might, there's going to be a test. Sorry.
We don't like tests.
All right, uh, as to the application of Pickwick Properties LLC for a final site plan and special permit for a proposed restaurant. In the southern ground floor space of building three of Pickwick Plaza. On a property located at one to three Greenwich Avenue in the CGBR and the Central Greenwich Impact Overlay Zone. Whereas the application represents a change of use and restaurants are a permitted use by a special permit. Unless the property is within the front and rear building lines. Pickwick Plaza appears to have a front building line, but does not appear to have a rear building line. Whereas the existing FAR of one-point-six-six is legally non-conforming and would not change with the proposed use. Whereas two-hundred-and-ten seats are proposed for the restaurant with a hundred-and-thirty-two for indoor dining. Ten for the bar, eight for the seafood counter, and sixty for seasonal outdoor dining. The outdoor dining will be comprised of twenty-four seats along the south facade of building three. And thirty-six seats within the courtyard area between buildings two and three. Whereas none of the sixty outdoor dining seats will ever be shifted indoors and will only be for the outdoor dining season. Indoor dining will be limited, indoor seating will be limited to a hundred-and-fifty seats. Whereas the applicant would be required to submit an administrative application annually for the renewal of seasonal outdoor dining. Whereas the elevator for the parking garage accesses building three, and there will be two host stations in the restaurant. One for customers accessing the restaurant from the elevator lobby, and a second one for customers entering from Greenwich Avenue. Whereas the ZEO issued comments on six-nineteen noted knowing, noting no issues of the commission finds the parking to be sufficient. Whereas the existing parking garage includes eight-hundred-and-one parking spaces as for the stipulation for Pickwick Plaza. The applicant has provided floor plans for the garage with dimension spaces and parking counts for April, May, June, and September of twenty-twenty-three. And has noted an average of four-hundred spaces available during business days. Whereas Sewer issued comments dated five-twenty-two-twenty-four, the applicant requesting the applicant submit a signed letter acknowledging. It's comments, and this letter was received on five-twenty-nine-twenty-four. Whereas Health issued comments dated five-twenty-twenty-four, indicating it would need to do a full plan review prior to submission to the building department. For permitting, but that the Health Department currently has no issues with the proposal. Whereas the applicant noted refuse in cooking oil would be picked up at the loading docks by trucks entering from Mason Street at level C of the parking garage. Whereas the Fire Marshal issued comments on five-twenty-four-twenty-four, noting concerns about the exhaust hood. Required for the cooking line location, egress plan of the space and EV, um, stations in the garage. And whereas these issues have been addressed satisfactorily. Whereas the application has not been. Whereas the application has not been reviewed by the ARC and the applicant is required to submit for ARC review any exterior changes including facade, lighting, landscaping and or signage. Whereas the applicant provided an energy narrative for the proposal and noted that Pickwick Plaza operations include energy efficient features, recycling efforts, reduction in paper waste, EV charging stations in the parking garage, and the landlord has set a target of net zero carbon by twenty forty. For the proposed build out, the narrative includes energy efficient HVAC systems, features for prudent use of utility energy star appliances and potential for more energy saving measures above code. Whereas the applicant has offered to limit special events to a hundred persons on weekdays and requested no limits be applied for special events on weekends and whereas occupancy at all times would be limited to a hundred and fifty persons. Whereas the commission repeatedly expressed concern that the currently limited availability of on-street parking would be insufficient to accommodate a restaurant of this size during peak hours. Whereas the commission finds the existing garage would offer a satisfactory supply of parking for the proposed use as long as those who drive to the site mainly utilize the available below-ground parking. Whereas the commission finds the availability of garage parking must therefore be made highly visible and easily accessible to restaurant customers. Whereas the commission further finds that the customer garage usage can and should be encouraged with wayfinding signage, marketing communications, valet parking service, and general ease of access from the garage to the restaurant. Whereas the applicant has discussed with the commission some preliminary signage and communication concepts. Therefore, be it resolved that this application is hereby approved with the following conditions required of the applicant. Prior to zoning permit, to demonstrate that the two host stations will have at least equal prominence. Greater prominence for the station encountered when first entering the restaurant from the elevator lobby is very much encouraged. Prior to TCO, develop and obtain staff and ARC sign-off for exterior signage to indicate garage access and availability at no charge for restaurant customers. Prior to TCO, develop and obtain staff sign-off for a full wayfinding signage program for within the garage. Provide two parking valets during lunch for the first six months of operation. Review with staff at the end of this period and obtain approval for the plan going forward. Provide at least one parking valet during dinner service for the first year of operation. Review with staff at the end of this period and decide the plan going forward. Ensure that all customer communications clearly indicate the availability of and access to garage part, party, parking. Hold no events of more than fifty people during weekday lunch hours. Hold no night events of more than a hundred people for the first year of operation. Condition to be modified subsequently, subject to staff approval. Permanently limit total restaurant customer capacity to a hundred and fifty. Require all employees to park in the garage. Continue to encourage the general public to utilize the garage on a paying basis during the hours days when surplus spaces are generally available. Submit to and appear before the ARC as required by the regulations. Address all other outstanding staff and departmental comments. Finally, the applicant shall also consider listing the restaurant address as three Pickwick Plaza rather than one to three Greenwich Avenue, as this would encourage customers to orient away from parking on Greenwich Avenue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on a second. Seated, seated.
I'm not seated, Mr. Wells is seated for me.
Okay, so everybody else is seated. Okay, so Mr. Levy has, so we're asking at the hours when the garage is crowded with workers that we have two valets available. And we're saying that this would be for the, for the first six months to get people used to doing this. Then at night, you would only need one because you have a lot of parking available. We all talked about how important it is to let customers know. And I suggested that we limit the events some more. So, up to you guys, I think you all took notes, wow. Any comments on the motion as it is before you?
Just a question or maybe a suggestion for clarification, because at least as I wrote it down, it said permanent limit on restaurant of a hundred and fifty. Don't we want to say a permanent limit on inside occupancy of restaurant for?
Yes, if I didn't, we need to make it clear, permanently limit total restaurant inside, okay, indoor. Okay, indoor, got it. Anything else, Mr. Lowes? Low? All right, Mr. McRae.
I'm finding this application is woefully incomplete per the standards set by this committee. The, just as an example, the floor plans that were provided are not the scale. The critical sign program is not sufficient, and that's actually the thing that's driving this. A sign program indicates the graphic of each sign and on a plan where the sign is located, so it's very clear and give you part of the record that we are creating. I don't believe that actually requiring an applicant to do something before a TCO is a good idea. Specifically since it's a TCO, the project is done, it's going to open. We should be always conditioning something on prior to the zoning permit because it is the record that we are setting. And if we don't have that as a record during construction, we can never be assured that actually the, the work gets done. As part of the graphics, the sign program, we need to see the final graphics and the locations for our records.
Approved by staff, right?
No, we should be looking at it. We, because it is critical for us, the commission, because the whole thing hinges on getting people from a place to a place. So the wayfinding is a critical thing that we need to look at. Not let it go to staff because our decision is based on what that does and how it works, and if it's sufficient to us, I need to see it. Okay, and this all goes to actually putting this application together as a record of the decision. Because somewhere down the line, if there is an issue, we have a complete record of the decision, that signs went up and they were in the right place, that the floor plan is the scale, and that it's part of our record. We have specific site plan standards and application standards that I do not at all believe have been met in this application.
Does anybody have any comments on having the signage program returned to the commission?
Is there? I mean, are there criteria by which we could set that if it doesn't fall within XYZ, then it goes back to the commission? Just to kind of make it smoother?
Mr. Levy, I would believe that actually it should have been part of the original application and not, should not be coming back. We don't have it now, we should not be making a decision on it. Again, as I said, and as we had mentioned before previously, this is any complete application in my mind.
Mr. Yeski?
I like the additional limitations on numbers of people. I really would like to beef up where you talk about encouraging communications. We talked specifically some highlighted things, particularly their website. Any invitations, any announcements of special events? Ongoing marketing, they might be putting ads in the Greenwich publications and other publications.
So, the modification is this information will be included on the website?
Website, any invitations for special events? Any advertising? Which I assume they're going to do to talk about the restaurant, it's new. That can be done technically, as we all know, putting codes in there. They can, on the website, literally, what you do when you go into parking, in many places, they give you a pass right on the website. So there's a lot of those kinds of details. I'm really pushing to educate the public how, and I love your idea about making this three Pickwick Plaza instead of Greenwich Avenue. I didn't think of that, that was a great suggestion. Because we wanted to go to the garage, and that should be on the website, on the announcements, on invitations, things along those lines. We're trying to educate the public to go to that parking garage, and we're trying to get them to encourage it.
Okay, so for the insurance customer communications clearly indicate the availability, include this information on the website, event invitations, and any and all advertising communications. All right, Mr. Wells?
Just so we're not unanimous, you know, in terms of the signage, I'm okay with it going to staff if they're uncomfortable bouncing it back. As I said before, I'm concerned that some of these applications that we get to a level of micromanagement that it exceeds the benefit that we're trying to achieve. And I think we got to get through these applications, we got to make decisions, we got to make recommendations. But we can't have them coming back, back and back. And this, in my, in my mind, is one of those applications we need to move it forward.
Well, and one of the things I was struggling with, and maybe Patrick can answer it for me, so they come back to us with the signage. It's not like we can now deny the application because we don't like the signage. So if ARC likes the exterior signage and, and staff is happy with the interior, I'm not sure what we add to it because we can't change the status of the application, that's the thing, or maybe we can, Patrick?
Well, I mean, I certainly couldn't, I wouldn't say you could change the parameters, but if there are criteria that you want to suggest that gets incorporated, I think adding it to the letter is important. Otherwise, it's going to be up to staff, and we're happy to reflect it back or return it back to you all if you want to see the version that we think is acceptable. But, you know, if there are specific factors, I think having some of those in there, if the must haves need to be in, should be in the decision.
How about if you have concerns, it comes back to the commission as a discussion item?
Absolutely, and we would, we would do that regardless, but I think.
That's a compromise. We're not, we're not micromanaging that way, but we're there if there's an issue. I mean, God forbid we would ever micromanage. I can't believe Aron thinks we do that.
Never do it, never seen it.
Mr. Yeski?
Yeah, I think Patrick made a good suggestion. Patrick, can you also, assuming, we're going to take a vote, but assuming it goes in one direction or another, can you also come back and show us what the communications, detailed communications are going to be? The website, the events, all that, the advertising, I'd love to see, I would, I would like for them to submit examples just like signs. The signs are useless if we can't get the people to the garage, so I'd love to see those too. You can come back and show those to us?
Yeah, absolutely. If that's something, when we get it to a form that we think is acceptable based on this conversation, I'm happy to let it go through the commission again, just to show what the progress was.
I want, for one, would love to see that detail. I'd love to see the website look, I'd love to see the invitation list, I'd love to see, I'm hoping to see it in the public, hoping to go to the restaurant. So I'd love to see all that detail. I'm hoping they're going to be a little more creative. We've been kind of dragging them, you know, pulling teeth to get here, so I'd like to keep suggesting because you can then go back to them and say, here's a couple other ideas. And again, if it's on the other side of the decision, we can't force them, but hopefully they would adopt any other suggestions we have.
Well, certainly if they're not satisfying the intent of the commission decision, we wouldn't be giving them a CO or any permits or anything like that, you know, depending on how we organize the format if it was approved. So yes, we can do.
And of the chair, did you say that we're requiring them to list the address of the restaurant as three Pickwick Plaza or?
No, consider, consider, I, I'm not sure that it's legally possible. And I, I don't know how they're going to react to this. We never talked about it in our discussions. And it was just, I'm thinking that at least that could lead people to go to the garage, but they, that may be a negotiation with staff.
Well, I don't know what we can do legally. I'm always tripping up legal.
See, because if you Google it.
I don't think it's about legal address. I think it's about the, the information that is needed for them to operate their restaurant. So I think it's just informational, you're not, there's no, there's no standing here. So this is something that we're trying to help them with. If they don't want to do it and they run into problems, then I guess they're going to have problems.
That's an example of Patrick, of the kind of communication that I like to see that you work on with them, and I would strongly endorse that. It may sound like one little thing, but think about all the GPS. That's where people are going to go, and if we have the signs there, then they get into the restaurant easier. And just take Greenwich, I made the same suggestion to the attorney, he had a map showing going down Greenwich Avenue, I said, take that out, we want them off Greenwich Avenue, it would be a mess. The top of that avenue would be a mess if they have a special event, so we just don't want Greenwich Avenue mentioned at all. So, work with, work with them, and, but I personally would strongly suggest they adopt that.
Patrick?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely plausible. I don't know if anyone's been aware, but like, there are, there are hard to get to parking lots and things like that and other establishments elsewhere where the address that you're going to when you click on the link is not the one that they get their mail at, so to speak, so, and I don't think the chair is asking for them to change their address officially, but it's the navigation software and the geolocating and all the things that go along with the web. The web communications would direct people to the entrance of the parking garage on West Putnam Avenue and not in front on Greenwich Avenue, right?
Yeah, you got it, that's exactly what we want. If you go to other countries, they'll give you a postal code, and it'll take you to the parking garage, even though the address is somewhere else.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's not, I don't, I don't claim to be an expert, but I don't believe it's hard. I think it's been done in numerous occasions when I'm trying to find other places and other municipalities and.
Well, this is kind of a unique situation where, you know, you can see why somebody might list a parking garage separate, but this is one where we're trying to educate the public to go to that parking garage. So everything we can do, address everything, is really critical in this case. And then people driving down Greenwich Avenue, we're going to defeat the purpose, assuming this gets approved. If it doesn't, we'll keep talking about it.
And the key here is the signage along the street on Putnam. Because if it's not clear and you have to slow down to make sure you know where the I mean, I've passed this parking lot entrance for the past thirty years, and I really keep on forgetting that it's even there. It's not well announced, it's really a kind of a an odd kind of entry into the building because there's nothing formally announcing it, there's no parking on the street. I mean, this is something that would call out for some kind of pylons or something to announcing, you know, come to this restaurant kind of thing, and this is the entrance.
I agree, it is an odd, yeah, put a sandwich board there. Free parking for this restaurant. Now, those are the kinds of things I'm hoping staff will work with the applicant on and be more clever. I've been saying along, they're not, you know, killing themselves coming up with clever ideas. We're trying to help them, because I think it's going to hurt their business. And not to mention the restaurant across the street is owned by these people too. It's a good suggestion. You need to make the entrance a lot more visible. Put a sandwich board out there, but I bet that violates some zoning regulation that we have.
Yes, indeed. But, you know, maybe we could help them out. Mr. McRae?
It's interesting, because what I'm hearing here and what's being said, you know, I'd love to see the detail. You know, it's kind of thing, it's like, okay, so everything that everybody just said is exactly what I'm saying. Seeing the detail, getting the information. You know, those kind of things. And actually, uh, you know, we've asked for this a number of times, and if this application has gone around too many times. You know, it's not us. We've been disciplined to ask, ask the applicant for this information. But now we're saying, oh, we're gonna help them out, you know, do something with this application, let it all fall and see what happens after. I think, Mr. Yesky, you brought up uh, a specific, specific issue that is important. That if this doesn't work, if the whole thing goes sideways. And this, they can't get into the garage and they don't know where they're going. The top of the, uh, top of Greenwich Avenue, you could wind up a, a real disaster. And I think that's one of the things that we always keep in our mind is, how do we prevent that from happening? We had an emergency restaurant down the, down the street. It wasn't on the avenue, but we recognized the situation. If everybody showed up and everybody parked there in a two hundred seat restaurant during an event, what happens with the parking in the neighborhood? Um, I don't believe that we should ever be helping an applicant. We can guide them through the process, but they need to do their own work. If we were gonna help applicants, I don't believe we're doing our job.
So I'm seeing.
We can tell them where to go and how to get there, but they need to give us the information that we're requesting. And we try and bending over backward on some kind of a decision without the proper information is not helping anybody.
So I'm seeing one thing a little differently from you, Nick, which is because the applicant did not do the work we requested. We are asking more of them than we might have if we had been, if the applicant had been forthcoming with.
You're correct, but it's after the fact, and we've asked them a number of times. And I'm really kind of, I'm really kind of sick and tired of having to ask and not receiving, and then getting subpar information from applicants and the applicant, not necessarily this one. Okay, saying, oh, here it is. No, if I'm asking for something specific, we should have it come back in. And if you're not giving it to us. You know, I'm not gonna go bend over backwards to help you out. We have specific site plan standards. We have standards that are set up by this commission, so it makes this an easy process. And yeah, this has gone around a couple of times, because I believe the applicant has not made it easy.
Yes, I, I agree. The applicant has not been forthcoming in responding to our request. Mr. Yesky.
Let me ask a, a question on the process, and you might know it, Nick might know it, I don't. So the staff takes a look and we get a, a peek of it and we're unhappy. Is that prior to zoning permit?
Um, I peek at what? I'm not following.
We, we look at their signs, we look at the communications with potential customers, parking and all that, and we want more and more and more. Um, is all that, does that happen, Patrick, before zoning permit?
I, I think in this case it can. Uh, I, I would not be against recommending that gets done before a C O because the design of the restaurant may, you know, the, the, the sort of the interior design stuff may get more fleshed out the further along it gets, and then that's, that's a more opportune time, cause as the grand opening comes, that's when all the you know, the press starts and all those things. So I, I, I would not be objectionable to it being uh, later or in that process, but typically that's, you know, if you're asking me what happens normally. The, the list that, the motion that you guys make with the conditions, we go through the plans before they get permit and, and make sure that those items are addressed. And then if they're specific to the timing, we, we do them in the right order, and if they're not, and they need to be done later, we, 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 we move, excuse me, we coordinate those with later approvals that need to be granted for the process.
Okay, but my question was if, if they give us, they continue to lag on more robust detail on everything we've talked about. Can we take a look at that before you issue a zoning permit? C O is too late in the process.
Um. If the commission feels that way, that's fine. I, I, I don't have a particular sense that it is late or not, because again, the restaurant won't be able to open without a C O, right? But um, that's, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make a hard stop wherever the commission thinks it needs to be uh, in the process.
Mr. Yesky, uh, in other applications, if we had a, a significant condition or a significant issue. Uh, as part of the decision, we've actually uh, indicated that uh, it's to return to staff. If staff is, uh, believes that actually it should be reviewed by the commission, it should come back. That's a specific statement. Uh, that way staff has direction that if for some reason it's not up to snuff, or they have questions, or they believe we should actually review it prior to them signing off on it. Um, then it comes back and we can actually put that as a condition in any app, any application.
Well, that's where I was going. So we get another look at if they've gotten better at cooperating and coming up with new ideas and better ideas and specific plans to scale, that sort of thing. Uh, even though we've approved it, we still get another shot.
Right.
So we'll. Right, but usually in, in a decision letter, it's only one, maybe two issues that could be done. This seems to be, if you're having conditions uh, to come back on a good portion of the application, it kind of defeats the purpose of actually why we reviewed it in the first place.
Well, and you know, the thing is about the application, what we're conditioning is we're totally clear that there's eight hundred parking spaces in that garage, so we, and we know that there are spaces available there. But we know that people in Greenwich, and we know this experientially, don't necessarily go to garages, but the parking is available, so under the regulations, it's available. So what we're saying is you gotta get people to use it. Um, Mr. Levy, and then I.
Thank you, Matt. Sure. So I am wondering if uh, the, the comment made about uh, C of O, I don't know if this is a kind of a condition that could be a C of O issue. So I don't think that's, that, that's relevant. So, okay.
No, we took out the C of O already. That was the first thing Nick said. I was just giving them time. We can do it. We're doing it prior to zoning permit now. We changed that already. Okay, whoever. Whoever called, yeah, I, I was trying to give them more time because you really only need the signage once you get to the T C O. Because you're ready to have to start people going in. So we, we changed that to prior to zoning permit, and at this point, I believe we're doing the signage to come back to the commission, even if staff does not have an issue, we would like to see it. Correct?
Communications, and the communications.
And the communications, everything, all of that has to come back to the commission prior to.
A zoning permit.
Prior to, um, with, all of it has to come back prior to zoning permit. Okay. Where did I put that? Zoning permit. Okay, so the changes are those that we just reviewed, all the information. Um, the uh, permanently limit the indoor, it's indoor limited to one fifty. Return to the commission with all the signage uh, prior to zoning permit. And uh, the commission will review it as a discussion item. And that's it. Any other comments?
Didn't Dennis want the marketing materials?
Yes, we included that all.
Okay, sorry.
In, ensure all customer communications clearly indicate, include the information on the, the website. All event invitations and any advertising communications.
May I add one more thing?
Of course.
You have, I also like this idea that you're limiting the number of seats for a year, right? How long was it? A year?
Um, the events, though the events was no night events of more than a hundred people for the first year of operation.
Right.
And then, um.
Fifty.
And then fifty ever, um, during the first, and then no events of more than fifty people during weekday lunch periods. I have that as ever, but um, we should probably just have a revisit of that after the first year.
I can, before, but we also add that uh, in that period. We would like to monitor the success of the parking, meaning if they're gonna give away free parking, they should know how many people are parking in the garage. Uh, and I would love to see what that is. Um, you know, it.
I wasn't sure how we would be able to monitor the success. The only.
They have, they will give out parking, something to, to get free parking in the garage, right? Uh, and they're gonna turn it in. Even billionaires like free parking, so they're gonna get that free parking. They should be, that's just one way to monitor it.
Okay, so applicant to provide a report after six months of park, of, of garage parking utilization?
Yeah, that'd be a good way of doing it.
Six months seem good?
Yeah, and by the way, I don't know whether you go in the garage, you get a ticket or something, uh, or they're just gonna leave the gate up for, cause it's free. Uh, no, you, you, they, I, do you get a ticket when you go in the garage and they punch it, that kind of thing?
It, they, they do, they do have a, a booth, and I don't know if, um, a lot, most people have a badge to get in. So I imagine that the, the non-badge holders would be tracked or be able to be tracked, so I think.
Monitoring question. Let them figure out the details, but it sounds to me like they, they've got a built-in system to be able to monitor how many people are parking in the garage. How many cars are parking in the garage?
How about, do we do six months and one year, and then we'll play it from there?
Well, I mean, yeah, that's fine. No, no question. No, no issues.
We just have to remember.
Or six, about, uh, we can reevaluate it after six months if we need any more time.
Okay.
That was my suggestion if the, if the data.
Months. Um, uh, potentially one year and also potentially a year depending on six months. Okay. One year. All right. All right.
Okay. Another question?
Yeah.
Does the town track traffic jams? If the top of the avenue gets plastered, do the, do the police get called? Do they do something? Is there any monitoring of what happens? The top of the avenue is pretty crowded right now. If, if this doesn't go well, do they, do they have a police report on traffic jams?
You know, um, they've been doing um, traffic counts, some vehicle counts. I know they did the parking inventory. I was thinking, Patrick, I should have referenced it in the decision that we have that parking inventory that D P W did. Um, the traffic, whether or not there's been a jam at six P M last Saturday, the town does not track.
And some of the, some of the lights have uh, counters in them. Uh, there're no, no personal data is being kept, but it's, it's a vehicle count. I don't know if the Greenwich Avenue intersection is one of those, but they do at the, I know the, the newer lights at the major off ramps have those sort of monitors, cause the lights' timing changes with, you know, the backups and things like that, so.
Yeah, but, but top of the avenue, and there's only one light there and the, you know, that's nice, but um. So you don't know where they do track, do, do they do vehicle counts now on, in that going down the avenue, that kind of thing?
Uh, they would, they would only do, and it, there would only be an official report if there's some kind of an accident, which I think we should avoid completely, but the police department doesn't do counts. It would be highway division if they needed to know how many cars are going down.
Um, the parking services, um, D C Gray did a count of traffic on the avenue. Um, my, about eight months ago. I know they've done a couple of counts, but they don't routinely do it. So that's the thing. We don't know. Um, okay, anything else? All right, so um, shall we vote? Uh, Mr. Levy? Mr. Levy? Oh, shit. Let me try calling him. He was here.
He just disappeared or what?
I don't know what happened. He's right there.
Maybe he got a phone call.
Yeah. I can't see anybody else now, though. Patrick, if you can hear me, could you try finding his house phone? I'd, oh, there you are, Mr. Levy. Thank you, Mr. Levy. We've been calling you because we've been trying to vote. Peter? Levy? Mr. Levy, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. We've been waiting for you, cause we've been trying to vote. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy votes aye. Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Ms. Jones? I'm sorry, not Ms. Jones. I take it back. Mr. Yesky is aye. Miss, Mr. McRae?
Nay.
Albin is aye, and with that, the motion passes for one with Mr. McRae voting nay. And we will now uh, open the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Bazili? Um, if you would kindly raise your hand so we can get you in. There he is.
Uh, we're going out to Teconic Road?
Um, we are going to Teconic, we are going to Teconic Road. We've now opened the public hearing. And um, with um, the commission having consented. We are going to uh, go to Teconic Road. I'm waiting for Mr. Cohen to come into the meeting.
We're moving old Greenwich back, cause we need to wait for somebody, uh, is that, was that the idea? Yes, okay. Just wanted to understand. That, that's reasonable.
Yeah, the, the, the team isn't available until six, so.
I know, reasonable, reasonable.
Yeah, and since it's volunteers, we're accommodating. We would not be as helpful to. Mr. Cohen, are you ready? All right, so well, you bought us, we bought you a little time. Do you wanna unmute Mr. Cohen and turn on your camera and everything? Just wanna make sure you're at your technological best.
We're combining uh, five and six.
I have to wait for Mr. Cohen, though, to come in. There he is, hopefully. He's just unmuted. Uh, Mr. Cohen, your screen is black, but there you go. Okay, you good?
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty, so um, with your permission, we're combining items five and six?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, if the one, item five is the Sandwich Club Inc. and Teconic Home LLC for a final resubdivision to consolidate three oh nine Teconic Road within the club, the Sandwich Club's main campus located at eight eighty-eight North Street in the R A four. Uh, item six is the Sandwich Club Inc. and Teconic Home LLC for a final site plan and special permit to extend the club's existing private nonprofit club use to include a new short golf course at eight eighty-eight North Street, and if you would kindly proceed, Mr. Cohen.
Seeding?
Yeah, Mr. Low.
Um, uh, seated on this application are all the regular members.
No, no, Mr. Low is recusing.
I'm, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Low is recusing from this. Okay, thank you.
See you guys shortly.
Um, so Ms. Jones, you are seated for Mr. Low. Alrighty, now, Mr. Cohen, you can start for real.
Thank you. Bruce Cohen, representing the Sandwich Club. Who, as you know, uh, is uh, one of the wonderful, uh, private golf clubs in town. Uh, they've been situated uh, up on uh, uh, to Sandwich Road since nineteen sixty-three. In nineteen sixty-three, they purchased a hundred and eighty-three acre parcel of land and developed the same as a, as a golf course. The existing home on the property was renovated uh, as a, to serve as a club's, club house, and it continues uh, to this day. In uh, two thousand twenty-one, uh, the club uh, through an affiliated entity, purchased a twenty point nine acre parcel uh, that butts its golf course, uh, located uh, at three oh nine Teconic Road. And the application tonight is for the purpose uh, first of consolidating the two lots into a single two hundred and four acre parcel, all with the same uh, club, uh, nonprofit, uh, private club designation. And to permit the development on the uh, twenty point nine acre parcel of uh, what is known as a, a short golf course. Short golf course is pretty much what it does. What it implies, which is a, a, a club with shorter uh, drives uh, to attract a slightly different uh, kind of golfer than uh, that, than those tackling the uh, more difficult course at uh, at Sandwich Club. Um, and uh, I think on the, I, I quickly addressed the uh, uh, the consolidation issue. Um, I wonder, uh, Pat, uh, if we could show the images just to indicate roughly what we're talking about. Or Tracy.
Well, yeah, they.
Hmm. That doesn't really show the, the whole. That doesn't really show the, the whole picture. I wonder what's going on with these. Pictures, yeah, maybe, hmm. That's, that's, I guess, better, much smaller. Anyway, the club as it exists right now. Is laid out, as you can see, the, the golf course, course is clear. Uh, to the southwest of the existing golf course is the twenty plus acre parcel that we're talking about. And as you can see, uh, it, the, uh, the parcels are immediately adjacent to each other. With regard to the consolidation, uh. Um, I, I believe that all of the comments we received from the staff on that issue. Uh, were positive. Uh, there's one issue that I should draw your attention, which is a comment that we. Uh, got from DPW along the way, which noted correctly that by. Uh, combining the two lots, we were turning the existing driveway into, into. Uh, three oh nine Teconic into the third club driveway, which without a. Uh, a, an approval from the highway division is not permitted, so we, we will. Accept the, as a condition to the, the lot consolidation. If the commission granted, uh, the fact that we've got to. Go to the highway division to be sure that they're okay with that, that third driveway. The third driveway. Uh, at three oh nine had served a, a house, which you see on this aerial photograph that's been. Uh, demolished a couple of years ago. It will continue to, uh, serve the golf club. But it will be gated, it will be used only by, uh, maintenance people and their access will be. Uh, very limited. Uh, we're guessing approximately once a week. And based on that fact, the fact that we're serving such a large parcel, we expect that. That third driveway will be permitted, but if it isn't, we'll. Make new arrangements, but we would, if the commission agrees with me that this. Lot provision, though not constitute a subdivision or a subdivision, we would accept that. Uh, approval as a, as a condition. And now, if I could, um, quickly just review the, the proposed plan. Um, the next. Oh, interesting. The next image is a. Proposed lot consolidation map, and it basically shows. Uh, with. It, or it used to show, uh, the three. Driveways that I'm talking about.
It just takes them a second to load up. Sorry.
Yep.
They're coming.
That's.
They're large files. Mr. Conti's files are large.
Yeah.
So that's page three.
Yeah, page two is what I was looking at.
Page two was the, oh, you want to go back to the one with the blue?
I did, yeah. And that's the lot consolidation map, basically showing the entire two hundred and four acre parcel. Uh, with the newly acquired lake on the southeast corner. Uh, immediately to its north, the driveway that we're proposing to gate and limit the use of. There is an existing driveway that accesses the club to the north on Teconic Road. Uh, that is also gated, but it's used by card carrying club members. And of course, I think as everybody knows, the main access to the club is at eight eight eight, uh, North Street on the left. Uh, and the, uh, the next image, Tracy, that you were going to show is. Uh, a, kind of a, a, a nice picture that was prepared by. Uh, John Conti's office, showing how the club proposes to develop the short course. And it basically, and that shows the, the new development. Uh, it shows nine holes that will be created. Uh, it will. And each of the nine holes are designated, if you kind of look carefully at this. The access to this, the course will be through the, the main. Uh, a club accessway. The parking will be the same as it is right now, hundred and eighty-eight spaces. And no new parking is going to be added or, or need to be added. And this shows a very significant landscape plan compared by the county office. Uh, this, as you know, has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission. Uh, as well as an approval that was granted last night by the wetlands agency. Uh, the, the next. Image, George Tracy. Uh, is really prepared by us in response to some questions that were. Raised at the briefing yesterday, so I'll just kind of go through it. Uh, quickly, uh, and tell you what these colors mean. Needless to say, the, the blue is the new, is the pond that is going to be a part of this development. Uh, the green are, show all of the wetlands on the site, which were, as I reviewed by the Wetlands Agency. Uh, the two yellow spots are detention areas, uh, and the. Uh, one, two, three, four pink areas are rain gardens, and this, uh, this. Uh, drainage system was developed as part of the, the golf course development. Uh, it was reviewed by the GPW, uh, that, uh, that approved it. Question rose last night about, um. Uh, are we going to use the pond for irrigation? The answer is no, there, the irrigation is currently provided for. The main golf course through a combination of ponds and bedrock wells. They're, they're approved by deep, and they're under the jurisdiction of deep. And we are going to extend that system, uh, which largely involves pond water, but ponds. That are already in use as part of the irrigation system, pond water from the existing property. The, uh, question was noted by conservation about the. Uh, use of rain gardens, and as you can see, uh, rain gardens are a part of the development. Uh, the rain gardens are, will not be separately landscaped, according to our project landscape. Architect, but will be planted with the deeper, uh, grass turf that will blend in. Uh, with the, with the. Design of the overall new golf course. To give you an idea of what it's going to look like, the golf club architects have prepared a couple of. Uh, a couple of renderings, which I think is quite an achievement, but here they are, so that you get an idea of what the. A pretty good idea of what the golf course is going to look like when, when finished. Uh, this first.
Um, if you don't mind, Mr. Cohen, Mr. McRae's got his hand up. I think he'd like to ask you something.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Coder, maybe it's, it's the design team. I, I, I have a question. What, understanding this is a golf course. It's all lawn and so many words and sand traps. What do the detention or, and or rain gardens do? Are they collecting rainwater from? Uh, the, the pathways or anything, or is it, I'm, I'm still at a loss of why they're needed to collect rainwater.
Uh, really, it's a very important part of the drainage system that was approved by, uh, Mr. Paredes. At DPW, uh, if you'd like a more detailed discussion of that system, I believe that.
No, no, I think, I don't think it's the detail of the system. It's more like, what is it collecting? From, from where?
So it, it, it's intended to provide, uh, water quality, uh. Uh, assistance and help attenuate, uh, the, the overflow from a large, uh, rain events. That's the way they were explained to me, but the system all works together as, as part of what? The rain gardens, the detention areas, and I guess ultimately the pond.
Mr. Cohen, would you, would you like a little more fill in from?
From. I would love that, sure.
Yes, Mr. Conti, please.
Okay, and, um, John the Third here, he's the civil engineer, um, but I, since you said you didn't want to detail technical. I'll just basically say, it's, you're right in the question that this is all a vegetated surface. There's very, very little pavement, so. Generally, we're not looking to collect vast swaths of rainwater coming off parking lots. However, um, we did work through this over the course of almost a year with. Uh, comments and conversations with the Wetlands Agency. And there, because there's a lot of short grass, there still is water flows that come off. And what we're doing is we're capturing the sheet flows off of the lawn areas, basically. And, and we're using two com- combination of rain gardens for water quality. And then in these horrific hundred year floodstorms that we get, the detention basins are there to really just gather, collect water prior to it going into that. Uh, old existing pond, so it, it really is just to collect surface flows. Um, treat them and then have it slowly dissipate down, downstream.
Okay, interesting, because I, I would suspect actually because the most of the property was, was lawn at one time, it just. You know, it rained and it went into the ground and went into the pond, so. Thank you, Mr. Conti. That's, uh, good. That's good enough. Thank you very much.
But, but, Mr. Mr. Conti can tell you that the co-efficient for a lawn. Is not as good as for other things, and so he's expecting runoff from it. Correct?
That's right. It is, it is, uh, the, the water will travel faster over lawn than it would have through woods, tall grass, shrubs. Um, of course, much more slowly than parking or pavement. But again, this is a belts and suspenders plan with the abundance of, you know, caution in place to. Uh, just, the, the, the club asked us to do, you know, an absolutely environmentally five star project on this, which they, they have. Endorsed, and I believe that's what we've done.
And Mr. Conti, you. Uh, when we spoke with you all the first time, we, we all talked about, we talked about respecting the existing topography. Is, have you reduced the amount of manipulation and the amount of cut and fill in this project?
Yeah, it's, it's a balanced, it's a balanced site, which means we're not trucking in or out. Quantities of earth. We're basically pushing things around to create playable surfaces. You can see from the image on the screen now, sort of in the middle, you see the little, the little three car garage that's converted into a comfort station. And in front of that is a relatively larger area. I do want to point out that this was a very, very early concept rendering, as Mr. Cohen pointed out. This is not the exact configuration, but you can see that it is still very much, there's a hundred, I think, a hundred and. Forty feet or so, uh, from bottom to top, um, and so it's still very much, um, part of the natural topography, as you can see by the wooded borders. Um, so there's that large level area where the house was. And then that steepest point right in the middle, where you see that brown tall grass, we're leaving that all alone. Yeah, we're, we're planting junipers in there. But we are not cutting into or modifying that. So for the most part, um, we, we did create a section through the site to show. Uh, which we're happy to show if you'd like, but yeah, we are, um. Clearly working with the topography and moving soil around, but over, overall, we are respecting. The underlying grade as much as possible. The, 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 the course was designed, I, I'm not the golf course designer, that was OCM. Uh, they, they basically designed the golf course, and then we kind of put the plantings and cart path locations and things like that around the edges.
Okay.
As you can see from, from this.
You've got questions also. Hold on a second, Mr. Cohen. Sorry, Mr. Levy and Mr. McRae are back with questions.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, wanted to get an idea of the. If there, there's going to be a, a more robust planting. Uh, schedule for this. You, you said, you know, before. Will there be shrubs? Will there be trees? But, you know, and yes, this is changed, you say. And I noticed that these rain gardens are at the foot of, uh, this. Uh, ledge, this kind of ledge of, of, uh, grass. And so that's to help mitigate the flow from the. Plateau above, I suppose. So, uh, but, but there are still, I mean, it's a big, wide open area, and maybe that's part of the design of these new golf courses to not. Plant too much. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the beauties of this design is that there's lots of tall grass meadows, and that's really the vegetative cover. Uh, over the areas that are not direct fairway or green. As you can see, th- these tall grasses are shown in brown here, these large swaths. Of, of tall vegetation that will be in the middle area so that it doesn't impede, you know. From taking a shot and having the ball fly over them. Um, we are adding, uh, somewhere in, in the number of a hundred and seventy-nine. Uh, trees, dozens and dozens of plants and shrubs. Um, the rain gardens will be vegetated with, with the, the native grasses. Um, and so there is a very robust planting plan that goes along with this, which is on the page that Mr. Cohen was showing previously.
Yeah, per- perhaps, Mr. Levy, I went by it too quickly, but that, uh, nice looking landscape like plan, there it is. Is, uh, no, there it is.
It's L six.
It's L six is right. And I think it's the third sheet.
There it is.
There you are. That, that is illustrated.
Reloading.
Pardon me?
It's just reloading.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Uh, that's the plan.
This is the point that I, yeah, this is the point that I just want to clarify. So, uh, there, there's lots of planting a- along the edges of the course, but, um, is, is this the new kind of design where, uh? Golf courses try not to put, uh, too much vegetation. Uh, and very open.
I believe that is the concept.
Yeah.
But. And, and as I noted before, it was reviewed, uh, by the Conservation Commission, who noted what, uh, John just mentioned, which is that, uh. There were a hundred and seventy-nine new, uh, trees being planted with many, uh, uh, shrubs and perennials as well. Also, uh, she made a, a point, uh, Beth Evans did, uh, of something that I heard you mention during the course. You commissioners mentioned during the course of the briefing, which is that, uh. This parcel, when it was acquired by, uh, the club, could have been divided into, uh, three. Uh, residential lots, substantial residential lots, and they're, they're not going to be. They're going to remain really open. As open space, uh, for the, I guess, uh, future that is going to go on and on as the rest of the club has as well. It's not a permanent designation, as Ms. Alvin noted, but it's, it's open space for as long as, uh, we're going to be around, I guess.
Depending on how many planning and zoning hearings we sit through, right?
Yeah.
Uh, anything else, folks, or, um, any other questions? Um, we had just a couple of outstanding comments. Uh, uh, Health Department, uh, doesn't have anything, as you know, on the abandonment of the. Septic, but that, that's prior to building permit. And there was one other, you did, you did not have any comments from any changes that Wetlands was looking for? I was just curious. Because obviously they supersede us, so.
No, they, they approved the plan as, as submitted.
Right, Wet, Wetlands had no changes. I saw their kind of draft permit today.
Got. Okay.
Health, Health Department did have a couple of comments from Alvin, which we can satisfy before zoning permit.
Okay, anybody else from the commission? Does anybody have any questions on this application? No, does, uh, Mr. Cohen, I'm going to go to public comment for this. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the stand, which golf course proposal, please raise your virtual hand? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody who wants to speak on Stan, which I believe that that the issues that are outstanding from from the staff comments can be addressed prior to permit and would not require our action at this time. I think the only comment from that's outstanding right now is this question of but there were two things, one is DPW traffic originally asked for a resubmit because of traffic. But I think there was a misunderstanding in that the club is not, then you didn't touch on this, Mr. Cohen, so I just want to put it on the record, there is no plan to increase membership at this time. The membership has been permanent, so DPW was looking at a traffic study, but the traffic would not change, and we talked about that yesterday, we don't expect that the traffic will change. You would also have to do the driveway with them, whether or not you get to keep it. And that I think everybody had asked you about the detention ponds. We don't have a full comment from conservation since since this was raised, but from what you've described, I believe these detention ponds should be should meet their purpose. I'm certainly seeing that DPW is increasing, as Mr. Conti pointed out, the they're increasing the emphasis on people being able to deal with a hundred-year storm. So seeing all that, I believe that we could close both of these applications at this time. Would anybody object to closing the applications at this time? All right, I'm seeing no objections, so therefore both of these applications, both for the resub and for the site plan, just let me check, you filed it as a resub? And are both closed, I would certainly like to extend my thanks to the club for trying to be what has been described to me as the poster child for sustainability. That's how it was relayed to me, I would like to thank you both for being supportive of the club's efforts in that regard, we're very glad to see that. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, we're going to go back to our first item in the public hearing. All right. And would the applicants please, for the town of Greenwich and the Old Greenwich School kindly raise their hands? Okey-dokey. Getting there. One more. So that's from Langen. Hello, everybody, okay, so this is the, and this is item number four now. We've gone backwards in the agenda, Town of Greenwich for a final coastal site plan and special permit to construct a one-story, four-classroom, eight-thousand-square-foot addition to the Old Greenwich Elementary School at two eighty-five Sound Beach Avenue. This is in the R twelve and coastal overlay and flood hazard overlay zones. The lot is seven point three acres, and with that, will Mr. Waters be leading off?
Yes.
Okay. Wait, so you 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 wore the you wore the jacket tied to the sun's water polo game?
Or or rain dome afterwards.
Okay. And how did your team do?
They won, so it was worth it, thank you.
So they had a water polo championship, that was.
I am not in Connecticut right now, so this is not a Greenwich school behind me, but I'll be home in a couple days.
All right, so Mr. Waters, if you would proceed.
Okay, great. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and Madam Chair and and members of the commission. First, I just want to thank you for your flexibility and enabling me to to watch my son's game. We're excited to be with you guys today as you consider our final coastal site plan for approval. In a moment, I'm going to turn this over to members of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee Project Team, to include our architect, David Stein from Silver Petroselli, our civil engineers, we have Joe Devine, Kristen Mitchell here as panelists with us. And I believe our construction manager will be joining, that's Jeff Anderson from Downs, so if you see him. And of course, just to highlight for everybody that the building committee's fantastic vice chair, Jackie Welsh, is is here with us as well, so. But before I turn it over, I want to, we all did listen to your briefing yesterday, super helpful. And we appreciated a lot of the the comments, so we can kind of prep for today. And I want to speak directly to the project timeline. And then, you know, members of our team will address some of the items raised yesterday, as well as, of course, anything else that is on your mind. So, look, I I think you guys will recall this either from the press or from our previous meetings with you. We are currently on track to begin construction in the summer of twenty twenty-five. To get there, it's it it seems like it's a long way away, but everybody on my team is telling me we have a lot to do to make that happen. So, in specific, we're really moving forward on four major fronts right now in parallel. First is we're aiming to finish construction documents in our construction phasing plan this summer. So at at that point, we're going to get a final estimate on project costs. Downs, our construction manager is on track to deliver that estimate in October. And I believe Silver Petroselli is on track to get to the ninety-five percent construction documents by the end of August. So we're hopeful that feedback from town departments after this P and Z process will be fully incorporated in our drawings and that estimate. And before we seek an interim appropriation as needed and finalize in brief our construction phasing plan to the community this fall. The second front is, as you probably know, this project does now have construction funding, which is approved by the BET and the RTM in the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We expect, as I alluded to, that we're going to need an interim appropriation prior to starting construction to ensure that the town has appropriate contingency funds. You should all know that I've already discussed this with the BET and the RTM, so this will not be a surprise if it is in fact required, but we'll see what happens with our estimate. Third front is Joe Devine will be able to speak a little bit to this, we have submitted our flood management certification application to the Connecticut Deep. That application is currently pending and should be finalized in the coming months. Based on our initial conversations, we don't believe this is going to be an issue, but is a process that we need to go through. And then finally, we have submitted our grant application to the Connecticut Office of Grants Administration. You might recall that we're expecting to receive something like seven million dollars in reimbursement from the state for the project and are hoping to, you know, have our, some of the key milestone meetings with them in November so that we can appear on the state's priority list in which is released in December. So all of that begins to tie together today as we're going to need local zoning approval, final construction documents, an updated estimate, an interim appropriation, and state approvals prior to taking the project out to bid. And as you can expect, there are a number of long-lead items like switchgear and transformers that we need to purchase so we can start next summer. So, let's see, one, the other thing I would just flag quickly at the top here is that we definitely look forward to discussing the substantial improvements items we've been working on and the energy-related items in the project. We are looking, speaking with the zoning enforcement officer in the coming days about the in-depth analysis that our team has spent the last several weeks putting together. And then the other thing I would just flag is that as you all know, from having considered other school building projects, is that the town charter requires that our building committee strictly adhere to the education specifications determined by the Board of Education. In this case, it was approved, the ed specs were approved in twenty twenty-one. So we're we're they're about, they've been on the shelf for three years with a two-year feasibility process that preceded that. I think you all know this project is about resolving ADA violations in the building, resolving the sewer challenges in the building, installing a building-wide sprinkler system and HVAC system, and ensuring the building has a secure entryway per state guidelines. And finally, building a four-classroom addition to replace some of the classrooms that we we are losing to achieve ADA compliance while keeping enrollment capacity the same. So I I do, since it has come up a couple times, the Board of Ed has specifically not asked for us to do work on the building envelope, which I think our team believes would be a dramatic expansion of scope and costs. And another example is that we have not been directed to install solar panels on the roof, which I know David will speak to in a minute. Finally, I just would say, look, we we really have appreciated all of the candid and constructive feedback that we've received to date. And we're looking forward to your questions and feedback tonight. I do want to just, you know, give our thanks to Patrick and to Tracy, who really helped hold our hands through this process. And, you know, in closing, I would just say, you know, our our one simple ask is, we would, you know, that you consider closing this application either tonight or at your next meeting so that we can keep things on track in terms of the schedule. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to, I believe, David Stein from Silver Petroselli.
Yeah, thank you, James, good evening, commissioners and staff members. Again, my name is David Stein, I'm a principal in charge and licensed architect with the Architectural Engineering Firm of Silver Petroselli and Associates, we're located at thirty-one ninety Whitney Avenue in Hampden. As as James mentioned, it is a great pleasure to have the opportunity to come back and finally present our our final site plan application on behalf of the Old Greenwich School Building Committee. As you recall, we've been working with this committee since early twenty twenty-three and are currently in our final stages of the construction documents in which we plan to get to that ninety-five percent level at the end of the summer or the end of August. With all that work that we've been doing over the past year, we have definitely incorporated a considerable amount of the comments that sort of guided us on trying to find the right solution all within the context of this addition and alteration project. This building, which was originally built in nineteen oh two, it was modified or significant alterations per the record were again in nineteen nine forty-nine, nineteen fifty-seven, nineteen ninety-six, and there have been some other smaller modifications done throughout the years and different reconfigurations. As defined by our educational specs that have been given to us from the beginning, our schematics design knew that our goal of this project was based on solving and resolving the office of civil rights violations related to ADA and making sure that the building and its proper complies with that two thousand and ten ADA regulations. As part of that, in our presentation to the ARC, our design from the beginning looked at resolving the front entryway of the building. The primary entryway is now an accessible entryway. We've worked hard to make sure that that entry, that chance is showing off to the side. And those stairs, those stairs were rebuilt in nineteen ninety-six, actually, although the original ones were somewhat in that same configuration. Those clearly are not, were were never ADA accessible, so our new entryway resolves that and now now provides a secure entryway. That secure entryway does comply with the Office of Grants Administration and the state statutes for for school alteration projects, mimics the same design and security integrity as the high school project that you're familiar with, in which we are also the architect of record, that project is, will be completed at the end of this summer, so it does have glass and glazing of a ballistic and level similar similar to that. As part of that reconfiguration of the entryway, the lowest level has a variety of of steps and levels to that. We are right-sizing that by raising certain areas and creating a much more inclusive way to communicate through the lowest level of the school. And then we are inserting a brand-new elevator at that lowest level that's going to communicate through all three levels. That's an important piece to this overall project, because it now allows everybody to be able to communicate to all those levels. And within each of certain classroom levels, we are reconfiguring doors, entryways, pathways, and accessible bathrooms as required to meet that requirement. OCR has reviewed our plan, and that has been approved, so that concept remains as to what we have done to date. As James mentioned, the addition is a byproduct of all the work we're doing on the inside, pushed us outward to be able to find room to just accommodate the square footage needed for the current population of the school and the projected enrollment projection. That new addition, which now creates a courtyard, a new courtyard, which is also provides a secure space internally, is a four-classroom addition for the kindergarten. That addition, a one-story building, was designed in a way to balance with the existing architecture, the existing architecture from nineteen oh two and the various additions that have been added over those, basically those first fifty to fifty to sixty years. Architecture that matches in terms of its face, its its materials, its roof slopes, and so forth. Being close to the neighbors, we we communicated with them, we were sensitive to the scale of that addition. And this addition now is being raised to elevation fourteen. I didn't mention that the new addition also, just as a reminder, is now an elevation of fourteen, that elevation fourteen is what we've been using to bring us one foot above that flood elevation. So that has been sort of our driving force of the solution at the front entryway, along with the new addition and those corridors as we're creating, navigate through the addition of the building. You're going to hear from our civil design team on how we focused in on stormwater management, but also site and pedestrian circulation around the building. We are not changing, we are not changing any of the pathways, bus loops, parent drop-off, staff, parking, or so forth. This addition is really to, again, the configuration primarily inside, with the exception of the addition, does not affect any of those, and we've actually reworked some play areas and enhanced the back of the property in which our team will talk to you about of how we're sort of enhancing all of that piece of it. We'll also talk about how we address stormwater management adjacent and trying to resolve any pre-existing conditions that are there that made sense as we were adding that addition to the rear of the property. I want to go back inward and talk about the enhancements to the mechanical, electrical plumbing and fire protection. So in terms of the existing building, we are removing those aging boilers, these are old boilers. They have an efficiency rating of eighty percent at best. And what we are doing is we are replacing those with high condensing, high-efficiency boilers that could get us a range between ninety-five and ninety-seven percent overall efficiency. Now, the new addition, we have a brand-new envelope. We're able to meet and exceed the energy requirements as per the Energy Code and per state statutes. But in the interior of the building, even though we're not significantly modifying the exterior envelope of the building, just the efficiencies of the systems and the controls that will allow it to modulate during occupied and unoccupied mode will make a significant difference to the longevity of this building, because we are now air conditioning and heating it, and it has the ability to modulate over time as we hit those swing times when it's cold at night, hot during the day, this building now could become more tempered across the board. So yes, a new building, you would be able to address the envelope as an alteration project. You look to improve the systems and work within the context of the existing building we have. Not only are we modifying the smart climate controls or the building management system, we're also upgrading the hot water system throughout the building, eliminating large tanks to a high-efficiency cascading tankless type of system that no longer keeps a large portion of the storage. The existing boiler room and those, those pieces of equipment are actually located below the existing finished floor of the classroom level. We are raising that to above that elevation fourteen. We're actually building a new platform and all of that equipment is gonna be raised up. So we're bringing all of that along with all-new switchgear. So the electrical system is being fully upgraded to accommodate the air conditioning that currently it, it limitly exists, it's window units and so forth, but it is not a central air conditioning system. Um, we are doing that through, uh, what's called the V R S system. There are variable refrigerant drives, there are smaller cassette units that will provide cooling and some heating, um, throughout the year. Um, and those are located in zones and in specific classrooms. So we're addressing all the different orientations of the building. Um, and that will provide its own level of efficiency, because one corner of the building may need cooling, the other may need heating, and it has the ability to modulate through that. We are upgrading, uh, the lighting throughout the entire building, um, or the portions of the building that have not been upgraded in the past. Um, so we are making improvements. Clearly, the new addition meets all of those standards with L E D lighting and so forth. On the exterior of the building, our lighting design, as you saw in our package, was very modest. It really was just centered around an, uh, emergency life safety egress lighting. And there is nothing architectural or any other enhancements that we are creating, um, that would be non-compliant or would need any other additional purview. We meet sure and we have reviewed with staff that our lighting complies with your newest regulations, um, that were that were not in place when we first started the project back in twenty twenty-three. So we can reassure you that our work is purely just based on life safety and falls under those overall regulations. We did contemplate the use of solar on this building. Um, the existing building's superstructure does not have the capacity um, to handle the weight of solar panels and the snow drifting that comes along with it. Um, the new addition, we would be able to add, uh, solar, but just because of its overall orientation of our roof, and we created these two pitched roofs purposely to uh, screen the mechanical units that we have nestled between there that serve those four classrooms. The minimal gain at best of solar does not make sense. And just our initial review, ground-mounted systems seem like it'd be something of the future that could be contemplated. It was not part of our educational specifications, but we did look at that as, you know, is our responsibility to at least contemplate that, but it would give a very small, uh, gain, um, overall on the project. And so with that, I am going to pass the baton on to Joe Devine, our civil engineer.
Does anyone on the commission have questions about what we've heard so far, Mr. Wells?
Yeah, just follow-up question on solar. If, as you know, uh, there's a new development where you have solar tiles. Uh, now I think they're more expensive than regular tiles, so it might not fit your budget, but uh, I just wondered whether you explored using solar tiles, say on your gymnasium. It looks, at least in your Ed specs, it looks like you're replacing the roof of the gymnasium, if, if I read it correctly, and have you explored, uh, solar tiles?
Yeah, so solar tiles are an interesting technology. They, um, the challenge with them is the warranty requirement of a twenty-year non-prorated warranty that is required by a school state statute. So with that, trying to find the competition to be able to meet that full twenty-year non-prorated warranty is, is, we just haven't had the experience with that to, to consider that. As I mentioned too, it's overall, when you look at the, our roof plan, and if, if staff wanted to go to it, I could show you the orientation of our two-pitched roof. It'd be a very small area that would get that gain. So in terms of those two pieces, that's why we would not recommend that for this project because of the requirement of the warranty piece. And with a shingle, you're able to exceed well over, exceed twenty to thirty-year warranty. So that's really been our guideline for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, um, Mr. Stern, the flood elevation. Uh, you're building it fourteen, right? Which is one foot above FEMA's thirteen. That's Greenwich, too. Doesn't Greenwich always add an extra foot on FEMA?
That, that is, that is correct.
Now, you keep hearing rumors that FEMA is gonna up everything. Um, any thought to that? Uh, I mean, this school's gonna be around forever, obviously. Um, it, it, it may, it may not work in the building. You've gotta manage the, you know, ingress, egress between the floors and all that sort of thing, but was there any thought given to changing that fourteen, making it a little bit higher?
Yeah, so we've had conversations with the Connecticut Deep and currently our flood management, and Joe could speak to this at his next piece to sort of answer more of your question. But, uh, we have as part of our flood management certification through the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection. We've had a review with them noting that we are, this is an alteration to an existing building as opposed to a brand-new build. If this was a brand-new build, they look at it under another context and begin to make sort of, the commissioner and their staff makes a determination on what that elevation should be. Um, and our initial review with them is they felt that the fourteen is in compliance. That plan is currently in review. Uh, it has been submitted within the past few weeks and it takes, you know, we'll be hearing it in the next few months from them on that final piece. But the initial review with them is that the fourteen was reasonable based on the context of the existing building.
Okay, thank you.
Patrick, did you have any comments on that?
Oh, yeah, I, I think the, the team has explained that not only do, uh, we have local regulations that the applicant is trying to meet, but there's also state specs that are, uh, in mo- in many instances are greater than what the, the local municipality is gonna require. So, uh, by meeting the state specs, that, you know, much of the compliance issues for the building will be a- addressed with the, with the relationship with the flood zone.
All right, okay, go ahead, sir.
Great. Joe, you could take it, take it away. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, David. Uh, for the record, my name is Joe Devine. I'm a professional engineer with Langen Engineering. Here this evening with Kristen Mitchell from our New Haven office, uh, we're the civil engineers and landscape architects on this project. Uh, as David stated, the project involves an addition and renovations to the existing school to provide required accessibility and life safety. The site is located in an A E zone with a base flood elevation of thirteen. So as was just noted, the zoning regs and FEMA both require a designed flood elevation of the base flood elevation plus one foot, which puts us at elevation fourteen feet. And that's what the proposed addition is set at, elevation fourteen, because that's new construction. And that one extra foot above the base flood elevation does provide some protection for increases in, in the flood levels. Um, and we have submitted that for, to Connecticut Deep, um, for them to review, as David noted. Um, and we'll hear back from them hopefully in the next few months when they pick up our application. Uh, improvements to the existing historic building have been demonstrated by cost estimating and an appraisal to be less than fifty percent of the value of the building. Therefore, per the zoning and FEMA regulations, the building, which has a finished floor elevation below that designed flood elevation, does not have to be brought into compliance with the flood requirements. So that's, uh, you know, kind of a grandfathered clause situation where the existing building, historic building, does not have to go through the process of becoming compliant with the latest flood regulations, just the new construction. So that's why our addition is at elevation fourteen and we have to ramp down to try to meet up with the existing building, which is lower than that. Uh, the eight thousand square foot addition is planned on the west side of the building, along with a new driveway, a front entrance plaza, sidewalks and new play areas. And Kristen will give a little overview of those improvements, uh, after I speak. Uh, these new site improvements do result in three thousand square feet of additional impervious surfaces at the site. So the peak stormwater discharge rates are gonna be maintained following the development with the use of subsurface detention systems. The site is located in the critical area as well, uh, for stormwater. So a three-part treatment plan is posed to provide stormwater treatment of the runoff, including deep-sump catch basins, retention chambers and treatment units. Um, off-site stormwater contributions from abutters to the south are being maintained with a new catch basin designed to replace an existing catch basin in that area. And we'll take great care not to impede drainage from those abutters to the south, both during construction and long-term. Groundwater elevations in the area of the proposed foundations are several feet below the footing. Uh, so we do not anticipate any need for groundwater pumping, uh, from the foundation. And there were some other technical comments provided by the engineering division, um, that we'll be addressing in our file site plans, but um, those are some of the main points. The rest of the items are more technical in nature, asking for some additional in-vary elevations and units and, and reports. For the utility improvements, uh, we're gonna be providing two new sewer laterals to the school. Um, they'll be run right out to, to the road. Um, those sewer laterals will have backwater valves installed in vaults uh, with sensors. So the backwater valves will help protect against, uh, surcharging of the sewer main. Um, that's been a periodic issue for the building. And in addition to that, we'll be installing holding tanks um, that'll hold the wastewater while a surge event is in, in occurrence. That'll allow the school to keep operating. Um, and those tanks will have to be cleaned after every surcharge event. So these concepts were discussed with the sewer division um, as a reasonable measure that we felt we should take, uh, to prevent surcharging into the building, particularly after it's been renovated. Uh, in addition, there's a new fire service line coming from the road, um, to help supply the new fire suppression systems. Uh, and we'll also be providing new power and data connections from the utility pool. Uh, there are no proposed changes to the parking or drop-off areas. There are no parking spaces that will be lost as a result of the project. There's no change in enrollment, so there's no impact on the existing traffic operations, and that was concurred with the traffic division. Um, there is a new driveway proposed behind the addition. That driveway is only for authorized vehicles. That's not for the general public to use, and we will be putting signage up indicating that. And there'll be striping so that, um, nobody but authorized vehicles will be used in that driveway. Um, Fire Marshal has reviewed the plans and visited the site. Um, he asked us to widen that driveway and it is gonna be designated a fire lane. Um, so there'll be signage and striping in that area, uh, accordingly. Um, and the bicycle racks that are in con- conflict with the turning radius of that fire truck will be moved over to resolve that issue. That was another comment we got. Um, so those are the main site features, and I guess I'll stop here and turn it over to Kristen to, uh, to discuss some of the the landscape architecture features of the project.
Great. Uh, thank you. So similar to a previous, oh, go ahead.
Just before, um, cause I think it's, uh, Mr. Devine. Um, when we heard the preliminary, we had comments from the neighbors to the south about the water. Do you guys wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, on resident.
Joe, can I, can I just chime in before you take the, 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 me to this? So, um, Madam Chair, yes, and, and we've had, um, I think, uh, a really good dialogue with the neighbors, uh, in the months since, to include one of them has uh, been a regular attendee of our building committee meetings and, um, you know, been really super helpful and and so we wanted to make sure we really understood exactly, um, his issues. And, and, and frankly, it went into, uh, his feedback went into the design that Langen, uh, settled around. So Joe, Joe, take it away.
Yeah, just along that vein, we made sure that we maintained a drainage inlet that was brought to our attention, that's helping drain the general area along that property line, including those abutters. And so the concern was that we were removing a catch basin that they were relying on. The building committee, you know, immediately directed us to, to provide a measure that would maintain that inlet for them, um, so that we designed and installed a, a new catch basin in that area and routed that through our system. So that would address, you know, any concerns about management of, of stormwater from those abutters that might be headed towards the old Greenwich School property.
All right, thank you. Um, go ahead, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you so much. So I'll keep my pushin' brief, cause it's very similar to what's been reviewed and, and submitted in the past. Um, as David mentioned, there's no impact of parking, drive acts, uh, drive and access routes, um, bus routes and playfields. The existing planting to the south, um, where we're discussing the adjacent uh, residents and school, between the residents and the school, that, that planting is remaining along the east, along South Beach Avenue, that planting is also remaining. Um, we're supplementing, uh, with some additional plantings. We're still, um, remaining the same count in terms of removal and replacement, which was coordinated in detail with the tree warden, both the species, the sizes and the locations. So removal of five, replacement with thirteen. Um, as mentioned, the, uh, entry plaza, this is gonna be accessible, welcoming, very functional. Worked closely with, um, the principal and also, uh, the committee to assure that we had the space and the scale for these various activities and events that happen at the front, um, entry, the main entry, which is parent drop-off, pickup, outdoor learning and, uh, community events and celebrations. Uh, there'll be then the accessible entry to the main entry and then that accessible, uh, path of travel directly through and to that enclosed, secure courtyard, as David mentioned. Uh, that will be for smaller functions, outdoor learning, education, um, parent-teacher conferences. And then, um, there's also, as mentioned, the reconfiguration, reconfigure in of play areas and basketball court. So the play areas have been reconfigured slightly since we last met. Um, just based on the Fire Marshal comment. So we've picked those up, widened the drive access and then adjusted accordingly. And then we've been working through a selection of, of play equipment with the committee, with the principal and, um, and the larger group. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from anybody on the commission? All right. Uh, Mr. Wells, are you, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, one, uh, jumping back, I did have a
Yeah, one uh jumping back, I did have a a question for Mr. Stein. And that is, uh, you know, you gave us some statistics on the increased efficiency of the uh boilers going from eighty percent to ninety, ninety-seven percent. I was just wondering if you'd done any energy modeling on the uh project as a whole uh in terms of EUI, you know, for example, Central Middle School, different apples, oranges, I understand brand-new building, but they they're coming out with an EUI of thirty-six per square foot. Uh, pre-solar and sixteen after solar, you know, which is really good. Have you guys done any overall energy modeling to see where you're going to come out in terms of EUI?
Well, we haven't. Um, we, you know, we usually don't run, we don't run a energy model on an alteration project. We do run the energy model related to the addition because we have to show that compliance or demonstrate that compliance to the state that we're checking off the boxes of the Connecticut High Performance. But in terms of relating that or doing a comparison to the EUI, no, we have not done that. Um, at, you know, this building in terms of its envelope piece and the reason why it's always challenged, especially in a building that has been altered in four different decades, essentially. Um, but as you know, those, that envelope itself is mainly a masonry piece of it. Its roof structure is, you know, steel or wood superstructure with some insulation that has been added to over a period of time. Um, so there will be some improvement because we are adding new duck work into the attic and we're moving around what's there. So we will be improving the insulation piece in portions of the overall attic, mainly the original portion of the building, just because of the nature of new duck work that we are inserting in there. But to do an EUI comparison here really isn't germane to an alteration project or to comparison, obviously, of a new of a new building. Um, the windows uh within the building, I just want to point out are fairly modern, not original. You know, nineteen oh two windows, nor are they nineteen fifties windows. There was a fairly modern window replacement. We are doing some window replacement in certain areas on the front of the buildings. So with that, we're going to be able to increase, you know, just the R value and sealing up of all of that. As part of this project, there is a asbestos abatement piece of it. So that is one restriction of not getting into the existing cavity and then furrying out to try to add some level of that along with just the challenges of and what doesn't always come through in comparison when you are looking at it EUI is because there isn't an air vapor barrier within any of the existing building. It's very difficult to run those EUI calculations because you just don't have that same efficiency within the modeling program as we would if we were building a brand-new building. So it's not that we ignore the EUI. It really doesn't fit the exact same way for an existing building. For the new building, we do comply with high-performance building requirements, which is somewhat of the equivalent of a lead silver requirement. Again, only in the context of that new four-classroom eight thousand square foot addition.
And do you have a feel for what the EUI would be for your for your new addition?
Um, for the new addition, I would say, again, it's more the equivalent instead of a rating of EUI. Um, because our boiler system is outside of that addition. I'm not sure I could give you that calculation. I would say I I would relate it more to the lead requirement because I think people could relate to that as being a sort of a standard. And the lead silver and high performance two are one in essentially one in the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, did I, Mr. Stern, did I hear you say the building is sprinkled now or will be?
No, so the building currently is not sprinkled. I was remiss to mention that. That's a huge improvement to the overall life safety and that is a requirement is based on our alterations trigger us to fully sprinkler the building. So the existing building, its attics, any of its uh crawl spaces or interstitial spaces will be fully sprinkled along with obviously the addition.
Yeah, it 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 sounded, you know, like you had to sprinkle it. It makes all the sense. Well, I've got it.
Okay. Any other questions?
With that, Madam Chairman, we'll turn, oh, I'll turn it back um to the commission. So, thank you.
Any other questions and comments from the commission? I think you guys did a pretty good job. Um, if there are no more questions, uh, if you don't object, Mr. Waters will ask for public comment. Uh, anyone from the public wishing to speak on the Old Greenwich School application kindly raise your virtual hand. Virtual hand for the Old Greenwich School. Now, there's nobody here, which is always a little scary. This is why people criticize anything we hear in July. Wow, everybody's on vacation. We missed that meeting. Um, but I'm not seeing anyone. Um. Well, let me ask the commission this question. We've got, uh, most of the comments we've got, except for the substantial improvement are minor items that can be handled by staff. If there was an issue with a substantial improvement, it would need to be my, uh, the best guess would be they'd have to come back to us regardless. Um, because you're talking about something different. Um. The option, of course, always being that they could go to a historic building designation rather than, uh, but they would have to come before us for that as well. Uh, Mr. Waters, you did investigate and reject that option, correct?
Yeah, so um, we we have had uh a bunch of discussions about that as a building committee. Um, and um, I know Tracy and Patrick uh had flagged that as an option. Um, I think in this case, um, you know, we we don't, we we believe we are below the fifty percent threshold. Um, so don't need to uh apply for that. And I did want to sort of flag that a- at this juncture, uh, we have not uh seen any appetite in the Board of Ed uh for uh heading in that direction. Uh, when it was raised, our Board of Ed rep uh just really did not like that idea. Um, so, you know, at at this point, I think our inclination is you know, we're we're below the fifty percent threshold. We don't need to go to go that route. Um, and uh, I I I think that's kind of where we came out on it.
Excuse me. Uh, uh, the only, my only disagreement there, and it it's the same thing we said at the preliminary is part of the reason we're making an investment in this building as a town is to preserve what we see as being an important part of Old Greenwich heritage. And I would think you would then want to protect that heritage. So it's always an option down the road. But I'm surprised that nobody wants to take the extra step of, hey, we're spending this money. Let's make sure we have the building. Now that we've spent, we've brought it up to snuff and we've kept it looking historic. Let's make sure someone doesn't come along and tear it down in a few years, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I I the the one thing I would just say, I totally uh appreciate that, um, you know, uh, that approach and you know, I mean, I I I think, you know, from a uh sort of schedule perspective, you know, I I think what we're hearing from the community and from the Board of Ed is they want this building fixed and they're wary of things that might take us down rabbit holes, uh, you know, uh, at least at this stage. But but, you know, look, the Board of Ed would certainly have, we would need to take direction from the Board of Ed on that. Um, and they could certainly do that um in the aftermath of the project.
Well, maybe your vice chair can influence her roommate and they'll come back and. Uh, Mr. Stein.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, uh, um, just for the record, I am a, um, I'm a registered historic architect with with the state and I think you can still preserve the historic integrity of a building without providing its designation. Um, I think just by putting sprinklers in the building, we are preserving the overall structural integrity of that building. That's an important piece. But I do want to point out that the building, as it's been modified in the forties, fifties and then nineties, some of those additions are not necessarily historic from the original aspects of the building. So although the building is older and in our memories, we look at it as being historic, the State Historical Preservation Office doesn't necessarily consider all those elements to be that. So with that being said, just by nature, this building may not be fully deemed all its elements historical, even though the original portion of the building was nineteen oh two. So as historic designated architects, we have to sort of look at that and say, what else can we do to preserve the building? And I think what we're doing on the inside does much to preserve the overall longevity and integrity of the building.
Well said. Mr. Yaski.
Yeah, I just had a question, maybe Patrick. Having done this on a house, who certifies the below fifty percent uh value? Is that, uh, I think I had to go to the the building, the building permit department to convince them with an appraisal. Is that what happens here? Is this a done deal or what?
It's a zoning enforcement officer who does that. And yes, you're right. It is the value of the work from the point of uh non-compliance with the flood zone regulation. So the FEMA map started in eighty-six, they were amended in ninety-nine, they're amended again in twenty thirteen. So whatever year trips that, you take all the, you take the this appraisal of the building and you deduct that against the work done to the building from that point on. And that, so it is, uh, it is the building department records and the zoning enforcement officer who look at that and confirm compliance.
Yeah, we had to get a new appraisal, but uh has that been done for the building? Is that a done deal?
That's has been done. We talked about it yesterday. I think you might have stepped out of the meeting at that point.
My new appraisal has been done.
Yeah.
Do have that.
And I I don't want to say it's done as in we've, we've, we're fine with every knit and nath of it, but it's, it's very obvious, I think, to staff that uh, the number is very much in the right ballpark. Uh, we're really, we're looking for is the way that the accounting is organized in a way that makes a little more sense for the zoning enforcement officer to endorse because yeah, at some point that the FEMA FEMA office has and can come and audit the the community as it has the right as the insurance person. And we want to make sure that if they pull Old Greenwich School or any other project, that we have the consistent uh backing to support the decisions that are made under the regulations. So um, it's just more of a process right now and not so much a issue of what's being counted because um they they've done a a great job in in catching up with the numbers.
Mr. Levy. Or I think you were done, Mr. Yaski.
I was, yeah.
Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I wanted to comment on um Mr. Stein's uh thoughts about uh the project uh and and its historical nature. So it, what's important about designating something historic is it announces to the community and to everybody else that that we think that uh historic preservation is important. Uh, yes, it's a choice to whether or not you want to preserve a building. You want to do that anyway. But the designation is a very important uh projection of how we value our community. So um, I I encourage any efforts to uh go in that direction.
Okay, well, maybe when they're iced, that's why I was encouraging uh Ms. Welch, maybe when they're through all the hoops. Um, Mr. Low.
I'm I'm probably not supposed to speak.
No, well, yeah, you're not voting on this, but it isn't.
Uh, but there, just in response to Mr. Levy's uh comment, um, there's nothing to preclude uh exploring those designations down the road. And and nor is it a slam dunk. And I think Mr. Stein did a a great job of explaining what some of the uh some of the the bumps in the road might be. And uh, and this com- this committee is on a uh, still on a schedule, twenty twenty-five seems like a long time away, but it isn't and a lot has to be done. And so I I think it's appropriate that that uh we explore this later.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Low. Um, so where I was leading with the final questions was does anybody who is seated on this application uh have an objection to closing it at this time? And with that, uh, Madam Jones, you are seated for Mr. Low. Um, and does anybody have an objection to closing this application at this time?
No.
So seeing no objection, we will close this application then. And thank you all for excellent in-depth presentations and a great deal of hard work. Uh, I wish you the best as you go forward. Got to track those change orders, Mr. Waters.
But we're we're going to do our best on that one. But uh, we we really appreciate all of the support.
Tracy has been telling us about what a nightmare it was for the, one of the B C's in in Weston. She was previously in Weston and she said she's telling us that there were so many hundreds of change orders. So four hundred change orders.
Weston High School.
Well, you you, at at least, at least David uh and and others listening uh heard it from you. Uh, so, you know.
Let's not give them ideas.
There's still time to quit the committee, Mr. Waters. That's all.
Well, I I will also tell you, we've got a great owners rep who is, I know, listening. Um, and, you know, is all over this for us and and uh, you know, we're going to keep our eye on the ball as we can.
Great. Thank you for all the hard work. Um, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll just move everybody along here. Boy, Nick's been, you. Very. All right, one more. Okay, there we go. All right. Um, and our next application is going to be um thirty-one Saint Rock. Is the applicant ready for that? I'm not seeing the applicant.
Uh, Zim should be joining us.
Um, uh, would you kindly raise your hand?
He's, they're being promoted right now.
Oh, there they are. Okay. You were ahead of me. If you would unmute Zim. Because you've just muted. There you go. Perfect. Hello. Okay, so our next application is number seven. Thirty-one Saint Rock Avenue Real Estate Holdings LLC. Uh, this is for a change of use from a non-conforming retail use to a non-conforming hair salon in a residential zone. And uh, this is at thirty-one Saint Rock and the zone is R six residential. And it is a final site plan and special permit. Go ahead, sir. If you um want to open or we can just ask you a lot of questions.
Yes, um, so I was on the call yesterday. Thank you so much.
Okay, so then you know what to talk about.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to save your guys' time. Thank you so much for your time today. Um, so I know that uh what we are proposing um should be a lot less intense than what the uh printing company was offering. Uh, usually like a printing company, their model consists of clients coming in and out similar to like a drive-through experience. And where we are located now, we've had our business, our current salon, which is on Greenwich Avenue, is fit out for seventeen stations. So we are intentionally decreasing our business model to four stations um and just reducing it to um one stylist. So um, I wanted to make that clear because um it's important that um I know that Ms. Alvin, you were concerned perhaps maybe later on we would change the business model and bring some more stylists in. But we've been um at the current location on Greenwich Avenue for ten years and then parallel to uh there previously for another eight years. So it's been eighteen years in total. So we've, we've exhausted that business model. And so now it's time to kind of um dwindle down a little bit, which is a lot more suitable for us. Um, additionally, I wanted to also convince the commission that we won't need all eight spaces. Um. I know that, again, um, Chair, Ms. Alvin, you uh mentioned that during a color service, while you're getting your color application, you're sitting somewhere and that does give you up a little bit of juggling to the stylist to go ahead and either do a haircut or another color. And you're right, that does happen, which is why we accounted for, you know, the max of two clients at one time. Because that's absolutely correct. While one is coloring that or one is processing with. that, or one is processing with color, then that does give enough time to go ahead and cut and color. So we're totally transparent with that and we didn't want to incorporate that into our model. Um, so you are correct. However, since there is one stylist, um, and he only has two hands, uh, that really kind of restricts it to only just two clients.
Gotcha.
Yes. Um, and so if we do, if, uh, we do need to, um, compromise the second floor for about two hundred square feet and utilize that as storage, we would be more than willing to make the commission happy and, uh, make that adjustment as well. Uh, also, I do want to just emphasize for the ideas that we have for the second and third floor that would be used for office space and, um, ideally, it would be one tenant per each floor, or it would be great if we can just get one tenant for both spots. So, but the max would be either option.
Okay. Any comments from the commission or questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay, I, uh, Ma- Madam Kulikowski?
Hi, Zim. For the record, I just, I missed your last name. Sorry.
Chikaisa.
How is that spelled?
D H I. D A Y Z A?
Almost. C A I Z A. Good job.
All right, um, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I completely forgot. Did Mr. Bazili let you know that we had forgotten him?
No, he will ask me tomorrow morning. So that's why I'm asking now.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any questions or kind, no. So the concern, as you know, was a change in your business model. Uh, what I would say is that, um, that we let you try to utilize your space as you have it now because you are going, you are representing to us and you've convinced me at least that you're going to have a lower intensity use, which would be less deleterious, appears to be less deleterious to the neighborhood. Um, because your visit time is going to be longer. You go to a print shop, you come in, you drop off, you leave now. That business had not been doing well, but we're supposed to compare to it as being successful. It is a much higher turnover rate, I think, than yours would be. Um, what, how long does the average client stay, do you figure?
Yeah, um, so I would say for a typical color and cut, a client is there for about four to five hours.
Big sigh. Um, and if you would just went in for a cut, you'd be there for forty five minutes?
I wish. Uh, I'd say about an hour and a half.
About an hour and a half for just a cut. Okay.
Well, also a blowjob is included into the cut.
Okay, so you're talking about a much lower rate of turnover on a street that has its bad moments during the day. As you all know, having having traveled, uh, in front of the Hamilton Avenue School and you will encounter that if you haven't already. Uh, we're being honest, that street gets totally jammed up at pickup and drop off, but that's not going to be your key client time because there probably, a lot of those people are going to be out getting the kids that are being home. Okay. So no questions from the commission on the, on the change of use? Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application at thirty one Saint Rock? Um, what's your salon going to be called, Mr. Chikaisa?
Becker Chikaisa.
So it's Becker Chikaisa.
Correct.
Is this name of the salon?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right. Any comments on, and it used to be called Becker, didn't it?
Um, that was on Mason Street. Correct. Originally it was Becker Salon.
Originally on Mason Street, it was just Becker. Yeah. Okay. All right. Any comments on this application at thirty one Saint Rock to which, um, the salon is moving after two other locations in town? Okay.
Yeah, after eighteen years.
Please raise your virtual hand. I can't believe how fast the time has gone because I remember when Becker opened on Mason. Um, um, I see no raised hands in the public. So, uh, my next question to the commission is, uh, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
All right. Seated on this would be all the regular members seeing no objection. Uh, we will close this application. Thank you very much, Mr. Chikaisa.
Thank you so much. I also like to just say, um, Bianca was a great help. She really held my hand through this process. So thank you so much, everyone.
Well, thank you very much. We love her too. Just so you know, we love her lots. We are very fond of our staff. We think we have the greatest staff in at least Connecticut from the towns I've seen, but thank you for telling us that. Thank you. Bye bye.
Thank you. Bye bye.
All right. So moving on.
When do you want to do dinner, Madam Chair?
I was thinking seven thirty is. You guys are hopeless. It's only seven o'clock.
That, well, I don't know whether you've noticed.
What does the agenda say?
Website, it says seven o'clock dinner break.
Oh gosh, who changed that? I always did seven thirty. Okay, just warning you that the night at the other side could get long because there's a lot of pre-abs and everybody's going to have to make sure it's twenty minutes.
How, how does it get any longer?
Sure, we'll do it shortly.
All right, no, okay. Well, I like to push off dinner until most of it, a lot of stuff is behind us. Okay. So, um, how does seven twenty sound?
That's fine. We've got, uh, eight, eight applications behind us.
That's nothing. And we're not eight done because we had, uh, we had a postponement and we haven't done the eighth one yet. So we've done six.
We're moving to number nine. How's that?
All right. I will talk to you guys at seven twenty.
You need to, uh, unmute.
Yeah, I got there. Um, our next application is Stanton Devices LLC for a final site plan and special permit at nine sixty one North Street in the RA four zone. And, uh, I guess, Mr. McTag, you're representing the applicant?
That's correct. Jim McTag, Professional Land Support with Arthur Howan Associates, representing Stanton Devices LLC, nine sixty one North Street, Greenwich, Connecticut for a special permit site plan approval, uh, for two additions onto the residence. Um, the cumulative, um, uh, volume between the residence and the garage that's currently under construction is over a hundred fifty thousand cubic feet in volume. Um, we are compliant with green area and F A R. Um, the main house has a hundred percent replacement that was approved by the health department in the rear of the property. The standalone garage has its own one-bedroom septic system. And to clarify your questions from the preliminary, um, yesterday, uh, the second floor of the garage is considered an attic. It needs the definition of attic, so it doesn't count towards the F A R. It is a one-bedroom and one-bathroom, um, area with no wet bar and no kitchen, so it's not an A D U.
And did you give us floor plans for that?
Yes, yesterday I submitted architectural plans of the, uh, uh, accessory garage showing on both levels.
Yesterday? I never even saw it today.
At the end of the day, at the end of the day after the hearing, I submitted things to Bianca.
Nick, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah. Really nice garage with a, with a, an apartment without a kitchen up above it. Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, you're moving there? You're moving there next time you have a fight with the misses?
Hey, please, let's not bring in private affairs.
Yeah, yeah. Let's not go there.
All right. Okay. So you, it, um, somebody on the commission did see the floor plans. I missed that email.
The garage, yeah, the garage and its motor core has its own drainage system. The motor core, the, the new motor core is permanent pavement and there's a rain garden. So that whole area was more than a thousand square foot increase in previous coverage. So it was designed to meet the full standards of the storm drainage manual. And it's an independent, um, build for that. And then for this, um, main house additions, we're in the five hundred to a thousand square foot category. We're adding five hundred forty nine square feet of new impervious coverage. And so we've designed a, um, cul-de-sac drainage system to accommodate that, meeting the five hundred to a thousand square foot standards for up to its twenty-five year storm. Um, we are, uh, we have small wetlands in the back of the property. We're in a drinking water zone. We have a hundred fifty foot up in review. Uh, those are two small pocket wetlands on the, on the rear side of the property. And we are very far away from them. We have a green sheet sign off from the elevations. So it's a pretty straightforward, um, project. Are there any questions?
Anybody got questions? Ms. Jenkins?
Are we expecting comments from conservation on this?
We haven't gotten, I, I looked this afternoon and didn't see the pending. We were waiting for comments from other stuff, on other stuff from conservation. We didn't get those either. I don't know.
The only one I thought we weren't getting was old Greenwich because the comments from the last.
That's was, it was what I was looking for.
Well, yeah, they.
It said something about seven twenty-two, so I went through. Okay, so are we expecting comments from conservation, Ms. Jenkins is asking?
I, I was under the impression we may have got that, but I will look right now.
We got an, we got an awful lot of material today. I mean, I have to say, and not just particularly this applicant, but you know, I couldn't keep up with it.
I, I will not disagree.
No, and, uh, this is why I'm just telling people if you're sending it on Tuesday, we're not guaranteeing, we're going to look at it. We're not guaranteeing, we're going to move you forward. I, I'm in the Nick McRae mold on this.
Well, it's not just Nick McRae. There are others in the commission who feel just strongly.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, I would add my name to that, having written memos on it.
Yeah, I was about to mention your name.
Nick, you are in good blessed company.
Yes, now that we're all moldy, everybody. So just keep, keep that in mind as we go forward.
Don't forget that if you don't give Nick what he wants, he's going to remind you soon that you didn't do this. Okay, anything, um, so you, we didn't get anything from conservation or you didn't see them, Mary, or you've been able to find them?
I'm not seeing anything, so, uh, I'm going to say no.
And I, I also.
It says awaiting comments in the staff report that Bianca did.
Um, did Aron have anything on the energy narrative?
Did Aron have anything on the energy narrative?
Aron. I just wondered, I hadn't looked at.
I thought, I thought they did a good job. I mean, he mentioned, they're going to have three E V chargers, uh, good insulation, energy efficiency. So, you know, thumbs up on the energy narrative.
Thank you, Aron.
Yeah, and we're not taking any trees down.
Bravo on that.
Yeah, um, and you are protecting.
But the, the property is very park-like and the owners are adamant about protecting all of the landscaping on the entire property. Uh, and they continuously enhance it and it's, it's very beautiful.
Uh, Madam Jones?
Um, and I, I, you may have mentioned this, Mr. McTeague, that, did we get, there was a note yesterday about needing the volume calculations?
Yeah, we, we accept that we're, we're presenting ourselves as being over a hundred fifty thousand cubic feet. I've estimated it to be approximately a hundred sixty thousand cubic feet. Um, but we have not provided the, the calculation.
Okay, thank you. They're actually better off just submitting and getting it, even if they're not totally sure. Because, um, they've got F A R room. Although you're ten, that, that's within ten percent, right? The max.
Yeah, we will be within ten percent. Current, currently.
So you're going to have to give all the calcs to the Z E O.
Yeah, they're all, they're all done.
Okay. Anything else from uh, anyone on on the commission? Um, no? Does anybody from the public wish to speak at, at this, on this application at nine sixty one North Street? Uh, for a final site plan and special permit? Anybody from the public, please raise your virtual hand. Well, you definitely want to come here in July. I am seeing no comments. Does anybody on the commission object to closing this application at this time? Again, the regular members are seated. Uh, on this application?
Oh, I just, it would be nice to look at the plans before I close, that's all.
Okay, um, um, would somebody share the plans with Mr. Levy or all of us actually? So you can't just share with Mr. Levy.
The, the plans that we received yesterday?
Yeah.
They, they were sent around.
Yes.
Yeah.
He just wants to look at them one more time and make sure he didn't miss anything over the weekend.
I'm happy to resend it right now.
No, no, now resend it. He wants us to look at them right now. He means right this minute before he agrees to closing it.
Maybe he didn't, maybe he didn't get them. Peter, did you get them?
I don't know. I didn't see anything.
Well, you didn't see anything for the garage, you mean?
Yeah, the garage.
Oh, yeah. Well, I was trusting McRae. I know that could be a mistake, but I was trusting McRae because I didn't see, see it either.
It's a nice garage. Really nice.
All right.
There's the site home.
Um.
Could you bring up the architectural plans?
Yeah, he wants us to see the garage now that we know about it.
Oh, the architectural plans for the garage or?
Yes, yes.
There you go.
Yep, that's what Levy was asking for.
Uh, Mr. McTeague, while he's, uh, doing that, where, where are the E V chargers in the garage?
In the garage, yeah. There's three bays in the garage.
Are you guys doing any kind of special, um, uh, fire resistance rating to the, uh, garage area other than the one hour?
Uh, it meets the building code requirements.
Okay.
Um, we're asking you because the fire marshal has been commenting on multifamily application and multifamily and office buildings having, um, the E V chargers in the garages. And, um, those of us who are in single family and have E V chargers don't do anything. They just get put up on the wall and you're done. But the fire marshal is commenting about those.
Yeah, this is a brand new build with, uh, six inch walls and, um, half inch sheetrock.
Very pretty.
That's just the site plan.
And as I remember, it's your application that has the tree protection plan that you submitted, right?
Yes. So on the right side here, yes, you're welcome. On the right side is the three bay garage with a set of stairs in the backside. And it has a, a door on the, on the back rear on the right side to enter the stairwell and go up to the second floor. You can go to the next page, please. And then this is the second floor on the left side. And the stairs come up into a bedroom and then a bathroom. And that's it. And this area meets the definition of the attic, so it's less than forty percent of the floor below it, so it doesn't count towards F A R.
And there's, uh, no kitchen?
No kitchen, no wet bar.
No wet bar and, um, no laundry?
Uh, there, there is laundry.
There's laundry, um?
Yeah.
Okay. And is the only one egress?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that.
So I heard back from, um, um, Bianca's on this meeting, so I just asked her and she said no, that, um, conservation was short-staffed. And reminded us that, as we just discussed, you're, you're not taking down any trees. And that you have a good tree protection plan in place.
That's correct.
And that the only concern we had yesterday was actually about the septic because we were baffled when we saw it. Um. Okay, um, does anybody on the commission object at this point to closing this application?
No.
No, seeing, seeing no objection, uh, the, this application is hereby closed. Thank you very much, Mr. McTag. Don't get thinking that we're always this easy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are you going to vote now or are you going to vote at the end of the night?
No, we're going to vote as close to midnight as we can get it.
Okay.
But the action agenda gets published very early tomorrow, so you can take a look at it.
All right. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Okay, bye bye, sir.
You might want to hang around and listen to these scintillating discussions.
It's mesmerizing. It's very mesmerizing.
Something else to do. Gonna go brush his teeth. No, okay, bye bye.
Bye bye.
Alrighty, our next application is, who's representing the applicant?
Yeah, Kristen Donovan.
Um, not seeing. Not seeing, hold on a second, maybe if I scroll down. Ah, thank you very much, Ms. Donovan.
And the landscape architect is, uh, Mr. Alan Broadbent, he's here as well.
And Mr. Broadbent, we've got you. Okay, can't see, yeah, good. Hello, Ms. Donovan, our next. Okay, go ahead.
We also have the owner. The homeowner is online.
Or do they want to speak desperately, or are you gonna represent them?
No, I'll represent them.
Okay, they can raise their hand if you leave anything out and they want to jump in, but.
Perfect.
Sometimes we find it's a little awkward cuz the owner elbows their representative out of the way.
He would never do that.
Oh, good. Okay, our next application is KKD Design Build LLC, for a final site plan and special permit to construct a one-story addition, uh, that includes an indoor turf field and the finished basement level and a half-court basketball court, patios, this is at ninety-nine Richmond Hill in the RA four, and as a reminder, this is before us because of the size of the athletic facility. And, um, with that, Ms. Donovan and Mr. Broadbent, off you go.
So I know Tracy came out and saw the property, it is, uh, a family of four children, they're building the turf and the basketball court for private use for their kids and their friends. And I think it's, you know, it's under the FAR, I know the other reason, it is a athletic facility, but it's also over the cubic foot, which are the two reasons.
Yeah, I was forgetting to say that this is the one that threw us yesterday because, oh, no, this isn't the one, yes, so it's over, it's over the hundred and fifty thousand cubes as well. The, okay, go ahead.
Oh, no problem, um, we are trying to keep, you know, in keeping with working with, you know, with the property, the gray plane, um, kept it as a one-story, you know, primarily the, we're using the basement space, um, for most of the addition. And the basketball court is a one-story addition, we're gonna keep the exterior in the same, the same style as the house, it'll be, uh, stone and shingle, and match elevation, there's no trees coming down, we're doing it on a part of the property that is just currently lawn. So there's no trees or landscaping or anything coming down, it was just, um, a grass side yard.
And you heard us yesterday, when we see very large athletic facilities, we get a little worried that they're gonna be used for other than personal, um, that it could become something more, and we would impose a condition that this be for, you know, family and personal use, and we would do that. Um, the other thing is, um, Mr. Broadbent, you're, you're the one who did the landscape plan?
That's correct.
I believe, um, you're, it's what you're planting alongside the new, the new area that we were asking about yesterday? I'm just scrolling, is this, um, you're gonna do boxwood, as I remember, right?
There are many plants proposed, boxwood is among the composition of plants that we have, yes.
So, um, our conservation department has not been able to comment on many of our applications, but they had a comment on a different one than I'm sharing again, if you were listening yesterday, um, boxwood blight, you know, is becoming, it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem, and they were, apparently there's some species that are less susceptible?
It's true, the Korean varieties, the green mountain and green velvet, and we'd be happy.
Green velvet is only moderately, so what we were gonna suggest to you, um, is that you try to switch to a less susceptible. And there were some, and of course, uh, again, since conservation didn't get a chance to comment, um, our landscape regulations look for as much native as you can do, I don't know if you really focused on that, I, I, this is, I'm scrolling to your plan and haven't gotten there. If you, I think you had some non-natives that you were using, um, albeit very attractive, which is a trade-off. I'm fond of some of the invasives, but, um, if you would focus, if we could ask you to reconsider and discuss with your app, with your, um, client, um, to do as much native as you, as possible, as you work around that new, uh, around the addition?
Absolutely, so in our first planting plan that we issued, uh, we had very few natives, and we heard the concerns of the commission, and we revised significantly, and came back with a number of introductions that are native, including service berry, including ilex clavra, including seaanothis, um, among others, uh, clettra in place of hydrangea, et cetera, so, we, we have worked through that with our client, who is interested in a balance of ornamental species that are tried and true, such as capment, and allium, but also incorporating natives in places that will work well with the composition.
Okay, I just got to your list, and I see that, I see that your boxwood is the green velvet, which is what conservation was asking for. And the ilex, which I know, uh, our staff member who has a landscaping background also, and I don't know the other ones, the nepeta I know works really well in our area.
So we also have itea virginica, which is fantastic, little Henry sweet spire. And then we have New Jersey tea, seaanothis, which is a great little shrub, and we also have clettra. And we've changed the trees to both be native, so we have cornithes florida, and we have amalankia service berry.
Your listing came in sideways, that's why I'm looking like this. They told me it was good exercise, and the vinca, vinca's not na, oh, vinca, is vinca native?
It is not.
Okay, it's the one with the little blue flowers or something?
Correct, periwinkle is the common name.
Okay, all right.
But again, like, we're keeping it within context of existing planting on the site.
You know, I understand why conservation, I, I have to repeat it cuz they weren't able to comment, and I understand it. I think the bigger concern for the commission is always invasive species, because it's something we understand more, we can draw that line really easily. Um, there's some really wildly out of control bamboo, for example, in some of these. Um, Madam Jenkins?
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair, I was just gonna say that I, I believe the concern about the native balance was on a different application.
No, I'm passing it on, I'm moving that comment into this application because they didn't comment on so many of the applications. So I'm, I'm moving, I'm saying, oh, conservation says this, even though it wasn't on this application, cuz I don't know enough to comment on my own. But I know they were short-staffed, and I know they didn't get to most of our applications this week, so rather than hold them up, I'm trying to share the same thing.
Applications as well.
What, excuse me?
I said, and we've worked with them on a number of applications, and we have a few in front of them right now, so I understand what their, what their thoughts are and concerns.
Yeah, and, and we find them to be excellent. Anything else from the commission on this? Lighting? Is there, I, I'm trying to remember, Nick, about the lighting?
Up there, I don't think there's any issue with the lighting.
No issue with the lighting.
No, cuz it's actually all inside, except for the porches, but that's, that's, uh, it's kind of a covered lighting anyway.
Correct, it's downward.
All right, do we have any comments from, um, the public, looking for public comments on ninety-nine Richmond Hill Road, which is adding, uh, an indoor athletic facility? Ninety-nine Richmond Hill Road, does anybody from the public wish to comment? Is the commission, again, regular member seated on this one, is the commission comfortable with closing this application at this?
Yes, yes.
Alrighty, this application is hereby closed. Thank you very much. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Take care.
And Mr. Hegney already has his hand up. Okay, trying that again. Oh, he's in. Do you sometimes find, Patrick, that you have to click a couple of times to get somebody in?
Uh, I find that, and I'm also now, when people come in, I'm sometimes getting alerted that they have declined my.
Oh, that's just cuz they didn't react fast enough, cuz it says the host wants you to join the meeting as a panelist, and people miss that. Our next application is number ten, Larsen Nielsen and Quangfang Trustees. This is for a property at fifteen Lismore Lane in the RA two, for a final site plan and special permit, this is a six hundred and ten square foot addition to the existing single family, and a five hundred and eighty-nine square foot attached, detached art studio, with some additional proposed alterations. Hello, Mr. Hegney.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission, for the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, as you summarized, Madam Chair, it's a modest addition to the house, a small, uh, one-story, uh, addition, uh, that mainly, uh, replaces a screened-in porch that's currently on the house, and a, a small art studio out near the pool in the back. It's a fairly well-developed lot to begin with, these are modest additions. Uh, there was an issue which came up in the staff report about moving, uh, the, uh, mechanical equipment, uh, which was conforming until we put the addition on the house, and then it becomes non-conforming. So we have to move it back so that it's behind the house and meets the twenty-five-foot accessory setback, which we did do, on a plan that we sent to staff yesterday. And, uh, there was also a question about, again, your, uh, native species, uh.
I think this is where the.
We're all learning an awful lot, it, I did take a year of botany in college, but it was a while ago, and, you know, when somebody says.
We're not gonna.
Dogwood and things like that, but, um, uh, we, we did revise that to show a more, uh, native species, and as the landscape architect pointed out to me, uh, there are many, many native trees, mature trees on the site now, uh, they're all being retained. So, uh, uh, we're just at a hundred and eighty-five thousand cubic feet, even though it's a sort of a modest-sized house by, uh, the standards you normally see with these applications.
Just two questions for you, Mr. Hegney, really fast, is Douglas Clark with you?
Uh, yes, he's our landscape architect.
All right.
I was just gonna call on him in case you had any very technical.
You saw the knowledge of my technicalness.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very impressed.
So, all I'm doing is making sure that whatever conservation said on application gets carried across. Um, the other question for you, and this is just idle curiosity, we were a little surprised yesterday that when you're at eighty-five hundred square feet, you reach a hundred and fifty thousand cubes, is that cuz there's something, I mean, what drove that? I was just, I, I'm not good enough at the math?
It, it's often roof lines, it's the pitch on the roof, and how much space you have that isn't necessarily square footage, but is volume. Um, and it doesn't happen all that often, I, I do see.
I don't remember seeing it.
Thousand square feet that are the tipping point, normally it's over ten thousand square.
Yeah, normally it's, so, cuz the example I always give, it's a ten thousand square foot house with a hundred, with fifteen thou, fifteen, or the other, yeah, a ten thousand square foot house with fifteen foot ceilings.
You, you, you can have three and a half stories and seven and a half feet in height, and just start adding that up, it, it can get over the hundred and fifty thousand, unless you of course want to change that regulation, or.
Not really, no.
Evening for me to give that.
I know, you ask for that all the time, it's one of the ones where we've said to you, mm, it's. Come back on the commission.
How, how long has that regulation existed, Mr. Hegney?
I think I approved it mistakenly in, uh, nineteen eighty-eight.
So the digression that you guys have all heard is Hegney was at the time on the commission.
Well, this is what I'm getting at, maybe he.
They missed.
We, we all make mistakes.
They missed the fact that residential was not excluded, and we have reveled and enjoyed that ever since, because it has given us an opportunity to get good landscaping, et cetera, less site disturbance, whatever. But Mr. Hegney has been trying to fix the error of his.
Technically, I think, uh, someone took us to court on the regulation and we.
That's how it ended up, yeah, cuz when I adopted this regulation, while I was sitting where you are, not virtually, however, and, uh, we never thought that there would be houses people would be building that would be over a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. We also put it in the commercial section of the regulations, and some judge said, yeah, but you didn't put the word "commercial" in front of it.
And we've got weird stuff. We've got a couple of other weird things in the commercial section of the regulations that apply to residential, so, I would say the judge was right. And it's given us an opportunity, if only we could reduce, Nick, cut and fill. Okay, um, any other questions from the commission, um, on this application at this time? I think you're, I'm seeing you as being offset.
Is the case. Wanna hear from the public?
Yes, I'm gonna do that, Mr. Lo, you are helping me a lot tonight.
Well, we're trying to move it along here.
Alrighty, does anybody from the public wish to speak? But before I turn to the public, just for when you're chair, Mr. Lo, the first thing I do is go through all the staff departments and make sure that we've raised every question we're gonna ask before we go to the public.
Oh, I forgot, oh, no.
All right, so, so you know for the next time, I know Mr. McRae is very aware of that. Uh, anybody from the public wish to speak on fifteen Lismore Lane? Please raise your virtual hand. Not seeing any. Does anybody, uh, object to closing this application at this time? This is fifteen Lismore Lane, regular members seated. Anybody have? Any objections to closing? Okay, again, don't get used to this, Mr. Hegney, just. Sometimes you just have.
In the evening, I, I was hoping I could have volunteered to, uh, skip over Old Greenwich Elementary, but didn't happen.
Yeah, I know. It's, oh, well, all right, thank you, sir. Are you in a different location?
I am.
Uh, you on Black Island?
No, no, I'm, I'm here in Greenwich.
Oh, okay.
I decided to come home and have something to eat when you took your dinner break.
Oh, that was a good idea. Well, enjoy your, the rest of your evening, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, we're moving to our next application. And are the, um, oops, lost the hand, you got that one? And anybody else?
So, I think we got.
Well, I would expect that Mr. Schacter would be coming in, but I'm not seeing him, there he is, okay. Hello, Mr. Tessie, our next application is number twelve, as we mentioned earlier tonight, number eleven was postponed. The Mill Owners Company LLC for a final site plan and special permit.
Madam Chair, I'm recused on this?
Thank you, and, um, seated on this application are Albin McRae, Levy, Lo. No, why does it say that, um, oh, you know, he must have not recused the first time, is that what happened? On the Mill Owners, McRae?
It must have been an error on our part, because we.
Alrighty, okay, so Jones is seated for McRae, and this is the Mill Owners Co, the Mill Owners Company LLC for a final site plan and special permit. Uh, you've seen this before, it's fifteen rental dwelling units at six and ten Gl, Glenville Street, and on Pemberwick Ro, Road in the LB and HO zones. Mr. Tessie, I'm assuming that Mr. Schacter won't elbow you, elbow you out of the way. Well, you're muted, Mr. Schacter, so you can say anything you want.
Unmute, unmute.
Go ahead, Mr. Tessie.
Mr. Schacter doesn't realize he's muted.
Yeah, he does, he's laughing.
There you go.
There you go. I'd like to introduce Mr. Schacter.
I mean, mute button is, is very tough on a control freak.
No, it's not, we're very fond of them.
Depends who has the button.
Right, alrighty, uh, Mr. Tessie, if you would proceed.
Yes, uh, well, thank you very much. Madam Chairman, we did listen to your, uh, staff briefing yesterday, and we realized that the commission members were brought up to speed, um, with regard. with regard to our application. I want to defer to Mr. Schacter. You probably do too.
Thank you.
Let him again.
At at risk, uh, we're gonna, this is gonna be quick. But oh, I before I start, is it possible to allow me to share my screen?
Right.
That's up to Mr. Leroy.
Nope, happy to do it, Mr. Schacter. Thank you.
Okay, because it's not really town policy, but hmm, sometimes we bend the rules.
If it is, I I we don't want it. We don't want special treatment.
No, no, it's okay. No, we we've given up because sometimes you just need to let the only thing we ask of you, Mr. Schacter, is that anything you share be also sent to the planning and zoning office so we have a copy in the public record.
We're gonna have, you you have everything but one
Okay, so okay, so just send that slide. Make sure that they have it. Okay, so you are you going to share your you what you're thinking about in terms of moving ahead? The Commission's aware HDC vote and that you're looking at how to move ahead and you're going to go back to the HDC. That's where you're, that's where your intro, right?
That's that's kind of my intro. You stole a little bit of my thunder.
Okay, so I'm you just jump in now?
I'm still fake. I'll tell you what I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna forward the slide to Patrick. And
Mr. Schacter, you should be able to to share now. It it should be working.
Yeah, just share it and then just send it later. Just don't forget. I will come to find you.
One panelist can share at a time, is that?
Nobody's sharing. Nobody's sharing. You're good.
I assure you, you can't mess anything up. We can fix it.
Okay, if I mean, I've got my screen. Okay, I'm I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
The little green button. Oh, you know about the little green button. What I what I read somewhere is that the newest update of Zoom allows you to pencil on a plan. Did you guys know that?
I have to double check if our our license allows that. But yes, I've heard the same thing, that there's a whiteboard.
Nick would just go to heaven if he had that.
Let's not use that.
He'd be so happy. Okay.
Okay, you you can see that, I assume.
Yep.
But yes.
Thank you. All right, now let me just do one more thing. Okay. A little bit of extra background. The context for our appearance this evening is somewhat unusual, and for that reason worthy of explanation. As a matter, the clock will run out on our application before there will be an opportunity for our plans to reach a point that based on what we know today, there's any practical chance of approval. Knowing this to be the case, we met with Patrick and Tracy last week for their advice on whether we should appear tonight. We have great respect and appreciation for the time that you all contribute to your service on the Commission and would not be here if Patrick and Tracy thought it would be wasteful of your time. It was their advice that we make this eleventh hour appearance. As we reminded the Commission a month ago at its June twenty fifth meeting, our final site and application was submitted in January of twenty four. A year earlier, we had submitted a pre app for a similar but smaller building in approximately the same location. Should be noted that at that pre app, the Commission, it it our, the most important takeaway at that at that pre app was the hope of the Commission, we would preserve the mansion. For that reason, the application before you included an offer on our part, preserve the mansion by means of a facade investment. It should also be noted in light of what's unfolded that at the pre app meeting was little to no mention of preserving the lawn in its entirety next to and in front of the mansion. Indeed, we raised the question with graphics that we included in our pre app, which included a comparison of the green space before and after the construction of a building on a portion of it. Following submission of our final site plan seven months ago, we appeared before his HDC in February. At that meeting, various members raised numerous architectural concerns. In response to those concerns, our architects made significant changes to the building's facade and footprint. At the March HDC meeting, the modifications made by our architects were well received. One might even say effusively so. However, before we had a chance to move on for and our architects for a job well done, the chairman of the HDC, who had been unable to attain the early, attend the earlier meeting, suggested that he prefer to see nothing built on our lawn next to the mansion and was recommending that HDC consult with the town's law department to see if there's any legal basis for preventing further development on that lawn. We waited four months from the March HDC meeting to hear from them. And while we waited those four months, we chose not to waste your time with presentations and discussions might turn out to be academic depending on the ultimate advisory decision of HDC. And as it turns out, it would have turned out to be academic. Finally, on July tenth, we appeared again before HDC to find out what is practical matter the results of their legal inquiry. At the end of the evening, HDC voted to advise P and Z not to approve our application as submitted and modified. It should be noted that there was no legal basis for this decision other than the language from the original HDC chair. Time of the original approval of the development of the mill, language that was in no way incorporated into the original P and Z site plan approval, nor the declaration of restrictions contemplated by that approval. We're using tonight's appearance to show the Commission the outlines of what would be a significantly modified project that better preserves the mansion in its entirety. More in scale with mansion and is a good deal more setback from Glenville Street than either our January, our January application or even that of our pre app of a year earlier. Drawings SCA through SKC, which you've got. Oh, the relative loss of green space and the one to focus on is not the first or the second, but the third. The third shows in the upper left the print green space on the parcel on on this section of the mill. And then in the lower right goes the print and the new relative remaining green space. What you'll see is that the green space will occupy sixty three percent. The sixty three percent of the will remain pervious compared to seventy four percent today. And what that's that's the that's that's the building that we think will work to both preserve what's most important of the lawn and also allow us to build something that's economically viable. Another view of this is this aerial view and you you were you were asking about solar panels of one of the applicants earlier, and you'll see that we've got a a an absolute field day on the nineteen eighty one building. But you can see the mansion. And you can see the footprint the smaller and pulled back building that we're hoping to build, leaving all of this lawn here and in front of the mansion. And while we're focusing on this, I would would mention that this tree here and this tree here are, by our knowledge, the only two remaining trees from when we developed the mill forty five years ago. Everything else here, we planted at one time or another. There were others that, you know, that were lost to nature. And the only one that will have to go is this one. Renderings R one through R five. By the reduced building, both the view from the north and from the west, both with and in the case, in in the case of the north, without existing trees on the property. So this is looking at it if as oh, as you can see from the key, and by the way, all of you guys, and I I I I think it helps a little bit of narrative helps. This is the view from, if you know the neighborhood, from the curb cut of country table. That's with the trees pulled out, existing trees pulled out. This is what it with more of what it would look like once built. And the existing trees remaining. This tree is an important tree on the property. It's it's silver maple. And lends itself kind of holiday decoration that we and our neighbors have come to enjoy. This is more of a straight on view, again, without the trees. And you'll see that it's been reduced in both in it's this to the street, but also in its general overall scale. And it almost looks as though there is a building here with a building to either side of it about the size of the mansion. As it turns out, the building over here is attached. The building, the existing mansion is not. And there's that same view with the existing trees.
Steve, you may, you may want to comment, just sorry to interrupt about the architecture and how you got to that point because that the architecture of that building and the materials reflect your original comments from HDC.
Yes, we started out with a building that architecturally was a closer imitation of the mansion. And the and and the one of the main comments of HDC, which 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 is incorporated in this modified version that we've got before you incorporates the materials that HDC from an architectural standpoint referred to see. And this is the view from the west, again, without trees. This is a view from the Glen Ridge pipeline looking at, looking at the property with existing trees. I think that everything else here you've seen. And I I I don't really want to spend more of your time than necessary. I I mentioned the fact that most of the trees that you see are our doing. And generally, when we've lost a tree, we've replaced at least two or three. We and we understand the preference that we do nothing further to change the streetscape. We understand why our neighbors prefer that. We understand why HDC prefers that. And we understand why the members of the Commission probably prefer that. We believe, however, that the modified proposal we've presented tonight that would form the basis for a new site plan application offers a good compromise between the understandable preference that we do nothing and our understandable desire to further develop our property in a manner respectful of our neighborhood and our neighbors. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. Subtle to your comments and questions, of course.
Okay, so before we jump in, I just went through the background, the previous agendas, and Mary Jenkins was seated for Mr. McRae at our June twenty fifth meeting. So she will carry on being seated for him at this meeting. Does anybody in the Commission wish to comment on this presentation? Mr. Levy? And then, I'm sorry, Madam Jenkins, you are first. I don't know why Mr. Levy's popping up. Mary, if you would, go ahead.
Yes, I I I appreciate the presentation tonight. But I think obviously some concern has to be expressed for the fact that regardless of recent actions by the HDC that in nineteen seventy nine, the protection applied not only to the mansion but to uninterrupted green space along Glenville Street. It didn't say half of the green space along Glenville Street. It said uninterrupted green space. And I just point that out because the quality of the structure is very often affected by the quality of the land that's reserved around it. And so I I just point out that, you know, starting in nineteen seventy nine, the actual space around the structure was also considered to be worthy, to to be part of the contribution to the value of the structure. And I I find it difficult to ignore the fact that the word used was uninterrupted green space. And that's my comment at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levy.
Yes, and I was going to comment on that too, but I wanted to add that at that time, there were two structures there. And now there's only one. So it was an uninterrupted green space with two structures sharing that green space. So I think that the breadth and depth of 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 the of the of this idea is that that a certain quality of the openness be preserved. Whether in its entirety or not, is is it is a might still be a question here, but I think that the setback helps with that vision of creating an open and continuous space. The question is, to what extent it is the historic structure subdued by the the new building? And how, you know, how do how do they complement each other? Well, one way is that the the architecture is supposed to to be complimentary, which I think it that's its intention is for complimentary. The other part of it is that how much breathing space is around the historic property and is that given kind of the a primary given a kind of primary status in this scheme, I would say that's less successful. I would say that the new structure is to it would be especially because not only does it jut out a little bit in front, but it also is quite a bit larger. So it has a way of diminishing the the front, the primacy of the the existing historic building. So that's a little bit more problematic. But I think that that those things can be massaged a little bit better to to make it even better. But I I I think that it's going in the right direction and I would say that I certainly appreciate the idea of 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 what this scheme is trying to do. The application is trying to be very sensitive to the streetscape as well as fitting in with the existing language of the architecture. But maybe there's a little bit more that can be done to maybe give a little bit more space or, you know, this, this new box here. You can easily manipulate a new box to give it a little bit more deference to the existing building.
Okay, um, it it the only, Mr. Yaski, go ahead and then I'll comment.
Okay, I I guess I'm a little bit confused. Every other HO that we've looked at, we've said everything on the property is part of the HO, including open space, grass, trees, rocks, you name it. And I can think of
I'm glad I didn't talk because I was going to add to that, that when six one oh nine was revised, that's exactly what it started emphasizing to look at the entire property, not just emphasize the building. And exactly. So go ahead, Mr. Mr. Yaski.
Well, we could dig deeper into that. But the other thing is that when you build additional structures, I think in all the other cases, we were looking for them to be secondary, similar in architecture, but secondary to the historic building.
Exactly.
And this clearly isn't remotely, and even if they cut it back, it's still gigantic compared to the original building. So I'm confused that where the case is here. Now, we can change our policy, I guess. But that would conflict with most of the other rulings we've had over the last, that I know of, five or six. I can think of I can think of three cases where we've made a big deal that the property means everything on it and we want it secondary. And these, this doesn't qualify for either. So I'm not sure how we got
Mr. Tessie is very well familiar with one of them. Uh, with one of them, because he in fact took us to court on it. But um, he's familiar with one.
He would do that to us?
Yeah, um, but he's. He's very familiar. He's very familiar with that application. And again, we made that point that we wanted to see a new structure to be a secondary accessory subsidiary. Um, which I think is what Mr. Shaktar, you're trying to do. Um, the other thing is you're putting us in a, I I just wanted to say you're putting us in a somewhat difficult situation. In that, for example, Mr. Levy just said to you, well, you're moving in the right direction and the rest of us aren't saying much. Because we, I want to leave it to HDC. Because this was their call. And to your point earlier and what was in the letter you sent us, um. There's no mandate, as you heard us say yesterday, that we reference in a site plan approval, why HDC has acted a certain way. We just say we have a favorable opinion from HDC or we don't. Um, we don't don't then quote in our decision letter that HDC. HDC wording generally, we never do. Um, I don't ever remember putting it in any motion that I've written that, you know, the HDC likes the elm tree or whatever. Um, I believe we have emphasized keeping the feel generally. Um, Coffee for Good is a great example of a recent approval. In which we, we push to retain the site, the character of the site, the. All that, both the landscaping and the architectural. Um, so, Mr. Yaski, did you want to add? I I'm kind of building to what you were saying, because.
No, I think you and I are saying the same thing.
We're saying the same thing, yeah.
Is one, we were very concerned someone's going to come in and build a much larger building. And that's exactly what we didn't want, given the prominence of the location. And this is another case of very soon. So I'm really confused how we got to where we are. I mean, I get HDC's letter, it jives with our policy, so um, I'm looking for an explanation. Why we should violate our our policy. And I don't, I haven't heard one.
Yeah, and I think um, part of the issue here is that um, I what's been. That the thinking of HDC evolved in a way to uh surprise the applicant. And I think that's what the applicant wants to register. Uh, Mr. Wells, um, go ahead and then Mr. Lo.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say my views are uh aligned with Mrs. Jenkins and. And most of the people that have been, have spoken. Uh, the other thing I wanted, I was there this morning, I parked my car, I walked around. And what you don't get from this overhead view is the height. And scale of six Glenville, which is the large building. Uh, at the, at the bottom, it it really is quite large. And I'm thinking, uh, where are those people gonna go to enjoy green space? Uh, if we put another building in there, then the question is, you know, is this. Are we reaching a point where this property is, you know, it's kind of maxed out in terms of development potential? And the green space is in a critical part of Glenville, you know, it's lovely. It's not as big as you'd think. Uh, you can quickly walk through it and once it's gone, it's gone, so. Those are my comments, thank you.
Mr. Lo.
Uh, well, just to uh parrot what others have said. Um, and I, uh, and I'm, we'll echo uh Mr. Yaski's comments. We we, we've been here before and um, the regulations are pretty clear. That for any structures. We can authorize additional dwelling units in. That are complementary and secondary to the historic structure. This building uh next to would appear to dwarf. Um, the mansion, so I I I I I'm puzzled how we get around that. And and there's a provision here about. The neighborhood appropriateness based upon the visible impact on the streetscape. And although this is. This has been uh withdrawn somewhat from the street. It is a significant visible structure. So I I I'm, I'm puzzled as Mr. Yaski is is how we um. How we read these regulations and look at this and 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 somehow reconcile the two.
Okay, um, anybody else, any other comments? Do you guys want to take down the screen share? Okay, um, oh, I see that the hand up is in the public, okay, um. So no other comments, um. Again, um, you know, Mr. Shaktar, we have a lot of respect for the HDC and if. If they are supportive of something you bring back to them, uh, do not take us as having closed our minds. Um, we remain open until we decide and we will respect their views and and hear them out. Uh, but I know they were looking at that nineteen seventy nine HO. And an early HO, uh, but then as Patrick pointed out to us yesterday, we have to be guided as you go through this also by six one oh nine. Uh, any, I I've asked several times, I'm gonna turn to the public now, because I know you wanted to keep this short. Uh, I believe, um, unless he's with you, Marshall Carroll wants to speak. This is anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this application at six and ten Glenville, please raise your virtual hands. Uh, Vin DiMarco, I think I saw, yes, I see some hands coming up. Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. Carroll, you are first. Followed by uh somebody who will need to tell us their name, a couple of people are gonna have to tell us their name.
Please, uh, just please leave the button pressed, guys, good.
Yeah, don't keep pressing it, once your hands up, it's up, Mr. Carroll, go ahead. You just need to unmute. Okay, good, you're good.
Good evening.
Hello.
I am so impressed by the work you all put in, uh, by the historic uh district commission puts in. And um, and I think you're all volunteers, except for you Ben.
And and Tracy.
Yes, so.
Oh, and Mr. Tessie's not a volunteer either.
No, that.
Sometimes I am.
Yes.
Oh, good, Mr. Carroll, go ahead.
Yeah, with with respect to Mr. Ted, Mr. Tessie and what you told us about his litigious bent. Uh, language in the letter that they sent uh to the commission to uh after the meeting with uh. Uh, Pat and uh. Tracy, yeah, uh. Applicant claims there is no legal basis for the HDC uh commission decision. Boy, that sounds like a prelude, a prelude to a lawsuit. What the commission said back in seventy nine was. Uh, the commission was favorably impressed by the developers' intentions to create a green area around the Victoria House uh on Glenville Street. Uh, the applicant described that language as preparatory, had to look that up. But I don't think that word means what you think it means. It means it's an expectation. The commission expected your, your, your uncle and his partner there to create that green space, and you did. And now it's a part of the landscape, it's part of the historic overlay. No, you can't go and reclaim that simply because you'd like to build something else, much as I wish you to have as much control of your property as you can. The uh. HDC has said no, and the the planning and zoning should do so as well. The the slogan I would have you adopt is no blade of grass, but that's me. Uh, and I'm not really sure. I'm a little confused about the finger pointing between the P and Z, the HDC, the HDC is the town attorney. My sense is P and Z actually controls. Am I incorrect uh in in assuming that?
You're absolutely right, the HDC is advisory to us. And we could theoretically reject their opinion, but we have a very high level of respect and collaboration with our HDC. And so we aren't finger pointing, if you thought we were, because I think the world of Steve Bishop, who chairs it. So um, and 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 the members as well, so no finger pointing from us. We we value them and we value their knowledge.
So my reading of the municipal code as far as historic overlays is exactly what several of you have have pointed to. It's not just the structure, it's the environment. And. The what is proposed would destroy that. Now, I I mentioned to uh Mr. Shaktar at the HDC meeting, which I attended. You know, you really could move that that building or a variation on it back. And you could run the roadway, existing roadway underneath it, you're gonna dig down for a garage anyway. So you really could build something, I think you also mentioned you could go up another story with the far, the the relaxation. Of the far uh rules, which were accorded as part of granting you the uh uh historic overlay. So if you want to resubmit it, I think you really either hire another architect or really go back to this one and say. How can we move this back so it doesn't intrude on the green area? We can go up another story, we could put the the roadway underneath it. Uh, there's lots of things you can do that I think would be economically viable. But we in the community, and I I think most of the P and Z and HDC do not want you, want, do not want to see you build on the lawn. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carroll. Our next speaker is twelve Glenville Street, you will need to identify yourself for. The court reporter, um, if you would tell us your name and spell it first and last.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine, just tell us who you are.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Yelena Babanova.
Okay, you will definitely have to spell that.
Uh, it is.
Yelena?
Yeah, E L E N A. Last name is B A B A N O V A.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, um, and I'm assuming Mr. Bazili would tell us if he doesn't have that. Um, go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, I just wanted to uh, you know, um. Mention how there was a notion that if the mill takes down a tree, it puts up three more. Like, uh, and uh, as I live on uh Glenville Street. I have been witnessing of those changes by the mill that they have made uh in recent years. And while technically it is true that uh they are doing exactly this, uh, what they have been doing, they. Take down a tall tree and then replace it with three trees that are barely taller than an average bush. So maybe uh, they will grow someday, like in maybe thirty years, fifty years. To be as tall as uh, well, previous ones that uh have been taken down. But to me, while uh it obviously looks like we are losing that green space around uh our houses. So uh, are those replacement trees indeed good replacements? To me, the answer is no.
Thank you very.
All what I, what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, our next speak speaker is Peter Alexander. And um, go ahead, sir. And I saw Vin DiMarco's hand, but I'm not seeing it now. Uh, Mr. Um, Alexander, if you would go ahead. Mr. Alexander. All right, try again, Mr. Alexander. Yeah, you're good.
Oh, great, yeah, I wanted to. Thank you for saying such nice things about the HDC, I was. On it for fifteen years and including chairman. And uh, I wanted to point out that. The recent. Projects and the. Alleged safety measures. For the main road. Need to be seriously looked at. Eh, especially with the Glen Ridge Road going one way, the wrong way. We're just inviting as many cars as possible from the Merritt Parkway to take a shortcut down through. Town and uh. A Glen is a small town. Situated in a steep valley situation. I think we really should look closely at. The health, safety and welfare of not just the pedestrians, but. The value of the properties. And I think that. This property being maintained would be a step in the right direction. But we need to look at the bigger picture for the. Projects that are planned for the. Transportation system there, I know. It's pretty tempting to have tax-free. Parking added when you're a developer, but I think we really should take a look at the whole. Area carefully before you. Vote on this, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alexander. Uh, our next speaker is Patricia Adams, followed by Vin DiMarco.
Hi there, good evening, um, I haven't been following this project as closely as I usually do, but. Being a nearby resident, um, I just want to expand on Peter's comment. And the previous comment about the loss of trees. So before the other development was converted to apartments. There were two very significant mature trees on that green space. Which were oaks and, you know, biodiversity experts say that oaks can support up to four hundred. And fifty different types of insects and absorb a hundred and fifty gallons of water. And as Peter pointed out, everything that hits Glen Ridge comes straight down the hillside, right to that flat spot. And on June twenty fourth, the town. Did water quality testing slightly up the river at Upland Road and detected a total coliform. Of twenty nine thousand and pH, uh, and an elevated pH, and since the river has recreational.
Help me out, Ms. Adams, uh, coliform count significance starts where? Because I don't remember.
Um, so for the most part, unless people are swimming in it, total col, total coliform isn't an issue. Um, but like fecal coliform, anything over a hundred closes the Byron Beach, is my understanding. And even the fecal coliform was measured high on June twenty fourth. So my concern is that we're putting people closer to the river, we're increasing the density there. The river is already impacted environmentally. And then the parking spaces over to the left of the driveway closest to the pond. My understanding is that they're in the FEMA floodplain, maybe somebody could clarify that. But if they are in the floodplain, you know, any kind of fluids that leak from those vehicles. Through stormwater could be washed back into the river. So my concern is about protecting the river and the environment. And when we have those mature trees in the green space, absorbing all the water that's coming down Glen Ridge. It's going to reduce the environmental impact on the river, which then reduces the environmental impact on the Long Island Sound. So, um, you know, I I do need some clarification if that parking area is in the floodplain, but I thought that. It could be, given how close it is to the pond area there. And those were my comments.
Um, Tracy, do you recall?
I do believe at least part of that parking area is in the floodplain, I don't know where, remember exactly where the line goes.
Okay, so we will check that, I don't remember seeing. Um, the mapping, but we'll check that, um, thank you, Ms. Adams. Uh, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you for your time and all your effort you've put into this uh, uh, planning and zoning for our our town.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, our next speaker is Vin DiMarco, whom I nagged into putting his hand back up because he was going up and down. If you would unmute, Mr. DiMarco. Vin? If you would unmute. I don't know if I have this, do you have Vince, Sal?
Okay.
Oh, there he is, you're good, yeah, you're good.
Okay, thank, thank you so much, I don't. I I don't know why I was uh promoted to a panelist for a minute there, but that's okay, I appreciate that.
Um, when we can promote people, we do, and if people don't accept, we just enable them to talk, but I like to see people's faces, that's all.
Great, great, thank you so much, all right, well, I I I don't want to beat a dead horse, but um. Peter Alexander opened the commentary there about, you know, the big, the the transportation improvements that are supposed to be done down there and back before that project even was approved. The corridor project, I had raised a concern about the sidewalk being as narrow as it is around that corner, coming around Glenville Street corner there in front of the mansion. And and I was told, and I guess it was accepted, that we couldn't do anything with that sidewalk because we couldn't disturb the green space there. I get it. Don't want to lose any more green space, but I, you know, I'm kind of chuckling at the at the renderings there with with all the activity on that narrow sidewalk. Someone on a scooter, pushing a baby carriage, jogging, all of those sorts of things happening at one time. And then another slide showing someone on a bicycle on the road. Well, anyone's going to be hard pressed to ride a bicycle around that corner once that that corridor improvement, so-called improvement is going to be done. So we're making it much more automobile friendly and we're adding more and more density. So I'm not sure where the, where the, you know, the active transportation element is being attended to here. So I'd love to see some thought put into that. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. DiMarco. Well, that was probably more than you guys bargained for because you were going to be in and out in just a matter of minutes, but you got a lot of comments. So if.
We didn't count on being in and out in just a couple of minutes. We, we, we were confident that we wouldn't be the people delaying the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll take that. I think that's all we got for you. Mr. Tessie, do you want to close?
Well, first of all, just for the record, I was not the attorney that handled that appeal of the zoning commission denial in Calhoun. Not that, not that I expect any warm and fuzziness to appear because of that, but just for the record.
So yes, that was Calhoun Drive and you were with the applicant and.
I did the zoning presentation.
Yeah, okay. Well, I did actually didn't remember that. So thank you. I thought you had also represented the applicant.
And, yes.
On the appeal.
And so far as this evening, I, we glad that everyone spoke up. So we understand. We believe that it's a balanced situation and we thought we were achieving a a fair balance. The greenway itself is along the street from what I understood is Mr. I'm not going to be into depth. On the issue of the subordinate structure per se, that really under the HO zone has to do with when is adding additional structures in the residential zone. Other, that's where that context comes in. But certainly the balance between the historical structure and any new structures is an element. It's brought out, was brought by Tracy correctly. Yesterday, it's, I think, section six and six one oh nine C ten. And that's the operative standard that you all would operate under in this instance. And certainly you have the discretion there to determine the, I'll call the overall balance.
I think when we look about, I know, understanding the nature of this application, but I think when we look at that, what everybody's talking about is not overwhelming the historic structure. And whether that can be accomplished and whether the historic structure will then get lost because of the magnitude of what's constructed.
Fair point. I think that Mr. Levy did did describe basically much better than I just did. The concept of a balance, he thought we weren't there yet, but it's something we could work on. I don't think anyone else was as
All right.
Not a few, but positive.
Let's land the plane. Let, let the commission members get on with the rest of their night. We thank you. We thank you for your time. We accomplished what we hoped to accomplish, which was to get a sense of how you would react were we to submit an application that looks something like what I shared on my screen. And we really, we do really appreciate your time, even if we didn't get quite as warm and fuzzy.
And the answer, but the answer that's important here, and I don't know why Mr. Carroll thought that we were finger pointing, but the answer that's important is we want to hear what the HTC is going to say, and we really respect them, and we know that they're going to try to do what's right. So we do want to hear that. And I think that's also.
We heard that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Have a great evening and thank you for coming.
Just for one, one last point.
You can't stop him, Mr. Schacter, no matter what.
No, no, no. It's only a technical point. We're going to withdraw our application.
All right. Okay. Yes. So.
Yes.
So you're withdrawing at this time. And so then we don't have to worry. Your must-close date was seven thirty, so we don't have to be concerned about.
Didn't want you to have that special meeting on the fourth. So that's all I wanted to say. That's just.
Thank you, sir.
Pat knows that. He doesn't have to worry about it.
Thank you.
I'll send an email and follow, follow up right now, Pat, for the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tessie. Thank you, Mr. Schacter.
Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Bazili? Hi, you can go home now.
Thank you. I'll do that.
I haven't seen you all night. I got late coming in and I forgot to say hello. So we'll see you next meeting. And then you get a month off.
Oh, that's great. Yeah. See you. See you then. It was very enjoyable tonight.
He always says that and he's always lying. Bye-bye.
Okay, good night.
All right. So now, folks, we're going to move to the discussion items. Our first discussion item is, oh, I thought I had clicked this. Our first discussion item is going to be William and Peyton Roberts for a pre-application at Seventeen Chapel Lane in the R twelve. And this is a construction of an ADU. And also in addition to the dwelling. Mr. Roberts, as you will see, Mr. LaRoe has put up the clock. And you have twenty minutes. Go.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah. Thank you. I understand the mission. I was a Marine. I can, I can make this quick. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I'm sorry that, that I did not dress up. Unfortunately, our hundred and fifteen-year-old house had some water damage last week, forcing us and our two kids out of the house, as well as the mouse infestation. When it rains, it really pours. So like I said, Seventeen Chapel Lane is a hundred and fifteen-year-old house. We would like to add a carport with an ADU above it so that we can then move inside the apartment and then renovate the hundred and fifteen-year-old house, keeping in style and tradition of the craftsman slash arts and craft style. You know, in doing that, we'd also like to install some storm drainage systems, underground utilities, site grading to eliminate and improve, or rather eliminate some runoff issues that have been happening over the past presumably hundred years and improve the overall site, as well as installation of some landscaping. In total, we will increase our lot coverage by a hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Our far will increase by four percent. Our building coverage will go from nineteen eighteen to twenty-four sixty-nine, so five hundred and fifty-one square feet additional. Green area will decrease from sixty-four point three percent to fifty-five point seven percent, so decreased eight point six percent. And floor area will increase from twenty-five sixty-nine existing to just under twenty-nine forty-six. And the allowable far is twenty-nine forty, right at forty-nine, sorry, twenty-nine forty-six as well. So the ADU will be a one-bedroom, one bath with a kitchen and a laundry facility. There is no plan to have anyone live there other than me and my family. After the renovation of the home, we will use it as a home office. I work from home as well as my wife. We will remove a, we actually already have removed a derelict shed that was in the backyard, cleaned up the, the yard tremendously from years of, you know, the previous owners just kind of letting it go. And, 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 you know, overall, just cleaning up the property. It's a really pretty house. This carport and ADU will be in the same, I guess, the same style as the arts and craft home. And I really think it will improve kind of the entire thing.
Okay, so.
I guess I'll keep it, keep it quick, ma'am.
Yeah, so quickly, as you are probably aware, you, we've heard from your neighbors on Bayside Terrace. And they.
Unfortunately, yeah.
They have a concern about flooding and water. This is not uncommon at this moment in town. We, as we all know, we're getting tremendous rainfall, especially this year. So even people who didn't. So they have a concern about your water management. And you've got, you've got an engineering firm was working with you. So we're going to want to see how, what you're doing. Again, they have hired counsel. So you will want to address that, I don't believe. What other requirements are we seeing for ADUs that, have you stumbled on anything, Patrick, that the applicant needs to know about?
I don't know, Mrs. Roberts, if we've spoken about this already, but, you know, just knowing what the building code requirements are. It's a little bit easier with a new build because, and it's a tax building. But when, when people are renovating structures or doing interior renovations to the main home, it becomes a little bit of an issue when you have to realize you have to open up more than just, you know, it's not building walls as much as maybe opening things up and exposing plumbing and electrical for inspections and code compliance. So much easier with a new build than it is with a renovation.
Okay. And then question for you, Patrick. This is before us, although an ADU should be as of right. The reason this is before us, because this is a lot that is undersized in a zone. This is a ninety-four hundred square foot lot in the R twelve. Does anybody have any concerns that they'd like to share in that regard at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. So those would be the two things. Does anybody want to add any other guidance to the applicant?
I would say ask Mr. DeAndrea to provide the vehicle movement diagrams to get into the carport, out of the carport.
Oh, yeah, that was bothering you yesterday. I forgot.
Because it seems actually you're backing up out of the carport and you maybe go down the stairs into the basement. Oops.
Okay. And then, so just make sure that it's maneuverable. Especially because architects are not always totally practical. Mr. Yeski?
Yeah, I'm looking at the house. Our setbacks are the things that jump out at me. I don't know whether the applicant, has he looked at that?
Yes, Mr. Yeski.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say the current setbacks for the ADUs are five feet on the side and five feet on the back. We're actually increasing those to five feet on the side and twenty-two feet in the rear. That was actually one of the issues that one of my neighbors had was that the, there is a town right away in the back. We're moving it ten feet forward with that right away. So actually twenty-two feet away from their property line. And then to address a concern that they had in the, in their, in their letter to town, we are, we are fixing the runoff issues that are currently occurring with the addition of a drainage system and retaining.
It was the side setback that I'm looking at a picture, you know, the picture can't tell. There's a lot of landscaping. So if you've got the setback, good.
Yeah, it's, it's five feet for ADUs. The existing home is not changing. Any of those elevations, the, like I said, the front and rear side back, or sorry, side and rear setback of the ADU is five feet, which we're going above and beyond that.
Right. Do you get water from Thirteen Chapel?
No, no, ma'am, I do not, not.
I'm sorry, it's going, I'm having trouble reading the topography.
Thirteen Chapel Lane is roughly about three feet higher than ours.
It's higher. Okay. So what I should be asking you is nineteen. I could only find one marking. So just the question, where's your water coming from? Okay, now I found the rest of them. So it's kind of hilly, huh?
That's slightly different.
Yep. Okay. So DeAndrea, just, just to make sure that DeAndrea does address the neighbor concerns and that you talk to them as best you can.
They would have to be willing to speak first.
Okay. All right. They may not be willing. So you've got the letter, you know what the concern, and you just act on that. Sometimes people are not. Okay. Anything else from the commission? All right. We'll see you when you come back.
Okay. So next steps, I address the vehicle movement diagrams and then come back for the full application.
Oh, actually, I think your neighbor has his hand up and I forgot to ask for public comment. So hold on, because coincidentally, your neighbor shares your last name, right?
Slightly different.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Alex Roberts, if you would go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Go ahead.
Very good. And, and, and thanks and good evening to the commission. I, I was keen to essentially lodge a, a formal concern that, that specifically relates right to the, the water management, drainage and runoff that the ADU, as you described, an ADU in addition, but as I see what DeAndrea has produced, there's a third element, which are other improvements, right? And, and, and so our, our, our research, but our research included a long discussion with DeAndrea. I'm not sure why he didn't show up last month. That was kind of strange, but I guess before I described the, the concern, which we tried to outline in our June twenty-fourth letter, I wanted to make an introductory remark. So we're residents of Eighteen Bayside Terrace. And there's four properties that abut Seventeen Chapel. There's two differences. We are a multi-decade owner since the seventies. I've seen a lot of development, have been a, a good standing citizen and resident of the area. And secondly, you know, we are the property that is most vulnerable and exposed to the runoff and drainage, right? So I'm not sure you can quite see the topography in the adjacent properties, but Eighteen Bayside is, if you're looking from the house to the backyard, we're in the lower left and we're arguably at thirty degrees.
We've got it open. It's on page seven of the application. We, I have it open before me. I believe the rest of the commission. So we know where you are. I was having trouble reading the, the topographical markings. You are at a low point.
It's about a thirty-degree slope from the point of a buttle, right, to the, the south side, the south end of the lawn of our backyard. And remember, this is all for the folks that are on the committee. I'm sure you're aware, but just to remind you, this is coastal access management, right? So we're within the one thousand feet. So, so, you know, this is the, the genesis of the concern. And so the, the concern is, is threefold. But what really kind of concerned us and what seems to form the, the, I think also some of our neighbors' concerns as well is that the, the new owner at the beginning of the year, there is a twelve-foot strip called Zero Chapel Lane. It's an open access. You can see it on the, it basically is on the backyard. It runs along the back line of the property, right?
Yes, and his existing, his existing accessory building crosses that line.
So, but, but the, the point is this, sorry, before I just, and then I'll just kind of two more minutes on the concern. The point is this, I am, so the residents tore down a fence and did tore down trees and brush and such. So the question that was begged at that point, right, is that we know that there's a declaration of restriction and it's tied to the deed of the property. And his father is a developer. So this is the kind of stuff that, that, that they would know. And so it's either, so we're wondering, you know, is this an encroachment, first of all? And either it's, you know, a kind of a, a disregard to the rules and that would govern that, that, that strip. Or it's a passive neglect, right, where it's like, oh, well, we didn't check the, the zone enough and we weren't supposed to do work on town property and take offense. So down, so, so that kind of creates a tone, right? And I think the neighbors are very aware of that. And, and so that's the introductory remark. And the final bit here is specifically on the three parts of the concern. Number one, in the long conversation, right, and remember for us, it's about runoff and it's about drainage. So number one, what, what, what Lenny Saf, what, what, what Lenny DeAndrea says, who's a great guy, super, super approachable. He's done work for us, you know, love his firm. Basically, you know, he's saying, we're going to go on the impervious coverage. we're gonna go on the impervious coverage up twenty-five percent. And I didn't quite understand these numbers. Um, I know there's been two lodgings of material. Uh, um, the, the first one was, I think, March twenty, uh, May twentieth, and there was a subsequent one. But as, as we understand it from Lenny DeAndrea, you're going up to twenty-five percent to forty-one fifty square feet of, of, of impervious. So it's a twenty-five percent increase on impervious. That we think is going to stress the already high water tables of the neighbors, but particularly ours. It's going to put incremental stress on our, uh, sump pump and frankly heightened the risk, right? Of our HVAC and all of our systems, which are down in the basement of Eighteen Bayside Terrace. So that, that's kind of the first part. The second part is, as I understand it, and again, I'm quoting. Right? Mr. DeAndrea's study, uh, four infiltrators are expected to take care of up to one inch of rain in a twenty-four hour period.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Roberts, I gotta stop you right now. This is a, a point at which we give basic guidance to the applicant.
Right.
Our drainage depart, our engineers will see the drainage plan and sign off on it or not. I don't know. I'm assuming, Patrick, this does not qualify for a drainage exemption?
Uh, I'd have to look at the total square footage, but if.
Yeah. Do you know how many square feet of impervious you're adding, Mr. Roberts?
Uh, we will be adding, uh, one thousand one hundred and seventy-eight, uh, square feet of impervious coverage.
So that will require.
And, and, and Madame Chairman.
Hold on a second, sir. I'm talking to Mr. LaRoe. Um, Patrick, you were saying?
So that square footage would require a full drainage analysis and, and therefore the full throat of the town's drainage manual would apply to the project.
So we're looking at a preliminary application, Mr. Robarts. And we've said to the applicant. Your neighbor has a concern about water. From what I'm seeing, you're at elevation thirty. They're at the center of their house is at elevation forty-four. So you're, they're higher up. You have a concern about water runoff. And their drainage plan should offset the increase in impervious, but we don't have that in front of us right now. So understood that you have that concern. Um, we will look into this town run of way, right of way that's behind the property to the extent that we can. And what it entails and what its legal standing is, I think that will fall within our purview. And, uh, how that's being handled. Now, so you have the drainage, the, 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 the clear cutting that they may have done uh, to the rear of their property. Yes, I'm seeing that their accessory structure encroaches on that into that right of way. So it's, uh, an existing structure that's been there for a long time. I'm guessing. Is there anything else on that?
Yes, I do believe, and this is, you know, we reached out to Bianca. And by the way, I, I echo Zim's comment. She's been great. So.
Great. Just focus it, focus it on, we try to get the pre-apps done pretty quickly. Um, and we're glad you like Bianca. Just tell us what your concern is.
Juan, Juan Paredes's engineering department. Said that there is, there can be in this kind of situation. And I believe, as Pat said, once you get beyond one thousand, you gotta really, you have to really do that. I'd like to invoke or a- ask the, um, the commission to have the DPW do an engineering study.
Okay, that already happens, Mr. Roberts. I just explained that to you because of the size of what they're adding in impervious.
Triggers it, fine. Okay, no.
I just said that to you, sir. That triggers a full review of their, of, of the applicant's drainage plan. Okay. It is not before us right now. We're just doing the preliminary, but we did the math and they're going to have a full review. So do you have another concern other than the drainage and the clear cutting?
That was it. Thank you, Madame Chairman.
Thank you very much. All right.
Madam Chairman, if I, if I may, I'd like to address, uh, a couple of things just really quickly. Um, number one, I did, I cut down not a single tree on Zero Chapel Lane. In fact, the town of Greenwich cut down a tree on Zero Chapel Lane after it fell off, the top of it fell off and broke a Frontier Utility Pole. Um, the town of Greenwich came through and, and did that as well as Eversource and Frontier Utilities. Um, Mr. Roberts also said that my father is a developer.
I did leave that. I don't let people talk. Uh, we discourage people from responding to any personal statements that are made about them. I won't let him, let anybody do it again. We discourage that. We discourage people making comments. It was an intrusion on your privacy. You keep going.
He's not a developer. He's a retired marine.
Just, yeah, just, just go.
Furthermore, Mr. Roberts said that he is a resident of Fourteen Bayside. Um, I believe that he has rented that home.
Eighteen, he said eighteen, I think.
Yeah, I'm sorry, eighteen, eighteen. Um, excuse me. Uh, the current people that live in that house are tenants. Um, so he's trying to, I think, trying to say that he lives there and somehow he's better than me.
He has a right as, no, he has a right as a resident to voice his concerns, but you have heard them. It's drainage. And that's, and, and you can, we can address the clear cutting. We can easily ask the, ask if the town removed trees. We can look at the aerials and see what's happened to your property since you acquired it. All of that we can do. So anything else from you?
No, and I have photos of, uh, of the, the town in that right of way, doing the work as well as Frontier and Eversource.
That would be great. You share those when you come back.
Yes, ma'am, I will. And that, then the last point is, um, I understand that he may think, and I'd like to highlight the think. Uh, Mr. DeAndrea and his firm are licensed civil engineers. Um, and, you know, if, if he says it's good and then town engineer and signs off on it, then, um, I, I really don't think Mr. Robarts' thoughts really prevail much.
I, again, you don't attack other people and we won't let anybody attack you. Okay. Those are the rules here. So don't make comments about anybody. Okay. Don't question somebody else's judgment. I will. Okay, now we got what somebody else.
Months we've been attacked by our neighbors.
Okay, I got it. Um, so we got somebody else who wants to speak. Their last number, at the end of their number is twenty-four fifty. And if you would please make your comments and identify yourself. This is on a cell call. Twenty-four fifty is your phone number. This is on Seventeen Chapel. Please unmute.
Star six to unmute.
Star six to unmute, sir.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And you need to turn off your second device, please.
Okay.
And the music too, please.
Okay. Um, goo- good evening. My name is Tom Hart. It's H A R T C H. I'm an attorney with, uh, Whitman Breed. And our office represents fourteen Bayside Terrace, LLC.
We saw your letter, sir.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you. Yes, my partner, Jim, Jim Ri- Riley sent a letter dated June twelfth. And basically, our, our message, uh, here, our concern about the property, uh, the applicant is it's too much on too little. Our, uh, client at Fourteen Bayside Terrace is strongly opposed to this. Uh, as has been mentioned, uh, the lot is in the R twelve zone. It has, uh, closer to nine thousand square feet than twelve thousand square feet. Again, two, it's just too, too small for this. Uh, there's, uh, uh, more than fifty percent of the site will be disturbed. Yeah, the site is less than ten thousand square feet, yet more than five thousand square feet would be disturbed. And there's going to be, if this goes through, more than eleven hundred square feet of additional impervious cup coverage. And you, you've, you've heard the gentleman, uh, from Eighteen Bayside Terrace, his letter of June twenty-fourth. We, we, we agree with that. And one other thing I'd like to mention about, uh, too much on too little is, uh, Chapel Lane is an old road. It's a narrow road. Uh, as you know, it runs from Riverside Avenue on the east, which is heavily trafficked to the Mayanus River on the west. Literally, there's no through traffic. When you go in, you have to eventually come out back onto Riverside Ave- Avenue. Uh, it's a narrow road and yet there are twenty-seven separate parcels on that lane, according to the grand list. And, uh, in fact, the, uh, town has decided that there's going to be no parking. There are signs up. No parking on the north side of, of, of the road. And yet the applicant will be adding a carport and it seems that there's space for possibly some additional mm, uh, vehicle there, may, maybe a Mini Cooper or a motorcycle, something like that. And there are two parking la- uh, spaces proposed in front of the house. And I know this is technically a single family house, but in practice, this is a small lot. There'd be two families living there and I, I think it, it re- really is more appropriate to, to have the, uh, have no parking in front based on, uh, you know, what our standards are for two family houses, not having par- parking in, in front. And for months, there's been activity going on in the backyard. There seems to be, uh, it looks like they're actually gutting the house and we have a lot of photographs on this. Uh, I went to the building department a couple of weeks ago, and at least at that time, there just didn't seem to be any real, uh, any recent permit issued for, for work. And, and also we're extremely tight on the FAR. So just in summary, our client is opposed. And we think they're trying to do too, too much on too little. And we'd respectfully request that the commission advise them to not proceed.
Um, we don't do that usually on the pre-app, Mr. Hart. Uh, we just give them guidance on what will be the concerns when they return for the formal application. Um, but thank you very much, Mr. Hart.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Roberts, adding to what I just, so that you know. The fact that you have an ADU means that someone in thirty years or twenty years or ten years could have two families. So the comment is not misplaced. I saw your face. It is not misplaced to say that that's. Um, again, we'll need to look into that, uh, um, the comments about the, the clear cutting and the work at the back of your site. One thing I would suggest, you can ask Mr. DeAndrea to do, whoever, or you do it yourself. Is take a look at what the FARs are, what the square footage is on all the existing houses in your neighborhood. How many of those houses are on undersized lots? How many of them have built to what level? Cause one of the arguments you would make to us is we're going to be comparable to the neighborhood. If you will be the one so sore thumb in the neighborhood, we would be less, we would have more issues. Mr. McRae.
Yes, uh, this is a request of staff. Uh, if staff can, uh, distribute the tax card for zero five dash four five seven three S. We get a sense of what that's, that easement is in the back. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we'll look at it.
There's a thorough history, Mr. McRae, that, that somebody, uh, that, that somebody was interested in purchasing it. And so there was.
That was me.
We'll look at it.
It's okay.
That's not a topic for the pre-app. So when we get the, the actual application, we'll look at that. Thank you for, though, for making sure everybody knows, Mr. McRae. And, um, you, you know what your homework is. You've got to show that you're comparable. Don't, um, make sure your drainage works. Um, look at your setbacks and we'll get the history on Zero Chapel. Anything else from the commission? All right. And we will now really see you when you come back. And I'm assuming no other comments from the public at this time on Seventeen Chapel. Any other comments?
I'd say, uh, Laura Medici in the town's attorney's office has a full record of the work that was done on Zero Chapel Lane. Including the, uh, all the utility replacement and all the power pole repla- or sorry, the trees are removed. As well as the, uh, I pulled, I personally pulled out thirty thousand pounds of trash that was left by the previous owner on that right of way, um, which she has records of as well.
Great. Okay. Good to know all that. So when you, you know, all the stuff you're going to have to tell us when you come in for final. Um, hold on, Mr. Alexander has raised his hand. Mr. Hart, you've already spoken once. Um, we only have people speak one time. Go ahead, Mr. Alexander, if you would keep it brief.
I promise.
Okay.
Bayside took into account when they named it, the seven to eight foot tidal changes every twice a day. That really should be utilized in this whole sub-region. The current drainage manual requiring capturing the first inch of water is viciously expensive and we are going to be in times of drought. And the last thing you should do is deprive the native trees, especially the older ones, of the first inch of rain. It really needs a second look at. And that'd be appreciated if I got some help. Thank you.
Okay. It collects the, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Alexander. Um, well, before that, I'm going to get rid of the drainage exemption. All right. Okay. Um, so we'll see you when you come back, Mr. Roberts, and staff is happy to help you. Uh, and to address these questions.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Bye-bye. Alrighty. Our next one is TPF Home Builders. Who's that gonna be? Uh, Madame Jenkins, you're refused.
Madame Chairman, recused on this.
Um, but you can sit, cause we're, that we're not taking a vote, so you can hang out with us. Um, and who's speaking? It just says Jeff.
Uh, Jeff and Parker Eng are going to be presenting.
Okay, okay. Both are in. All right. And what was the last names?
Eng, E N G.
Okay.
Jeff, who's, who's doing the presentation?
I'll be sharing.
Okay, so. Go ahead, sir.
Did I go ahead and, and share on my end?
Well, um, we had, um, some questions yesterday. I'll just go ahead before you, if you're going to share, uh, if you wanted to share your screen, I think that's what you were asking, Mr. LaRoe. We, we had some questions on our end, which were it's a very, you're on a narrow street. And, uh, we were curious how the traffic's gonna be. We're expecting you're gonna get some comments from the Department of Public Works, from the traffic people on how that's gonna flow. Um, I didn't see it. I, I couldn't tell if people park there. Um, I'm sorry, did I jump too fast? But you guys know, this is the, this is the eighteen units.
But you didn't announce it, Madame Chair. Sorry.
I'm sorry, TPF Home Builders LLC. And this is to build eighteen residential units, including four, which will be affordable housing units on six parcels of totaling one point eight seven acres at Home Place and Davis Avenue. Um, Mr. McRae had also raised, I don't know, Mr. McRae, you want to jump in? Um, about how the buildings face?
Yep. Kind of looking at it, actually, the quick question in your, uh, the proposed development program, there were three options, the R six, a trust assisted and an A thirty G. Is the trust assisted the one that's actually we're looking at?
Yes.
Well, it's still an A thirty G. They're both, it's still an A thirty G. It's assisted.
That's what I need to, because it actually.
Okay, so an A thirty G is a assisted or set aside. It's still an A thirty G.
So, Mr. Eng, it's, it's an A thirty G?
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Um, and then in the, um, uh, development plans, I guess, two of the, two of the existing buildings that are on the site are being saved, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. And we have, uh, um, you're facing Davis, we're facing Home Place and everything's kind of internal to that too. I think, uh, one of the things to keep in mind is I look at this and actually I went through the three D model as well and did that spin around. Um, it seems that the, they the building placement, building scale. Uh, it seems much more residential than, uh, the average that we see. Um, I would just comment that actually, as you look and start to develop the, uh, the overall program. Is be conscious of how things face the street. And if the designs can actually, uh, provide a more residential streetscape to it. So I said, if I was driving down and I'm not seeing the back of the building as, or the side of the building, I'm seeing something that actually it can be perceived as the front of the building. Uh, this is one of those things we talked about all the time here, P and Z. Especially with, uh, we're doing something like this, where actually we, the focus is internal. The center and kind of built around a square or something. Uh, but I think most important is actually just don't forget the streetscape and as people pass by, perceiving this not as a uh, um, cluster housing development, but as, you know, almost like single family residences that are a little bit more close together. Um, you've actually provided us with, uh, examples, that kind of stuff. And I think actually understanding what's going on out there already. And the neighborhood, uh, you know, there are some larger buildings, but everything seems to have some kind, you know, a, a street frontage. Uh, there are street face that actually look is a more welcoming inviting. It actually goes along with, uh, what's happening as you drive down the street in both directions.
Yep. Noted. Thank you, Ms. McRae.
Um, I, anybody else have comments on this? Um, I, anybody else have comments on this? Uh, I think looking at it today, it is, there's a lot of development on it. Um, on the other hand, you could keep it looking like a good neighborhood fit. And it's, we've been begging people to do separate buildings, units in separate buildings for a long time. So it's, it's pleasing that someone is going to make an effort. I think Mr. McRae just said that as well. Uh, anybody else on the commission want to comment? Think you're gonna-
I have more, I have more comment.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Eng, the, the property, is that going to be merged to one lot?
Yes. Yes, the property is going to eventually be merged.
Great. And as, uh, part of the project, um, can you, can you explain now or can you later, when you come back, actually? Um, uh, how the zoning works based on, uh, the underlying zoning and existing zoning requirements and what you're going to be actually, uh, exceeding in that?
Uh, we actually, so under R6, uh, the allowable FAR is 0.55. Um, our plan currently as stands is to go 2.35. So actually below the current density allowance. Um,
Okay, so are you, are you exceeding any of the R6 zoning requirements?
Um, that's not, no, not, not, not intention, not intending to.
You're not intending to.
But we, but we will be like as, as part of this, right? Uh, sorry, Patrick, maybe you can provide additional context.
Well, the, you, the unit count is the, is the, 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 the primary exceedance that there's-
So he is exceeding because you wouldn't be, remember, we don't have multifamily in the R6 and there's 18 units going on on 1.9 acres roughly.
Yep.
And it's only six parcels.
It's not a physical, uh, we're not exceeding the R6 physically. It's actually just the units.
It's the unit.
Well, that's exceeding it physically. It's the unit count.
The unit count, but the building heights and that kind of stuff, we're all going to be, uh, plus or minus.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Um, I think where Mr. McRae could have been going was that since you have eight parcels, you could have gone to full market.
Yep.
And you obviously looked at all your numbers and you decided this made more sense. So, okay. All right. Um, Madam Jenkins, I saw your hand up. Did you want to make a comment? You are able to. This is not a voting matter right now.
Um, I was just going to, um, remind Mr. McRae that this is an A30G assisted housing because of the housing trust, uh, negotiating with, uh, Mr. Eng and his family.
Right. I, I think what I really want to know is that, you know, it's, it's what, what is, what is above and beyond what's allowed for under the zone?
Yeah, he got there.
That's the most, the kind of most important thing.
All right.
Thank you.
Does any, anybody else on the commission have any, any guidance for, um, the Engs? All right.
Well, does the Engs have any, the Engs have any questions for the commission?
And do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. I mean, I've prepared a presentation to share, but I-
Oh, well, you know, the thing is, we work all weekend before we get here. I don't know if you noticed. So when you come back, at the end of the night, we're just trying to get through and just give people quick thoughts. Um, you know, the, the first, it's, um, it's, I, I hadn't realized, um, exactly how that street looked, or it's been a long time. Um, but I, um, had some guidance today.
Okay.
So, um, um, and that's it that I can think of, uh, you, the state does give you an enormous amount of latitude on this application. So we have less guidance for you than we did for the previous one, but we certainly thank you for coming.
Yeah.
And-
Our intention is we just wanted to, you know, learn from the commission if there's any, any feedback that, um,
We got two more. Hold on a second. Uh, Ms. Jones and then Mr. Levy.
Okay, so I had a question about the, the, the 3D model that you show here.
The massing model, yeah.
And it's the one, the two buildings that are staying are sort of shown with flat roofs in this model, in this model, but they're not, don't actually have flat roofs when I look at them on, is that correct? It's just because they're staying? Is that what the nuances are?
Those are staying, so we didn't model out the roofs. Um, but those roofs, if you look at them, there are some photos in the presentation I shared. Um, but basically those are hip, hip roofs, uh, kind of traditional American four-square type style.
Yeah. And I looked at Google Maps to see. So, okay, thank you. Mr. Levy?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I was looking at the, um, the road, these, uh, roads. Um, and I think that there might be an opportunity to make them a little more efficient than they are. Um, so, uh, be interesting to see what you could do with that. Uh,
The roads?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
The driveways. Um,
Oh.
So, um, maybe there's an opportunity here to, to, uh,
Reduce the paving?
Count it's, uh, uh, coverage of, of, of the-
There you go.
So, uh, if you could look into that, that would might be very useful.
Now you're sounding, now you're sounding more Levy-like. Um, okay, so, um, if you can reduce impervious, we're always happy. Um, and it'll also help with your drainage because you won't have to do as much and you have to comply with the town. I'm going to just ask, does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? This is TPF Home Builders um, at Home Place and Davis Avenue. Uh, Mr. Alexander? If you would go ahead.
Yes, I, I really want to, uh, say to Mr. Eng that, um, I think his intentions are great, but he should probably do an air quality test because he may be liable in the future. It's proximity and the wind patterns there are not very favorable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Um, Okay.
You to the highway? Is that the implication?
I think that's what he's saying, but, um, I think there's going to be a long line of us too, if, if ever someone says that our builders are responsible, I'll have to get mine out of their, their grave. Um, okay. Um, so having no other public comment and having, and you didn't have any questions for us, uh, we look forward to seeing you and um, all of you, I guess, uh, when you're ready. And again, we're available anytime you want.
Sounds good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we're going to go, um, Patrick, did you have something else? No, you were just waving goodbye?
I was just saying have a lovely evening and then we'll get on, go on to the next one.
Okay, you have to remove Mr. Eng because I think you gave him screen sharing before I jumped over his ability to give his presentation.
I'm fixing that right now. Perfect.
All right. I didn't know that. Okay. Our next one is PAWS Studio. Uh, who's representing them?
Mr. Brower.
Oh, that's right. I knew that. I just blanked. Mr. Brower. All right. This one's going to be. All right. It's going to be CosCobb. Full disclosure, guess where Mr. Brower lives? Uh, Mr. Brower, after you unmute, is Jasmine Simbono with you? Okay, after you unmute, Mr. Brower, then I'll ask you again. Mr. Brower? There he is. Okay. Hello. Um, so are, is Jasmine Simbono, Pizimbono, sorry, presenting with you?
She's going to be, yes, she's going to be part of our presentation.
All right. And you know, you got to keep it short.
We will. Um,
Okay. You heard our comments yesterday? Were you listening? Yes, you were. That's right.
I did. Thank you. So again, it's Eric Brower on behalf of the applicant and I did listen in on the briefing session, took notes. We had a conference with the, uh, design team after that in response to those comments. And so I'll just hit a couple of those points right away, just to, uh, move on. The, uh, there was a concern about the streetscape and windows viewing and, uh, walling off, uh, the windows. So, um, while there are particular areas that we may have for, uh, limited privacy concern, we do not intend to, um, block off all the windows. Uh, I explained to the, uh, to the team, your concerns ongoing with CBS, uh, and how those windows got blocked out and that the attempt to pretty photographs was nice, but didn't really meet, um, what you were trying to achieve with streetscape. So we will definitely, um, work on a design, uh, that will make that as open as much as possible. So, uh, that was heard loud and clear. Uh, also there was the, I think, a concern about access from, uh, the parking lot and/or the parking garage. And that's something we're going to have the builder, uh, look into to see if that's, excuse me, something we can incorporate as well, uh, just as a more convenient, uh, access, um, to the space. And, uh, the, um, the other concern I think had to do with parking. Um, we do have, um, on-site a total of 46 spaces plus four handicaps, uh, 22 allocated, uh, primarily presumably to the units, uh, which leaves 24, uh, leftover or available spaces, um, for the commercial. Uh, the proposed, uh, occupancy of that commercial area is about 60% proposed to be used by PAWS. So if we take 60% of those 24 spaces, we come up with, um, 14.4, uh, proportionally allocated, uh, for that commercial space. Uh, as Jasmine explains a little bit more about the operation, um, I think you'll be able to see clearly that we have sufficient parking. Uh, we have seven, uh, treatment rooms, three IV stations. So that's 10. We have maximum two employees, which would include the nurse who would administer, uh, the parts of the program that need the medical supervision. So we're up at, uh, 12 at the most. Um, so I, I think we're definitely comfortable as to meeting the parking requirement and those design considerations you looked into. And, um, as far as the use-
One of the things we were talking about yesterday is just, um, to look at, that we're going to be interested in is the length of time and the turnover rate in the parking. Because if you're in a bank use, you go boom, 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 you're in and you're out generally. That's when people even go to a bank, but, okay. But you're in and you're out. So now you're doing longer things. You've got folks floating and all of the, and, and, and you've got longer treatments. Um, so it's just, it's a different type of parking use. And, and Mr. Brower, we've been trying to get our arms around that. This kind of application we're seeing more and more and trying to get, we have been getting complaints about another use that went in there in that, um, in that, in the next block up because now there's a shortage of parking. So this, this kind of the class type where everybody shows up for an appointment and stays an hour or so. Um, ma'am, you, you don't have to raise all this. You don't have to answer us now. We're just telling you what the concerns are going to be when you come back. Okay, so we're going to ask you about that and how long they're going to be and how the appointments are and how is the parking going to work? Because we got a little uneasy with hot fit.
Right.
Because we're getting complaints.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. But so you don't have to answer us now.
No, what I'd like to get as much information to you as we can, just to set your mind at ease based on what I heard yesterday. So short answer is we, uh, physically have the parking, uh, available for us. Um, in terms of traffic generation use, I think on the Sound Beach Avenue project, um, that you acknowledge that, uh, generally that these had less, uh, these types of spa uses, wellness centers would have less total traffic than a bank, um, in terms of the turnover. So I think that's a good fit in terms of our findings for 6141. And, um, and the other thing is that, um, these, in terms of the hours, this will be controlled. So I want to let Jasmine give a quick overview, but just to highlight the points, uh, everything is going to be scheduled by appointment. There's no walk-ins, um, there's no group sessions and all of the, um, the therapies are, are being, uh, controlled or, uh, governed by the one person who manages the space, uh, and the nurse as required for the, the, the IV part of it. So it, it's not going to be people, uh, coming in, waiting around. There's going to be time spacing between the, uh, appointments so that, uh, they don't want crowding. The intent is not a high intensity gym. It's a relaxation and wellness environment. So Jasmine, why don't you, you could please just give a overview responsive to those concerns?
Sure. Um, Madam Chairwoman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for having me. I will be really brief as I realize this late hour. Thank you for your attention. Uh, my name is Jasmine Pizimbono. I've been a resident of Greenwich for five years. Um, we love it here so much. I actually just moved my parents to CosCobb. So I spend a lot of time walking from my house in Millbrook to my parents' house in, on Valley Road in CosCobb. Uh, 100 East Putnam is an 11-minute walk from my house. I'm, I wanted to talk a little bit about the operation of PAWS and kind of your concerns about the proliferation of these applications in town. The reason that PAWS exists and why there is such a proliferation in these services is because people really want these services. I think that the world is increasingly chaotic and we're having physical and mental health crises across the country. And what PAWS is doing is solving this on a daily basis by building community via a focus on your health and your longevity. They're science-backed services that are promoting health and reducing the effects of all of the physical and mental stressors that we see, you know, in day-to-day life. Taking this time out of your day to intentionally focus on your wellbeing will be a win-win for every person that steps through the door. And my goal is to provide this, the experience that Greenwich deserves in central Greenwich, hopefully. Um, you know, I've spent hours doing due diligence, canvassing groups of, you know, Greenwich residents. I've talked to parents. I've talked to our town athletes. I've talked to our nurses at Greenwich Hospital, commuters, local sports clubs, high school students, and even our senior citizens. Um, as a matter of fact, there is a group of Greenwich, retired Greenwich Hospital nurses that meets at the country table in Glenville every Friday morning. They're between 70 and 85 years old and they go on wellness walks to try to increase their health. When I told them about PAWS, they gave me so many ideas and they couldn't wait for, you know, the doors to open. They actually suggested kind of bringing it to the senior citizens of Greenwich. You know, having like buses from the senior citizen center come and, and use the services. Now, in terms of use, utilization and parking, a couple of statistics. So we don't have any open on the East Coast yet, but in LA and South Bay, the max utilization is about 60%. The average number of check-ins per hour in June of 2024 was 5.19. Now, that's not the amount of people that were in the studio at one time because most people leave after 30 minutes. 70 to 80% of our services are done within 30 minutes. So we've got, you know, a vitamin shot or a cryotherapy chamber or an LED light bed, which are only 10 minutes. There is turnover between each service. So there's an at least a 15-minute turnover between those services. And if you're doing something like a norm attack, uh, an IV, a 30-minute sauna, there's another 30-minute turnover in there. And there's only a few services that are an hour. Um, you know, a 16-minute contrast, which is a sauna plus a cold plunge. And then of course, there's a turnover in between that. And everything is appointment-based. So, you know, in some ideal world, my doors will be packed from open to closed. But I, you know, that's not the reality that the data is showing.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, we'll be looking for that exactly as Ms. Pizimbono was summarizing it. Um, the, how many people, even though you've got all these stations, you're only expecting, you're saying you're only expecting five an hour and yet you have a lot more stations than that. What the gap is going to be in between appointments, um, the average length of the appointments, all of that when you're ready. Because we're, we're trying to get to, as you know, Mr. Brower, is this a less deleterious impact on the neighborhood than the bank? And what would the bank's turnover and demand and parking would have been? Um, and we recognize, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Pizimbono didn't, um, and what we were driving at yesterday is that we recognize that this is the trend in applications. But we want to get ahead of it and accommodate them. And we've made a couple of mistakes in what we've approved because people have exceeded what we've approved. No surprise to you, Mr. Brower. I know you've been around the block a whole bunch of times on these things. So just in general, um, by the way, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Brower used to work in the P and Z department. So he has seen this. So that's what we're looking for. Uh, anything else in the commission? Any comments from the public on this application? This is to replace the M and T Bank at 100 East Putnam? No. Um, anything that we can give you guidance on Ms. Pizimbono or Mr. Brower?
Yeah. So I guess the concern is we're, we're gathering it is that, is the parking demand, um, that they're not back-to-back lined up? that they're not back-to-back lined up with someone in a, in a treatment room with someone waiting to be the next person? How we're going to control that? Because that effectively doubles the parking demand. We're aware of that. So we'll
Because we know that hands-on is a trend. Because which can't, because you can't do it online and because as Ms. Pizinbono says, people are stressed. Okay. But make sure, we need to make sure it works. So yes, that's our main piece of guidance at this point.
And they're mutually
And the windows, of course.
Yes. So it's in sync. They're, they're, they're not going to be able to provide a wellness, healthy environment if it's hectic, packed up, people waiting, can't find parking. So there, there's a mutual interest in making it work or their, their model's going to fail quickly. So.
Exactly. And, but you'd be surprised how many people don't care how they're impacting others. So then the resident gets home and discovers they can't park.
Got you. Okay, I think we get it.
Thank you. And we look forward to seeing you and good luck in between.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night.
It's hard when you don't let people talk. All right. So here comes Mr. Granoff. All right.
He gives Mr. Cohen, but.
Well, Mr. Granoff raised his hand and then I'm assuming I'm getting Mr. Cohen, but Mr. Granoff. Okay, we've got both of you, Mr. Cohen. But wait, oh gosh, thank you, because I thought you had turned into Mr. Tessie that we were only going to see the top of your head.
No, you're going to see all of me.
All right. So we had some comments and we're going to wait for, there's Mr. Granoff. The, it's again, as with the previous application, we're up to parking, parking, parking.
Madam Chairwoman, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm fading. Kabad Lubavitch of Greenwich, Inc. for a pre-application review to, at thirty-eight Field Point Road. And this is additions and alterations to what will be officially named, from what I read in the paper, the Chabad Center now. And additions and alterations to it. And it has an existing legal nonconformity for the parking. And Mr. Levy already has his hand up, so I'll just finish that. For me, this was parking, parking, parking. You guys have been around the, we've seen Chabad in the past. And, well, one of the things with any, any religious institution and possibly some of the other applications we're seeing is big events, big holy days. It falls during the week. During the day, how are we going to accommodate what's, and I realize that the Lutheran Church probably had a similar plan. One of the questions I had for you, a minor question on this would be, not so minor, because we focused on it when we've done a couple of the other religious institutions as well, and the schools, actually. If somebody can, that, the, the separation between the sanctuary and the reception area right now, is that a folding wall at the moment?
Yes.
So they currently do have a folding wall and they could go the entire length of the building then?
Yes.
At present, okay.
It was exactly, it's exactly today, the same, pretty much the same layout, at least as, as far as that aspect of it. As it was when, when the Board of Appeals granted the special exception back in fifty-seven.
Okay, and in fifty-seven, they approved a folding wall?
Well, they approved the layout that you see here. And it does show, and not only does it show the possibility of opening it to that hall, but also the decision of the Board of Appeals specifically ruled, considered the fact that the, the hall could be used for additional pews and in which case the, the church, Lutheran Church, had to find some additional park or at least come back and modify the variance, I think is the way they put it.
Okay, good. Okay, good. So we're good there. Because if you can find the parking, we're good.
Okay, okay. I, I'm not sure that everybody on the commission would necessarily agree with that.
No, no, we said that yesterday. Patrick made it clear. If you were within, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, just a second. What we were saying to the commission, what the commission was saying yesterday and what Patrick made clear, if you can secure parking for, for your space with, that's in your control and within the distance, the commission understands that that's acceptable. How about if I put that? And that's what, that our regulations allow. Before you keep talking, Mr. Cohen, could I let Mr. Levy comment? Because he's had his hand up all along. All right, Mr. Levy, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to mention that a better pronunciation might be Vod Lubavitch.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyway.
Well, with that clarification, may I proceed?
Yes.
And maybe the best thing to do is what I guess Prezi was doing. I guess it was Prezi, and showing some of these images. And I'll very quickly go through it because we're all very late. At the very beginning, Prezi, could you go back to the? Yeah, well, that's pretty good. Anyway, that's the, that's the aerial of the property. The property is shown in, in yellow. It's in an area that's largely office building. Up and down Field Point Road, including the building that the commission is holding the hearing in. There is a large, multi-family residence at the Harborview condominium around the corner on West Almond. But essentially, it's a, it's a very much of a CGB neighborhood, which is what this is. And you'll note that immediately adjacent to the synagogue, our office parking, which the congregation has revealed itself of with the approval of the owners. And of course, there is the, the town municipal parking lot across the street, which has been used. Going through it quickly, I think some of the history is, is important because of the long use of this site for church. In nineteen forty-five, the Lutheran Church purchases property and on this property was Judge James Mead's home. And they used Judge James Mead's home from nineteen forty-five to nineteen fifty-six. They needed, in the, the next image will show what happened after that. In nineteen fifty, nineteen seventy, sorry, nineteen fifty-seven, they, they decided to build the new church, pretty much in the form, as you see it there. The Meat House was still extended at that time. And, but of course, to have this built at that time, they needed a special exception because unlike today, where houses of worship are permitted uses as before in the CGB zone, it wasn't at that time. So they did get a special exception. They also got a, a variance for parking, although I kind of questioned whether or not they needed to. Required parking at that time was one in, for every, one space for every ten pews. And they, that added up to twenty-three. We're actually reducing the number of seats in the, in the sanctuary. Yeah, and there is the plan that was presented to the ZBA in nineteen seventy-seven.
So one, one of the other things, just to, just to kind of move us to the, I'm sorry, Nick, you had your hand up, but just talking about the parking. As I remember, one of the points that Chabad has made in the past is that the congregants walk to service, very often walk to service and would not be needing parking. So if there's any kind of estimate of that, that would be very helpful to us. The other one is
That's only partially. We, we can't tell you that everyone walks. They don't.
No, as I said, if, if you have an estimate of what might be, so we can get a, a sense whether you're aggravating the nonconformity or not. The other thing is the classroom uses, what hours they would be, what days, et cetera. Because there's tons of parking around you. If, except during the middle of the day, there's tons of available parking that you can use. So this should work great. And that was what we were saying yesterday. It should be fine, but we need to make sure that. Yes, and Mr. Granoff, you are getting rid of this design. I can see.
Well, and here's what, from, from that original, which is what we have right now.
Right.
To that, which Richard Granoff designed. That's, that is the change that we're making. There's an addition of parking spaces. But clearly, Ms. Alvin, we've got to do exactly what you said to satisfy the commission, that the addition that we're proposing will not result in a more detrimental traffic parking situation.
You got it.
So, and so when we come back to you, we will bring with us a purely traffic improvement study that will confirm the existing traffic conditions, that will specify the current and proposed use of the spaces, including the added spaces, and that will establish the availability of the additional parking that you're referring to. Of course, our main regular usage is on the weekend when there's lots and lots of public parking available. But we'll give you an estimate of what that adds up to as well. The other issue that I heard the commission address had to do with something that that I know is important, which is the architecture of the addition. And that was saying the fact that we have a wonderful architect to help us. And here you, you can see a photo of what looks, what it looks like now. The next picture is the, the Field Point Road view of what's being proposed. The next view is taken from a little to the west, southwest, showing the, the main entry of the building with the addition. And then the final picture that we want to show you is a head-on view from the southwest of the main entrance to the, to the synagogue. During the course of your discussion yesterday at the briefing, I heard, I think, clearly stated that you would like us to open the application before going to ARC. And of course, we'll do that. But th- these issues will be, you know, very important, I know, to many of you. And if you have any questions or further directions, we'll be glad to.
Mr. McRae, you had your hand up.
I did. I think Mr. Cohen answered some of the questions. I think he's, he's going to be looking at the parking and any kind of a making, seeing what he can find for available parking agreements for the private lots that are around it. And I think he is correct about, actually, we need to open this first. Let's start getting some of the more concrete details before we send it off to anybody else.
Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I assume that there'll be some security issues that you'll have to fill in as well. But have you, have you talked to the police department? Or were, any discussions about expanding the building?
No, we have not. One, one thing, Mr. Levy, you should understand that right now and, and projected in the future, the use of the synagogue as added to, and currently, is for religious services or religious classes. Both of, of those functions were moved from the Chabad's property at seventy-five Mason Street. So there is, that, that should be considered as well. In other words, one of the reasons the, the synagogue wanted to make this change really is because the situation was fairly tight, as, as I think you all know, at seventy-five Mason Street. And this is part of an effort by the, by the Chabad to, to provide a more appropriate place of worship.
Now, I'm not going to comment on the architecture. You're going to go to ARC once we've worked out the logistical issues. And I think that's the thing to do. You know, I don't have the background in it and it ends up devolving into a discussion on text, on taste. And I made a comment yesterday and I, I try to refrain from that. Anybody else? Any questions for us? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Levy. What did you say? I missed that.
Looks like an exciting program.
Okay. So do you have any questions for us?
No, I think you've given us the input that we need to work on our application.
Um, one of the things, I, 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 as you become more active, but you're, the congregation is already there, right? So, I mean, one of the things also is whether you've encountered any operational issues with town hall or anything. But again, your activity should not be impacting location of crosswalk. Is that going to be convenient? I think the crosswalks are convenient relative to your future use, but that's something to discuss, right? Patrick, I don't know if DPW would be flexible, but I'm asking it anyway.
There's a four-way pedestrian crosswalk with a, with a pedestrian control signal at the corner.
At the corner, which we all use.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm sure the crosswalks going north, south are adequate. Across, if you're going from east to west side of Field Point, you would go to the light and, and it, it ends up, it drops you off pretty close to the front entrance or the, the main facade of the building. So I'm not, is, is there another study you want?
No, no, I was just asking the question. I'm just trying to go through in my mind. I, I think Chabad is going to be well-attended once this is fully fleshed out. And the Lutheran Church wasn't. But again, there are allowed church uses in the area and we're just looking at, as long as we're not straining the parking and increasing the nonconformity with the addition.
Of course, the Lutheran Church was there for sixty years operating and sometimes my guess is that they had a pretty healthy congregation.
I guess they did. It dwindled, though. It certainly did dwindle.
Yeah.
And, but they're not alone in that. I mean, Chabad is fortunate that it's very well-attended, from what I understand. Okay, so if you guys don't have any questions for us, we will, we're happy to see you when you come back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, a peace sign for Mr. Granoff. Thank you. I didn't know, think he was that old. Bye-bye. Who knew he was around in the sixties? All right.
All right. Well, this has been fun. Thank you and good night. Oh.
All right. Okay, so before we move on, the first thing I'd like to do is to make a motion that we approve the minutes of May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Lowe, you cannot vote. You took yourself away. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. McRae couldn't have seconded, right?
I did.
I think you can't do that on your own. Yeah.
Seconds.
I'm not, I'm not old enough to do it, right? Yeski has seconded. And I'll take a voice vote. Albin is aye. Everybody else?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say May twenty-fourth?
May twenty-nine. I have you as absent in the records.
I was absent. That is correct.
I always look it up. Okay, wait, 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 June twenty-five, twenty twenty-four. I have Jones as absent. I am moving approval of the June twenty-five minutes. Do I have a second? Mr. Lowe has seconded. Everyone in favor? Aye. Okay, that was good. And now, Mr. McRae, we have a bunch of work that you have done. Let's
Let's uh, start and see how far we can get. Uh, Mar Avenue.
Okay, hold on. Sorry. Okay, nobody's laughing. Yes, Mara. Mary's laughing.
Well, what was that?
I totally missed it. I was looking at my notes.
All right, here goes.
For like two seconds.
Wanting to do that for weeks. Okay, it was just
Who's the boss? Anyway.
I didn't know when I could get away with it. All right, Maher Avenue.
One hundred Mar Avenue, PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-seven-five, final site plan applicant seeking approval to install four proposed temporary classrooms for a period of approximately six months to be located in the west side of the existing school parking lot adjacent to the maintenance storage building and properties located in the R twenty and R six zones. Commission finds that there is no change in enrollment or existing student bus loop. The temporary classrooms are part of a previously approved site plan for renovations in additions to both the east and west campus. Uh, the loss of student parking will be accommodated by the temporary construction lot on the field to the south. Uh, zoning issue comments on seven-seventeen-twenty-four indicating new issues with proposal in the sewer division issued an email memo dated seven-twenty-three indicating new issues with the temporary classroom locations, but request that overhead utilities be raised to a minimum of twelve feet. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Pursuer division comments, the applicant has stated that he overhead utilities would be raised to fourteen feet above grade. They request the time period shall commence at time of decision and terminated at the close of the fall semester. Uh, at the end of the requested time period, the applicant shall remove the temporary classrooms or request an extension of no more than two months uh, through P and C staff. And the applicant should address any remaining staff or interdepartmental issues. You're muted, Margaret.
The temporary parking we can't address because that's other application.
Uh, no, like he's, we were told that actually that's where the students will be parking.
But then it has to go away, that the condition that it go away?
It goes away as part, yeah, it goes away as part of something else.
Yeah, okay. Do you have a second?
Second. Just wanted to, yes.
Wait, wait. Okay, so Lo has seconded. Okay, Mr. Levy, would you like to make a comment on the motion that has been made and seconded?
So I'm just curious. I wonder why they didn't just put the temporary classrooms where the temporary parking is and then not touch the parking lot?
Uh, because they need the temporary parking for the uh, the interconstruction worker. Yeah, so the, there's, there's a, there's a shifting of things going around, so it, it, they couldn't take that space up. I did ask that question too, so.
So they're adding that much more parking? I didn't even notice. It looks like that, that they're disturbing, you know, fifteen, sixteen spaces or something like.
There's also, yeah, and there also there's work across the street on the other side that it, it's catching some of that because they're, they're doing a lot of uh, well, they're removing a lot of pavement, and so there's not as much uh, space to park vehicles on the other side of the street. So that, that's, it's part of the logistics.
I, I don't know whether anybody else went down there. I'm sure everybody did. I went down there today and it looks like a war zone. I mean, that whole place is under construction. I don't know how they're going to get this done, but that, good, good for them.
Well, that's why we were willing to give them an extension.
Yeah, no, no, I think uh, that was instructed. And also, being able to put these classrooms on the pavement, uh, it's going to eliminate a lot of, of issues and problems rather than putting them out in the field.
I'm sorry, did, sorry, Mr. Low. Did, did we not vote on this today? I thought we voted on this.
I know. We
I already voted on this earlier this evening. I've got notes.
Okay, great. Let's move it on.
I thought it was really weird. We were talking about it. I thought, did I forget to take the vote? And nobody was saying
I was, I was focused on the old Greenwich, and then we went to this, and then I'm looking back and I'm, I'm going.
This is the first application I've ever seconded twice.
No, and it was weird because
Seconded twice. I was just hoping you all voted the same.
I just couldn't figure out why nobody was saying anything because I felt like deja vu all over again. Okay, Mr. McRae, go ahead.
Eight-eight-eight North Street, application PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-three-six, final site, uh, nope.
Wait, you're skipping, you're skipping the school?
Uh, nope, here we go. Uh, three oh, yeah, we, we did Mar Avenue.
No, no, the old Greenwich.
There's another school.
Old Greenwich.
Are we doing?
Okay, we took him out of order and um, I'd like to defer uh, making a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're doing it, you're doing it in the order tonight. That makes sense. I'm so sorry.
No, he's not ready to move Old Greenwich. He's going to move it. We're going to move it next week, next meeting.
Because I, there's a, there's a lot of parts and pieces that have to get uh, put together.
I thought you were going in order. We actually heard the things this evening. I'm sorry.
Right. Well, it's uh, ten o'clock and I've been awake since uh, three o'clock, so yesterday. Okay, where were we? Uh, Taconic Road.
I assume it's today.
No. Three oh nine Taconic Road, eight-eight-eight North Street, application PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-three-five, final re-subdivision. Applicants requesting consolidation of two properties that would create a two-hundred-four-point-eight-one-three acre parcel in the R A four zone. Commission finds the proposed application is neither subdivision or re-subdivision as required of the property came before the commission as a pre-application of the one-twenty-three-twenty-four public hearing under file PLPZ twenty-two-three-four-six-oh, conservation issue comments dated seven-twenty-two-twenty-four indicating proposal is acceptable. Zoning issued a memo dated seven-seventeen-twenty-four indicating no comments. Engineering issued comments dated seven-sixteen-twenty-four getting approval for subdivision with comments. And in the wetlands approved application twenty-two-four-oh-six-three on seven-twenty-two-twenty-four. Therefore, motion to approve the following comments. Prior recording of the map for D P W comments, uh, should the applicant pursue the third driveway, a waiver may be requested through the highway division. The third driveway to three oh nine Taconic shall be limited to curb maintenance, club maintenance vehicles only and shall be gated at all other times. Uh, no, shall be added to the rec-
Go ahead.
No, shall be added the recorded map referencing the driveway waiver and use limitations. The applicant should prepare a record sheet in form suitable for the chairman of planning and zoning commission to sign and file with the Greenwich Land Records, and the applicant shall address any and all outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues.
Um, before we take the second seat on this application of the regulars plus Jones for low. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
And McRae?
Particular on what compels us to
McRae? I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you over. There was a competing voice. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Madam Jones.
Aye.
And Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing, and we go to the Stanwich Club again for the final site plan on this one. Uh, Jones for low.
Eight-eight-eight North Street, application PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-three-six, uh, final site plan special permit applicant requesting uh, extended existing private nonprofit club use uh, to construct a new short course, short golf course uh, par three nine hole with associated drainage infrastructure and amenities on a two-hundred-and-four-point-eight-one-three acre property located in the R A four zone. Um, it's commissioned finds that the applicant does not need to appear before the A R C. Uh, as required, the property came before the commission as a pre-app, uh, the one-twenty-three-twenty-four public hearing under uh, file number PLPZ twenty-two-three-four-six-zero. The applicant has stated there will be no increase in club membership, uh, health department initiative memo indicating approval of the project with comment. Uh, the conservation issue comments on seven-twenty-two-twenty-four indicating proposal is acceptable. Zoning issue comments on seven-seventeen-twenty-four indicating no comments. Engineering issue comments on seven-twenty-two indicating re-sub, uh, resubmit a prior to zoning building permit. And Wetlands approved the application, uh, twenty-two-four, uh, oh-six-three on seven-twenty-two-twenty-four. Uh, motion, therefore motion to approve, uh, with the following comments, and all I have is that the applicant should address any or outstanding or staff or interdepartmental issues.
With one exception, um, D P W Traffic has requested additional information uh, regarding traffic. Uh, is the commission, um, since the commission notes that membership is not to increase uh, this uh, there should, it anticipates no further traffic, no additional traffic, and therefore does not see that this information is required at this time.
Traffic study not required, okay.
And that they're closing off.
They asked a bunch of questions about the traffic and, and whether or not the, you know, the traffic. Um, and since there's no usage increase, there should be no intensification, and therefore it should be fine. I mean, I guess they could have more tournaments or something. Mr. Levy, go ahead.
Oh, but uh, is it relevant that they're also closing off the third entrance?
Well, um, we're going to wait and see. That's an outstanding department comment, and we're going to wait and see what D P W says about the three driveways.
Oh, and that's part of the subdivision because the subdivision now creates one large piece of property.
Right.
And you can only have two per property now, so you can get the waiver.
So D P W has commented on that, and they will, um, they will, they're going to address it, and that is a condition of, of the application. Um, okay, um, did we guess, we got a second, right? No, we did not.
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Um, Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Madam Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing. Okay, Michelle, you can go to bed. Um, our next application is thirty-one St. Rock.
Thirty-one St. Rock, I have uh, application PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-six-seven for final site plan special permit applicants requesting approval. Final site plan special permit to change use of use from a non-conforming retail use to a non-conforming hair salon use in the R six zone. The commission finds that per section six-one-fourty-one B one, the proposed this use is less non-conforming than previous non-conforming use. There is no change to the existing building. As required, the property came by the commission as a pre-app uh, at four-thirty under PLPZ twenty-two-three-one-five-three. Zoning issue comments on seven-seventeen indicating no comments. Greenwich Fire Department issue comments on seven-seventeen-twenty-four indicating acceptable access to the existing building. Many sewer division issue comments on seven-seventeen-twenty-four requesting the applicant may sign a letter acknowledging receipt of P and Z comments. Therefore, motion to approve the following uh, with comments. Uh, pursuer division, the applicant has submitted a letter dated six-twenty-two-twenty-four acknowledging comments. The applicant shall provide an updated site plan indicating trash containers located adjacent to the existing accessory structure with appropriate screening for regulation. Final landscape plan and signage program shall be reviewed by A R C. Uh, eight parking spaces shall be indicated for salon use only with remaining seven to be reserved for upper floor tenants. The upper floor tenant occupancy be, shall be limited, so it's not to exceed the available parking. And the applicant shall address any and all outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues.
Well done.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Did anybody, did anybody read the acknowledgement letter?
No.
The sewer?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, so you who have been awake for
Okay. As I read this, we are writing confirms the name has received and review of the comments from the planning and zoning department. We acknowledge all the comments provided and assure that we adhere to guidelines, requirements outlined in P and C feedback. It doesn't specifically mention the sewer comments. I'm just wondering if that's, if that's a concern of ours.
Well, it's, it's not because there's no, there's nothing that the commission is doing that's going to vary the sewer permitting process, but I think the applicant may not have just understood what the, what the letter was supposed to say.
Well, what is it, but, what are you saying? But the comments that are to be addressed are, you know, they have to perform the normal kinds of inspections and so on and so and they, they get a sewer permit, so, but, so I'm not sure what, um, maybe I missed something.
I'm sure it'll be okay. We'll just, we just have to make sure.
Well, it's a fair point, Mr. McRae, that the language in there, if we, if we catch it in time, we should get them to we should have a standard language response, I think, from
Okay.
These that
And I just want to throw the cherry on top of this one.
Good.
The letter is dated June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four. The sewer division comments are dated July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four.
So it was sent today, the letter, and they made a mistake on the month?
Yesterday.
Yeah, I think it was sent, yeah, well, it was definitely received yesterday, so it must have been just the
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, so, but we'll need to check. I miss just those little things that can get biased.
Well, we will we will reference the sewer, as always, the sewer comments in the, the decision as being items to be addressed, so. But I appreciate someone reading it.
I think our director of the, the town planners got, got this one under his wing here.
Okay, um, do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
And, and on this, we're seated the regular members. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing, and we move to Stanton Divises. L L C at nine-sixty-one North Street. Just tell me, I haven't said that twice. Okay. Regular member seated on this.
Nine-six-one North Street. Uh, PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-five-two, final site plan special permit applicant seeking approval to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling. The volume which would exceed a hundred-and-fifty thousand cubic feet on a four-point-four-six-three acre property in the R A four and X flood zone. Commission finds that zoning issue comments, uh, seven-fifteen indicating new issues with the proposal, health department initiative memo dated seven-eleven-twenty-four indicating approval of a subject system for the primary residence and a hundred percent replacement area for the detached garage. Engineering, the applicant has submitted a drainage exemption dated five-thirty-one-twenty-four. Uh, well, it's issued a permit needs questionnaire on four-twenty-nine-twenty-four indicating no action required. And I do not believe that we received anything from E Mac. Um, therefore, motion to approve the application uh, noting the following, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Anything that you'd like to add?
Um, can't think of anything.
Okay.
I mean, um, we said the same thing to everybody that came along on these, which is, um, pay attention to your landscaping because we need comments from, from conservation, so we would just say that, um, uh, do you want to just say landscape plan subject to final review by conserva, by, by staff?
We can mention that.
Yep, okay. And then do I have a second? Did I do that? Okay, Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing, and we go to K K D Design uh, at ninety-nine Richmond Hill Road. This is the um, indoor workout facility on which I think we just want to, I'm sure Nick's taken care of it, so I'll be quiet. Go ahead.
Uh, ninety-nine Richmond Hill Road, PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-five-six, final site plan special permit applicant seeking approval to construct additions to the existing single-family residence, the total volume of all structures in the property will exceed a hundred-and-fifty thousand cubic feet and a sports borne addition that constitutes uh, indoor athletic use occupying more than twelve-hundred square feet of floria on a four-point-one-two-two acre parcel in the R A four zone. The commission finds as required, the property came before the commission is pre-app at the seven-nine-twenty-four public hearing under PLPZ twenty-two-four-two-eight-five. Zoning issue comments dated seven-seventeen-twenty-four indicating no issues to the proposal. Health Department issued a memo dated seven-sixteen-twenty-four indicating approval of the application. Engineering issued comments dated seven-sixteen-twenty-four, we submit all prior to zoning building permit. And well, it's issued a permit needs questionnaire on four-twenty-six-twenty-four indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Per engineering comments is recommended that prior to the placement of a close to the row of uh, trees along the northern property line, a professional arborist should review the condition of the trees and the impact of the fill. Development purposes uh, uh, to meet the peak runoff discharge rate reduction and up to and including a hundred-year storm event. Future iterations of the design are encouraged to continue to meet that hundred-year storm event criterion. Uh, organized tournament, tournament play or sports play is prohibited. Uh, there shall be no commercial use of the sports court, including paid coaches, events, practice, or umpires. Uh, per section six-ninety-four A two of the building zone regulations, the sports court uh, area shall not be open to the general public. Thank you, Mr. Yeski. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five- Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing, and we go to the last one.
Fifteen.
Wait, wait, what?
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Was the intent of the motion to not to prohibit paid coaches to come and instruct the kids?
Yes.
Like.
Yeah, and I think, I think we need to add.
Play or organized tournament or sports play is prohibited, so no, like.
Yeah.
The team is going.
We need to add that when we say paid coaches, I think we need to say for any um, public events or something like that.
Here, let me read it again. There shall be no commercial use of the sports court including paid coaches, events, practice, or umpires.
But they could. You would have a private coach if you wanted to hire one.
That's what I wanted. I, I think, I, I think I understand your sentiment. I just, the wording of it was a little.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what he means, is you could hire a tutor for your kids.
Right, yeah, right, like exactly, good tutor service for your child is okay, but not inviting seventeen of your friends over to learn how to, you know, play lacrosse, right, understand?
And on the other hand, if it's a birthday party and they have a coach that they all play lacrosse, yeah.
Yeah.
It's my birthday every day.
Hmm, okay. Just don't show up dressed in that suit. Okay. Um, let's go to Nielsen and Feng on fifteen Lizmore.
That suit, okay, let's see if I can do this with a straight face. Uh, fifteen. It's ten o'clock, fifteen.
Did it take you a while to get it?
No, I got it. It's like. Fifteen Lizmore Lane, PLPZ twenty twenty four two seven three, final site plan special permit, the applicant is seeking approval to construct additions to the existing single family residence. The total volume of all structures in the property will exceed a hundred fifty thousand cubic feet on a two point four one acre parcel in the R A two zone. Uh, the commission finds the applicant is removing the existing second curb cut on Lizmore Lane. Zoning issue comments dated seven seventeen twenty four indicating no issues with the proposal, Health Department issued a memo dated seven sixteen indicating approval of the application. Engineering issue comments then uh, seven seventeen indicating resubmit all prior to zoning building permit. Uh, Wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire on six fourteen twenty four indicating no action required. Uh, motion, therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following, prior to zoning permit, the proposed landscape plan shall be revised to include more native species and less non-native species across all types, deciduous conifers and shrubs, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer and departmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Wait, Yesky, I'm gonna give it to Yesky Levy.
All right.
Okay. Um, and so on this one, again, it's regulars, and we have Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
I'm.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five nothing. And we're done.